And please welcome the public to our second and revised continuation of our budget hearing workshop. And Mr. Gross, will you please update us?
Can I do the opening statement?
I'm sorry, just need to do the opening statement. This is to inform the general public that this meeting is being held in compliance with Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law 1975. The notice for the special meeting was emailed to the West Orange Chronicle and Star Ledger on May 3, 2023. Councilwoman Castellino?
Present.
Councilwoman Deborah Michael?
Present.
Councilwoman Scarpa?
Present.
Council President Williams?
Present, and please note for the record that Councilman Rutherford is en route and will note the time that he comes in and joins us for the meeting. Thank you.
Will everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Mr. Gross, thank you so much for the updates provided to the 2023 municipal budget. If you would just guide us through some of the updates, we'd be grateful.
Okay, at our last met, one of the things that the council was discussing was the differences between certain line items that have actual expenses and budgets and others that have had budget line items, budgets assigned to them, but no expenses in the previous year. So the council wanted to look at it on a different basis. So as I understood, and I wasn't 100% clear of what the direction the council was going with this. So if I missed the mark a little bit, I apologize, and I'm sure we can recover. But what I understood was that you wanted me to take a look and look at the different factors involved in each line of the budget and project out what a budget would be for each of the sublines based on the actual costs incurred in 2022. I did that and rearranged that, and I'll go over the spreadsheet in a second. In addition to that, I projected out what I expected in those individual lines based on that, what our projected additional costs would be for that year. And as well, I projected out what I anticipated the contribution to reserves would be from those lines. So if you, there's a lot of data on here, so I apologize for that. And it's all the data that goes into doing those calculations. So if I can move your attention over to about the middle of the page where it says it started with 2022 budget. That is the actual 2022 budget line by individual line. And these are all the other expense lines. I didn't include the salary wage lines because that wasn't relevant to the discussions that we were having. So these are the OE other expense lines. See, that starts at the mayor's OE, and you get the end of the sheet, it goes all the way to the very, very end of the operations budget. So you see the first line is the budget was last year. The next line is the 2022 actual to date, which is where we've actually, the monies that we spent in '22. And then the next one is the 2022 projected additional actual. And that's my projection of the funds that we're going to need through the end of the year and based on our history of spending in the second year of the budget. And then the next line is the projected revenue line, I'm sorry, projected reserve line. And that is, as we discussed, that these lines at the very end of the budget process, there's monies left over that traditionally gets canceled and sent to the reserves to be utilized in the following year's budget to offset taxes for taxpayers.
So just so we're clear, you're on the fourth column right now or the third column?
I'm on the fourth column.
All right, so that is the projected reserve column?
Yes.
Okay.
And so, and then if you take and add those four columns up, you end up right where we back where we started with the same total amount of the 2022 budget, but reallocated to the lines that actually had expenses. And then that's the 2022 projected requirement. I apologize for the typo. Then the next two lines of the department's request and the mayor's recommended budget, and the last line is the year-to-date difference, year-to-year for the mayor's budget to the last year. So as you'll see, and if I understand correctly, the very, very top line gives you your totals. And if you look at the, going back to the beginning, the 2022 budget was 40,040. We actually spent today 37,252. Our projected additional amount is 1,987, and leaving a projected reserve of $800,000. So from that, I think that addressed the questions that you had in reference to what these lines might look like if they were done differently. One thing I want to reinforce, we manage from the bottom line of a department. We use the sublines in particular to identify the expenses in the different categories. But they're not limited to the sublines that they are budgeted for because they often have expenses that are outside of that from time to time in a budget. So we provide the additional lines. If we don't have any money in those lines, then that creates a manual process. So when someone has something that's unusual, there's no money in it, they can't request to use it. So part of the reason that we have so many lines and that there's monies that are left in there is from cash flow and from an a operational point of view on day-to-day. Things don't have to be handled as exceptions in that. The bottom line is the bottom line, though, and we certainly manage from there as well. So I think that, I think that at least addresses for your consideration the differences in these two ways to look at the budget.
So, thank you, Mr. Gross. I didn't get a chance to see my email later this afternoon since I sent you early this morning an email. If we got this down under 300, because this is, this 10% that the budget is now, that's if we apply the, you know, it's obviously a discussion, we'll need to have the revenues sources. If we were to get it under 300, would we just take out this 800? Would that get us there?
So if the decision was made?
And can you?
And I came prepared to speak because you sent me an email about that. If the decision is made to allocate those funds and take them out of there and apply them for tax relief, that would bring you a bit shy, about $100,000 shy of hitting under 300.
And then we would need to find another 100,000.
We'd have to find an additional $100,000.
So we wiped out every?
This is 100, I'm not trying to be dismissive about this at all. Clearly, we would be concerned about utilizing the reserves moving forward. If that decision, if that decision is made by the council, we would be, we would take steps to try to mitigate that during the year to make sure that we were able to replenish the reserves. I don't know what those steps would be, was that something would have to do as we went along?
I can make one suggestion to replenish those reserves is that we get a cannabis store open.
I'm sorry?
We get a cannabis business open.
We have two that are going to go online.
We have a cannabis business that we have projected income that we haven't even included in any type of budgeting process.
Well, and you're not wrong about that, but under no circumstances that can impact this budget.
Oh, absolutely. But we know that for next year, if we were to deplete our reserves, that we will immediately be able to replenish that as long as we have one of those businesses open.
Well, we have three on target.
Right, that's my point. Yeah, so I'm not concerned about depleting our reserves.
If that were the case, and if that's what the decision of the council is, you know, the administration would find a way to deal with that. And certainly, we're not gonna, we're gonna do everything that we can possibly do to make sure that whatever decisions that the council makes that are implemented in a manner that protects the town the best that we can.
Because 10% is still too high.
Can we speak closer to our microphone?
I agree. I think it is important to go line by line because I still believe that the 10% gross tax increase is still too high and not reasonable.
Well, that, this is the decision for the council tonight.
Yeah.
Yeah.
What I was trying to explain was everything here would be taken out. And we still, because I had asked him a couple of things last night in regards to where we're at with the garbage contracts, things that are going to be coming online, to your point too, cannabis, but we have other things, executive drive, you know, things that aren't, but a screen, so there are other things that, you know, but again, he can only put in what he could put in because none of this is.
It's all projections.
Yeah, it's all projections.
So, a couple of questions, but I just want to follow up on the cannabis thing. I am hesitant to count that money before we get it.
Exactly.
We don't know how much we're gonna get. We don't know when we're gonna get it. We don't know if it'll meet whatever the emergency need might be. So I'm hesitant to include that in any of the calculus we have for this particular budget, including paying down or, you know, you spending down the surplus. I just have a quick question, though, on this printout you gave us. It looks like, and maybe it's not on every page, and, you know, I didn't get a chance to go through it thoroughly when you sent it, I think, you know, last night or so. But it looks like column one and column four are the exact same column. Is that not right?
They are the same, they are the same columns. That's why, that's why I started you in the middle.
Oh, that's what you meant by that?
That's where I'm at, because, but in order to calculate all these columns, I had to do some, I had to do some column manipulation because this includes spending to date. I went back and pulled out, you know, as I explained before, when we sent the budget, that was to 1231. In this exercise, I thought it was important to look at, okay, well, if we're gonna, we're gonna base everything off our actuals, I want to know what our actuals are today, you know, so I had to combine them together. So you'll notice, for instance, there are some lines that repeat. They don't repeat on the right-hand side because they're eliminated because they're condensed into one line. So this is just part of, quite frankly, trying to get this done on the fly in a short amount of time. It's not an uncomplicated process. So this is, and this is all the data that I use for it. So that's why I started the center for your purposes.
Got it. Got it. So, so, second question is, with regard to the comment you made about managing to the bottom line and, you know, the subaccounts can, they're fungible, you can move those around. I think we understand that. We understand that that's your approach. I think what the council was saying in last meeting and what I'll try to reiterate now is we would prefer that the line items be more accurate. And then if you need to add in a surplus to the actual line item where you're actually spending money, then do that. Let us know what that is. You know, for example, we've got, whatever it is, I'm just picking a line item off of your materials and supplies. And I'm just picking one out of anywhere, just for the sake of the example.
Okay.
So if the line item is materials and supplies, and last year was $1,000, and you spent 500 of that, and then this year you're asking, or you spent none of it, actually, would be a better example. And then this year you're asking for 1,000 again. I would rather that 1,000 not be in materials and supplies unless you expect to spend it there. Put it in an actual line item that you're going to spend it and tell us our actual expenses. This is the history. We expect, you know, this particular line item to be, you know, $1,000, but we're asking you to budget it because we need, you know, add 1,500 because we need to create a surplus. That's an acceptable explanation to me, and I think it provides a level of clarity for the public who are certainly paying very close attention this year to the budget process. So that I would hope we could get to.
And I respect that. I mean, again, the council sets the bottom line. We provide you the upper, based on, you know, these are our work documents, they're not just for you. These are our day-to-day work documents. So we're going to handle that on a day-to-day basis as we need to. You've asked for it to be represented and look at it a different way. We presented that to you so you can look at it a different way. So we don't object to you looking at it that way.
If I can, just, and I understand that. What we would like to move towards so that we don't ever have to be in receipt of a budget that has anything close to a 10% increase on the municipal budget is that we stop doing things the way that we have been doing them. Because when you continue to do them the same way, that is what got us here. And so I don't, it's very difficult, even at a 10% municipal increase, to find that acceptable when the highest increase that we've had prior to probably 2012 is 8.29%. So we're exceeding what was the highest municipal increase over a 12-year period. And we understand the rationale that's been provided, that the prior administration focused on the taxpayers keeping money in their pocket. But if we continue to do that and operate this way without making intense cuts in this current budget, then we are not going to be able to come from behind and move forward, not with our reserves, not with our bond rating, because we're not going to be able to meet the needs. And certainly not with our residents being able to incur this type of increase. It's not sustainable, and it's difficult. So we're gonna have to do better. Asmaa had her hand up next.
I was gonna speak to Councilman Rutherford's point. In the last meeting, we indicated exactly what he said, actually, Council President did. And you stated that you would go back and fix our budget to have it reflect what was actually spent. So for an example, for materials and supplies, in 2022, $87 was budgeted, but $816 was spent. So why would that department then request this year $87? Why not request $900?
I'm sorry, which one?
I'm just giving you an example, but you didn't, you didn't do that here.
What I gave you did that.
Well, so it may, right? And what you gave us may do that, but it doesn't do it.
It does.
Well, we can't tell because it's not in the same format that you gave us the original budget. So we went through the original, this document that you gave us, 150-something pages. We asked for you to make the adjustments here, and instead of making the adjustments here, you made them on this document.
20 pages.
Right, so that's, that's.
Mr. Smaraldo, do you have copies of the revised budget?
Yeah, it's also important that the.
Hold on, hold on, guys.
Read it.
I'm sorry, hold on. Mr. Smaraldo has revised copies of this budget. This is the original.
There is no physical way to get that done between last Thursday and yesterday to get, is ahead of you to completely redo the budget. It's not, what the amount of work and labor that goes into it really starts months ago, and it is very physical in nature. So every, every one of those lines has to go in and, number one, be calculated, and number two, has to be manually done. It just wasn't physically, it's not physically capable to do it. So in order to provide it to you, and I gave you a spreadsheet that is in the same exact order that I believe is easily referred to as you go through it and look at the difference. Or you can look at it and say if you, in terms of you want to adopt it as it is or make adjustments, you certainly can use that.
But you didn't do that because, for an example, mayor's operating expense, training, 20,000 was budgeted last year, zero was spent this year, and again, your budget, you're requesting 20,000 this year.
Well, so now, but I asked you before, so maybe, maybe, maybe I wasn't clear. So let me go through it again. If you go to the middle, the 2022 budget, which is almost directly in the middle of the page, and start from there aside, you'll see, if that's where it was, 20, and then after that, you'll see there's nothing. And then we get over to the projected requirement amount, and it's zero. And that's what you were asking for, for that line.
No, we're saying, why is the mayor recommending it again this year? Zero was spent last year. Allocate that money elsewhere.
Well, you.
That's what we said.
You asked me to reformulate it. I reformulated it. I don't, I'm not clear.
Well, let me see.
What, if we're getting hung up on labels as opposed to, here's the data you asked for. There's the numbers that you asked for.
But let's just go through it to the real time.
I think, Mr. Gross, the challenge that I'm having is that when we made that request last Thursday, if you had said to us, listen, you want it in this format, I can't do that. Then we would have had a choice either to postpone this meeting, because I said last week, I think it's important that you inform the state that we're probably going to be late. We would have had the choice to either postpone this meeting to a date and time that would be appropriate or to then agree on a particular format or be prepped for a different format and then say, hey, if you're gonna give us a different format, what I'd like to do is be able to take these numbers and do it myself and transpose them into this document that I've already taken notes on and that I understand a little bit better than trying to understand this brand-new spreadsheet that I got a day ago. So that is part of the challenge, too. Now, I want to, I know that you're frustrated. We had had a series of frustrating and long meetings. So I think tonight it is better for us to kind of take a step back and think about how we're going to do this. We're not gonna get it the way we asked for, right? So now what we're gonna have to do is look at this document and that document simultaneously as we go through line by line. At least that's what I think we're gonna have to do.
I think that's the only way we're gonna be able to use the other. I just wanted to object for one second. Maybe because I'm the elder statement here, and I've been doing this for seven years here and then 10 years prior at the school, the school board. So out of all of us, I have the most experience at this. That being said, with the way they, I've done in the past at the school district, unless they change the way they do their budgeting, all this here is if you take out 800,000, all these lines would go away. And I do agree with you, for your sake to see it and to understand it, it would have been helpful to, had it transferred here, it would have been out, and then to go line by line, and it would have been simple. I think what we need to do tonight, not to keep our directors here all night, is to give them the opportunity to explain their needs, which they've done in the past, and to see, you know, how, what they need to operate with. I recommend that everyone looks at their organizational chart when they speak so you could see how they're structured, number one. And number two, you know, going back, talking about what we've done in the past, and we have to do things differently. Remember, too, you know, why a few of you, you know, I want, I want this program, I want that program, we should be doing this, we should be doing that. So all those years of expanding services is in this budget. So, you know, to get this down, we're gonna have to cut programs and some services. Now, we already talked, we know we're gonna have to do the garbage differently, and we know that's a big one. We know we expanded different, and I'm not gonna pick on anything now, but we need to really listen to our directors of their needs and then, you know, see what we could live with, what we could live without. Or, you know, again, if you could get it under 300 a month, you guys.
A year.
A year, rather. A year, sorry, 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 per household, a year, which is still high. But we took those zeros, which, because it was COVID time, too. So the prior administration, nobody wanted to raise tax, no one ever wants to raise taxes. But moving forward, I agree, you know, moving forward 2% each year is gonna lessen the burden in years to come. And that's all I'm saying because we're gonna be here all night.
Once we have additional income, but I mean, that's yet to be determined.
Well, we don't have revenue this year. That's a problem. Our revenue, our spending isn't so terrible as a revenue problem is. And hopefully, we'll get that on track in the next couple of years. So let's remember that, too. It's, it is what it is because we have a revenue issue this year.
Well, I'd like to, if I may, Mr. Gross. So I do agree, we do have a revenue problem.
Yeah.
We have an expense problem as well, and both sides of that are gonna have to be examined. And this is not a problem that just came about overnight. So I want us to be very clear. The process that we went through under the prior administration, someone just said a moment ago, I think it was you, Councilwoman, former administration wanted to keep more money in the residents' pockets. All they're doing, or whoever said it, all that was doing was delaying the inevitable and forcing a lot of that in one year, if not all of it in one year versus having.
You proved that too last year. So you were here the past two budgets.
I also had zero support on the council last year.
No, you didn't. You never advocated to raise taxes. So let's just.
I would never advocate to raise taxes, right? But I also did, so let's give an example. So I'll give you two examples from last year, since we're gonna talk about that. Mr. Gross just introduced a $6 million bond for capital improvements that was cut out of the capital budget last year. Now, it was cut because, and I said this in public, my concern is that we are spending ourselves into a problem. I said it in a public meeting.
If it wasn't for street repairs.
It doesn't matter what it was for. The point is, we cut it last year, and now, without even announcing that this is part of what we would have done last year, we're just trying to do it anyway. That's another $6 million being spent in addition. And these numbers add up after a while. We had $250,000 in the capital budget last year to fix Colgate Park to help with the footsaw court, the mini pitch, the soccer mini pitch over there. When Mr. Gross is fully aware, we had a million-dollar gift from the New Jersey Red Bulls to do not just one, but five. So we've put ourselves from political decisions and mismanagement into this, into this position. And what?
I think there was other stipulations to that grant.
There was no other stipulations to that grant. It died on the vine. There was absolutely no response to the Red Bulls. And when I reached out to them again, they said they changed the funding formula, so the most they could do was one, and they weren't even sure if they wanted to do it, given how we treated them in the first place. So we don't have to litigate that, but that is the fact, and that's all in the email. So we got into this position, not by what this council is doing or last year's council or the other. This is a series, and I'll point out one more thing. Mr. Gross, in his initial budget presentation, had a line in one of the early slides that said, "We have to do more with less." That is a philosophy that former Mayor McKean ushered in. And when he ushered it in 25 years ago, there was plenty of fat to cut in the budget. After a period of time, you get to no more fat to cut, and then you start cutting the meat, and now we're at the bone. So part of the challenge that I have, too, is I can't understand how headcount is so low and salary, wages, and benefits are so high. I would love to know what headcount has been year by year, at least over the 12 years that you've been here. I think that would be, I think that would be helpful for me.
That's been, you go online right now, and you can see it in the presentations that we've done year after year after year. That information is available to you.
You could just tell me.
And I'm quite happy, I'm quite happy, but you are right. We are, our headcount is down from Ohio, I think, over 350 at its highest. And I think we're, our full-time equivalents now is at 308. And I think we're, 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 our full-time equivalents now is at three oh eight.
So you're. So, so, so to, to, to scare township employees and township residents that. With throwing out a number of a hundred and fifty layoffs or something in that neighborhood, when headcount is.
Not scaring anyone.
That is scary.
I am not saying it's not scary. I'm saying I'm not scaring anyone.
When you say a hundred and fifty layoffs, you are scaring.
Councilman, can we, can we start the process?
I'm, I'm explaining the absolute raw facts. That it, that unless this council makes cuts in this budget or finds revenues. Uh, if, if it didn't, the, the only way to get a budget down into very low numbers of taxes, and I won't even say a percentage. Is through massive cuts in staffing. That's just a fact.
Okay, so, so again, trying to change the temperature a little bit. I think it would have been more helpful because what you were able to do with uh, just the sewer charges alone. Was go from sixteen percent to ten percent. It would have been much better to start there, not to start.
Start there. I did start. That was the first thing we brought to the council last week. And, 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 and one of the things.
A- after the sixteen percent was presented, after the eleven million dollar hole was presented. So instead of presenting that.
Council, we don't, the administration can make a recommendation on that, but, but it is up, the council has to decide to make that decision.
Yeah, I, I would have presented that, those facts at the same time. Now, now, I think we do need to get into this uh, actual document, so.
Can I, before that, if I can, while, while we're talking about revenue. In terms of the, we, we, we do need to make some decisions about the revenues. Particularly the um, the, the sewer fees. Because we have lead time that we need in order to get bills out. And, and if, if we do not make that decision. Frankly, tonight gives an opportunity in, in terms of getting the, the ordinances that are required done in this, in June. And to, so that we can get bills out and get the money back in a reasonable period of time. We're gonna be left with um, cash flow problems that we will have to then go out and borrow and, and incur additional expenses. So it's very important, if we can, to, if, if possible, if the council can focus on the revenue side. If the, and if, if you're prepared to make decisions on that. Um, to be, to be able to do that so that we can move forward, at least with that. Uh, at the next meeting with getting um, the required ordinances, resolutions in place. If not, then, then I know what I have to do.
So I, I, I do think I need some time because I think there may be an alternative. To charging the highest estimated fee, which is what was in there. Um, I think, you know, there, it, it may be possible to um, adjust the formula that we use. Uh, from a straight equivalency unit uh, to in, including some um, charge for volume. But I have to work with the joint meeting and, and other similar organizations to understand what they've done. To be able to present it to the joint meeting, to hopefully get enough support on the joint meeting to allow that change, because they would not allow that change just for West Orange. So if we can do that and go through that process and we don't have another meeting until next month. But if we can do that, we may be able to provide some relief, not just for West Orange, but for everybody.
I will then be forced to, to borrow funds. So.
The sewer increase. How can we use the revenue for the sewer increase towards the township budget? Isn't that a misappropriation of funds because the sewer? Uh, fees themselves didn't go up, like the cost of maintaining the sewers?
Councilwoman, that's, that's a very serious term you're using, misappropriation of funds.
Well, I'm just, I'm asking.
Well, I understand. So I would, I would, I would uh, suggest that, 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 that is. A difficult um, set of terminology, I think, for you to be using. Um, without hearing the answers to questions, certainly. Um, no, it's not. The, the answer is no, it's not. Uh, the township has been collecting sewer fees as many townships do. Um, for uh, forever, well, I don't want to say forever, but certainly much longer than I've been here. Um, and many other municipalities do as well.
We always been on the low side with our fees, which is part of an issue that we're having.
I, I think her questioning though is, are we allowed to make a profit on that and then allocate?
We are not making a profit. We're absolutely not making a profit on it.
If we raise the fees and the costs have not gone up, then we.
We have cost projections that the, their amortized costs for, for maintenance and, and replacement costs. For our system are well over ten million.
So then raising the fees won't affect the budget?
Of course it affects the budget.
So, so it can't be both ways. I mean, I'm not, I'm not an idiot, right? There either, if, if we're going to raise the fees to provide some relief for the budget. That is using those funds for something other than the sewer. And if we are allowed to do that, then great. And if we're not allowed to do that, and if. What we're gonna say is we're just collecting that money now for some future expense. If we collect that money now for some future expense, but use it before that future expense. And it is not associated with the sewer, that would then be a misappropriation of funds, would it not? Unless we're allowed to do that.
Councilman, it is not a misappropriation of funds and we are not doing that. This is raising the funds. We, we have, we support the sewer system through our capital. But we don't allocate any of the capital expenses that we spend on the sewer system to our, our budget, except through our capital improvements. So it's, it's part of that as well as our day-to-day operations. And we spend upwards of ten million dollars in total um, on this internship. Now, if the council doesn't want to do it, that's fine. You want to get a legal opinion about it, that's fine too. I mean, I. I mean, I, I, I.
So we do want to do it.
I'm, I'm trying to present to you um, a, a budget and, and the, and the mayor's presenting to you a budget. That, that, and, and alternatives um, in terms of it to allow you. To, to pass on some, a, a budget that taxpayers can, can afford. Otherwise, if, if you want to reject it, you can reject it. And you can go ahead and do that. And, and whatever you, decisions you make from there, you make from there. I, I, I mean, I don't, I can't, no one else did.
So I don't, I don't want you to misunderstand. It's not that we don't, or that we're not open to it. So I don't think anyone wants to raise the fee, but we recognize that it, it may be necessary. Not even maybe, it is necessary. That fee and literally every other fee we charge. Alright, so we get it. What we're questioning or what was initially, I wasn't even questioning it until just now, and I, your answer is what presented my question. Is the propriety of using those fees to provide some relief, how we can do it. Um, it, it didn't make sense to me. Now it sounds as if. You're use, you would use the increased fees for debt service on the capital projects?
Well, we already have the fees. We've already built the system now. We've already, we're maintaining the system. And we don't, we, we, we're, we don't, we're not treating it as a utility. We haven't historically treated it as a utility. When uh, what are repairs we do, the emergency repairs that we're doing uh, on, on wheelsh, we're, we're. We're, we're spending all that money. We, we're doing it. So the question is, is how do, how do we? How does the, the township taxpayers who have invested in the sewer system on behalf of the users of the system? Which are not, not the same subset of this, taxpayers as well as others. How do, how, how do you get equity for them? And the, the only way to do that is to have the amounts of the fees, which have been drastically low. Not just, not, not, not just the past um, four or five years, but historically drastically lower. Than the amortized cost of developing and maintaining the system. So what, what I projected out and what has been accepted, it practiced, not, not, not. Not just here, but in many other places. I projected out what, what we believe is a reasonable return on investment for the current taxpayers. For the maintenance of this user system. And so we put this before you and, and. And we, we understand that, that frankly, that there's a lack of confidence in a lot of things that are being brought forth to you. And we appreciate the history by which you, some of you have come to that conclusion. We, I respect it. I don't agree with it, but. We're here to try to help figure it out.
Alright, thank you very much, Mr. Gross.
I have a quick question on the sewer. I've, I've heard from a lot of constituents and they realize that we have to do something. And they know that their sewer charges will have to go up. They're concerned about it being equitable. And somebody said to me, can um, it be based upon usage? You know, kind of the way you're electric.
Uh, and, and the answer is yes, you can. And, and, and I, I've looked at that and, and I, I. Um, contacted um, New Jersey American Water. And they are in the process and, and of getting the access to actually our water data. Um, it, it certainly can be done that way. What I presented to you is an attempt. Um, to equalize some of that based on usage, a different concept. You can use water usage and, and, and people object about water usage because they say, well, I water my lawn and that doesn't go into the sewer. So why should you, why should you use my, my, my water volume for that? That's not fair. I mean, no matter what system you pick, there's gonna be some inequity.
And you drink water.
So, so this, what I presented to you as a, as a possibility and a recommendation. Is utilizing number of bedrooms, which is a, a pretty good indicator of usage. If, if, if you have, you know, a family of four with four bedrooms. Um, they, you know, that you're gonna use more water and, and, and more, you know, more of the sewer system. Than, than a family of, of one. It's just, you know, so there's, now, is it pure, is it, you know, do you have people that? That live in homes that are large? Yes. So it's not a hundred percent equitable. All we're doing now is inequitable at all. What we're doing right now is, is, is a, is, is a regressive. Uh, where everybody is paying the same no matter what. So what I presented to you is an attempt to do that. Uh, it's not perfect. Um, it's, I think it's in the right direction. Um, but we certainly can be open to, to any, any others. Uh, and the other solutions that I'm aware of and my, my history. Are not perfect either.
Councilwoman, I can't remember.
Um, I brought the slideshow, the presentation that you gave us last time. And for two bedroom units, cost will increase by five. Is that a typo? Did you meant to put fifty instead of five?
I'm sorry.
A two-bedroom units cost will increase by five. It says, is that a typo? Did you meant, is it supposed to be fifty? Because a three-bedroom unit cost will increase by ninety.
Would not.
The, the amount.
Five dollars is correct. It'd go up by five.
And then a three-bedroom will increase by ninety.
That's correct.
And a four-bedroom unit will increase by one seventy-five, just the same size.
One bedroom would go down.
Yeah, by eighty dollars.
Yeah, that's what councilwoman, I, I had asked if he could. Like I would leave the, the lower units, what they're at. And not give such a big bump to the higher units, because we do have a lot of seniors and empty nesters that.
It was a senior who actually communicated this concern to me.
Exactly. So if, you know, if you could rework that with the amount that you had projected. But yet formulate it differently because folks are used to paying one price now. As a, it's great to give them a credit and I understand where you're going with that, but that credit is only hurting others. So I think if you just.
We're open to any, you know, this is a math problem. Okay, you know, it's two, two and a half million, how do, how do you get there? Who pays?
Okay.
And, 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 and what's equitable?
So I've heard the recommendation um, from my colleagues.
Can, can we just, one more question, council president on that? So, so the formula that you presented us last time, that was based on the highest. Poss- possible fees, is that, is that right? That we could charge? That, that, that number where eighty dollars?
I think you could charge more.
Okay.
That is, that was what the administration looked at and felt that um. It, we, we, frankly, we're looking at it. We didn't want to go to the highest because, you know, we, we, we didn't want to get into conjecture of whether or not we should be at the highest or not. You know, you, you can do any thing you want.
So the recommendation um, from my, from my colleagues is that if we leave the. Uh, one and two-bedroom units at the current rate. Um, that will give us the capacity to increase for a three-bedroom, um, only fifty dollars. And for a four-bedroom unit, a hundred dollars.
It will not work that way. You're, 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 because you have a ton of three-bedroom units. So you, 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 you're, it, it isn't, it isn't one for one. It's, it's about, it's about quantity.
Okay, so what we don't want to do is diminish any of the income and revenue. That's, that's what we don't want to do. And then for the three-bedroom unit costs, if, if we're keeping this, so again, your example of getting us to two million. If we're not decreasing one and two bedrooms at all, then that still, do we know?
Your amount of money hasn't changed.
Do we know?
Yeah, I understand where you're trying to go, but my, my point is, is, is the numbers are so small.
Do we know how many one and two-bedroom units that we have in households?
I, 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 I can do a calculation and frankly, I don't think I should do it on the fly.
No, we don't have to, but I'm asking.
I could do a calculate, but what, but, but I know enough about it already to know that it's not gonna wipe out the changes above. It's not gonna lower the top. I mean, look.
Alright, but can we get a, can we also for. Practicality sake, can we understand how many one and two-bedroom, three and four-bedroom and up units that we have? I think if we can at least have that number, um, we might have a better understanding.
And were you increasing the commercial or?
Liability insurance is going up.
And then nonprofits, were you?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I, 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 we've got, we've got multiple, you will talk in any night.
Other entities, all entities across the board will see an increase. Is that where you're, where you were going?
Except for one and two-bedroom units.
Yeah.
We don't want to increase them.
So you want no increase at all for the one and two-bedroom units? That will drive, that will drive.
No decrease. You were gonna decrease them.
Gonna decrease.
Yeah, we don't want that.
We don't want to.
Only the one bedrooms went down.
I'm sorry?
Only the one bedrooms went down.
And then the two-bedroom was increased by just five dollars.
By five dollars.
So what we're gonna do is we're not going to touch one and two. It's gonna be the same rate. So there's.
So you're gonna lower the two bedrooms, the, the, you're gonna take away the five-dollar increase. And you're going to take away the decrease for the one bedrooms.
Okay, I, I would be fine with a five dollar.
Maybe that washes, but that doesn't touch, that doesn't do anything for the, for the ones above.
So why don't you look at it and tweak it to see what you could.
I, I'm not, I, I, I will do that.
Okay.
But, but.
So you're.
What if we increase the two bedroom, what if we don't touch the one bedroom, you don't decrease the one bedroom, increase the two-bedroom by twenty. The three-bedroom by fifty and the four-bedroom by a hundred.
Four plus. You're not gonna rate, you, 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 you've just probably put three or four percent.
And so for us, what we need to understand so that we can visualize that is the number of households, right?
Yeah, give, give us the data on that so we understand it, because, because we don't know the number of households in each category. And we'd like to know that.
Pie chart, probably.
We don't, we don't need a pie chart. We just need to know the number of one, two, three, four-bedroom and up units. As far as our household, households are concerned. We have fifteen thousand households. That does not include our commercial radibles. And so what we need to understand is what that number looks like.
Twenty-one thousand units. That are spread out between commercial and residential units.
Yeah.
The vast majority, the vast majority of residential units are three bed.
Okay, not a problem. We would just like to see what those numbers look like.
I need to understand what you're trying to accomplish on the top end. Because it, so you, you, the, the number of one-bedroom units is very small. So to the extent the money that we're adding back in on them raises very little.
Got it. Well, if we, even if we had, so Mr. Gross, if we only had a hundred one-bedroom units. We were taking eighty dollars and diminishing it. We are now saying that's gonna stay. So it might be a miniscule amount, but it, it's something. It's something. That's all we're suggesting. We don't want to hurt.
No, but, but, but I'm also hearing you want to lower the upperments.
Yes, because we don't want to hurt property owners.
The math does not work on that.
Okay. Too much of an increase.
Well, it may not get us to a ten percent budget, but it'll get us below sixteen. And I still think, because we've all gone through the budget and you, you'll tell us if we're right or wrong, but we think there are other opportunities. Both to cut on the expense side and also, we've discussed this now at least twice, increase revenue as well. Other revenue, not just the sewer.
I, I think too, the fastest way when we, we do go through this.
Okay, so now it's time for us to. All right, and, and we will too be able to see the same clarity that you see once we have the information on the number of households and the number of bedrooms. So some of it is just making sure we're looking at things through the same lens. And without all the data, we, we don't have the same level of comprehension that you do. So that would be helpful so that we can see. And then once we see if the numbers don't make sense and we have to come back to you, Mr. Gross, and say, yeah, you're right. Then that's what we're asking, that's what we're asking so that we can have clarity in, in moving forward. It's seven o'clock and so I'm going to ask that we just hold any additional questions. We will have one hour after the presentation of the directors to follow up and continue asking what other additional questions that we have. But I would like to be respectful of the time schedule that we have created and asking that our directors come in so that we have additional questions regarding their budgets, how they function, how they operate. This is the opportunity for us to ask those questions. First on our list is the planning department. So please, Ms. Gary Adams, if you will come forward, you are more comfortable where if you would like to take the seat here, stand at the podium, however you would like to do so. Welcome to our budget hearing.
12 hour day and I only had chips and soda today, so. Yeah.
Thank you. So colleagues, if you will turn to the budget. Mr. Gross, if you can help me with what page the planning department budget starts on?
Three, 43, 44, 45, 46, 47. And I'd like to just, just paint a picture, especially for the new. Council colleagues, first of all, good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Um, to exactly how the department is split up.
And if we can also just make sure everyone has a copy of the organizational chart.
Can I get a copy, please?
Of the organizational chart?
Yes, I have a question about the organizational chart.
Okay, great, thank you. So we'll get you a copy.
Thank you, thank you. So the department is split pretty much into two distinct portions. I'll, I'll go over the zoning and planning office where we have two employees that are noted on the budget as keyboarding clerk. And my philosophy has always been that they're not clerks. If you know what they do, what their job responsibilities are, as far as taking in zoning and planning board applications, let's start from stage one. Someone submits an application to come before the planning or the zoning board. Those particular secretaries, administrative assistants, as I call them, here it says keyboarding clerk, taking the application, they have to deal with the professionals, the attorneys, the architect, the land use professionals. Okay, they take that application and it usually comes in several boxes. And then they go through those applications and match it to what we get via email. Because during COVID, as you know, we had to continue to operate. So what we did is instead of getting 20 copies of everything, one is digital and we get eight copies. Okay, because some board members just don't like to see digital. They want the big, what we deliver every day to a board member. They have to match that exactly to what we get digitally. Make sure it is complete. Make sure that the stamp from the engineer and the architect and the professionals, make sure it's signed. Make sure we have all the correct information. Thank you so much. Based on municipal land use law, this is not something we're making up. This is something we have to do based on the state law. Once they do that, they send it to our professionals. John Hess, you know, is our engineer. Paul is our planner. Then we have to make sure they do their job and get it back to us in a timely fashion. Then they have to make sure that the, that particular application, if it's a major application, goes to what we call our sprab meeting. And that's where all the professionals come together, myself, health, fire, police, construction. We come together with the applicant once a month and we say, hey, we don't like this. This parking space should be straight. It shouldn't be diagonal, whatever we do within that hour. And then we go back to the secretary and we tell her to get revised plans. Once that happens, you now get a date. Did you see all the work that has to be done before they even get a date? Then once they get the date, we have to make sure all the board members get their copies and that everybody understands what's going to happen at that meeting. We might have a resident that knows that an application has been submitted. They may want to review the application. So they come into the office, right? And they sit there and they go through the application as we watch them, right? But in between all of that, somebody might come in for a CCO. I'm selling my house. Can you come to the counter and take my $100 for the application while I'm on the phone with the attorney? Somebody may want to have a garage sale. Somebody might want a fence permit. All of those transactions happen in this one department with two people that we call keyboarding, keyboarding clerk. I don't know, I think they make $25 an hour or something. That's, that department, very busy. We did over $100,000 last year, I think 120,000 just on CCOs. And thank you, council, because we're going to go up on the fees. We are the lowest in Essex County. Some cities charge like quadruple what we charge. We charge 100 for, I, I know we have some other state professionals and I know the, the fee's low. I've looked at every single town in Essex County. So thank you for allowing us to go up on those fees because that's a lot more money for the township. So that's just 120,000. That's just that. On a normal year, I would do maybe 90, 80 to 90 fence permits. I do those as the zoning official. Last year we did 225.
Wow.
Double the amount. Right? Because everybody wants a fence now, right? That's an inspection that I have to go out with the survey and make sure that that fence is going to be correct and according to our code. So that's what goes on in that office. In addition, we do a lot of filming. I don't know if you realize how much filming we do in West Orange. $1,000 a day for minor film, 3,000 a day for a major motion picture. Major money we make. I, I, I meant to get the number this year. What we've done here today, I just didn't get a chance to. It was a little bit of a busy day, but we make a lot of money and those fees are going up too. So if you drive around town, you go to Essex House, they did a whole horror film for, I don't know, we made like $40,000. This department brings in a lot of money with two keyboarding clerks that make, I don't know, $25 an hour. So they're not keyboarding clerks. So I've always been told that the keyboarding clerk one, which they came and they were hired during COVID, you know, because we came in during COVID. I could not work from home. I can't look at plans from home. I can't do inspections from home. So there were about four or five of us that came in every single day. From the end of March, while everybody else was home, we worked here in this building. Okay, and they were hired during that time. And I have found some discrepancies in my budget and I will take full responsibility. Because what I realized is instead of them taking, say, the supplies from housing, planning, zoning, she was putting it all in one bucket. So you may see, for example.
Can you tell us what page you're on?
So, so you may see, I'm going to do housing. Let's see.
Housing code?
I'm trying to figure the page. So for example, on page 48, right? You see the housing code? Those are my inspectors. I'm going to give you, paint you a picture of them also. That would be my inspectors in the back. So you see how it says professional services, the film that they use for the cameras? Because we have to have pictures of everything, right? Maintenance repairs of our equipment, computer supplies. You see how year to date, nothing is spent? That's because we just happen to put everything in one bucket under planning. So don't think we don't need the money. That's a management thing that I need to work on to make sure the secretaries are putting it in the right bucket. For example, we needed a CO detector the other day. That should come out of housing. It shouldn't come out of planning or zoning, right? Planning and zoning are the boards and anything that happens in that particular office.
And so, and so to that point.
Right.
I think that speaks to how we're asking the budget to be revised and revamped from how we've done those, handled those processes in the past so that we can get a more accurate picture. And, and I apologize for the interruption.
That's okay. So I just want to let you know, because when you see planning, I want you to be able to compare like page 45. It may say drafting materials and supplies over there, but I have all this money in board of adjustment and housing and everywhere else, which really those are probably the buckets that money should have been taken out of. Any questions about that?
No, I think that is exactly what we were, we were asking for, right? Yeah, that's exactly what we were asking.
But it, but it does sound like, just to, to be clear, it does sound like that these are some of the internal control mechanisms that also.
I'll take responsibility for my department. I can't speak for anybody else, but I know, you know, she was hired during COVID and, you know, I'm sorry, it was crazy. And just like I might take it, if I ask my husband for money, I might take it out of that fund, but I really meant to take it out of that fund. Right, okay.
Well, so why, we, I understand that. And, you know, as I look at these, you know, some of these line items still don't match up. But that, that's what I think we can get to is a more accurate reflection of how.
Absolutely.
You're spending the money. And that will help us, especially in a year like this, when people are either afraid of losing jobs or it's ridiculous your property tax increase.
Sure, well, I'll just speak for that department. If we lose jobs, we might as well just put a sign on the door because we, we don't, we don't have enough people to.
Thank you, Councilwoman Gabor Michael, you have a question?
I do regarding the organizational chart. So I'll wait till you. It's about the third page from the front, planning and development department.
Yes.
You spoke of some inspectors, but I don't see them on this.
Right, so, so let me finish painting my picture then, Councilwoman Gabor Michael. So under planning division, that would be the two individuals I just spoke about.
Well, no, my question is, why is it that the zoning attorney, zoning board attorney and the planning board attorney aren't under here?
They don't report to us. They work for the boards.
Okay, but I, I guess the question is, because if you look at the legal department's organizational chart, the zoning attorney is on there, but then the assistant attorney is not on there nor is the planning board attorney. So it's just a little confusing.
That's an administrative question, but I believe anybody that's an attorney should be under the legal department, obviously.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, I mean, we deal with them obviously every day, but they wouldn't be in a reporting structure like this.
But why is the zoning board attorney under the legal department? Okay.
We have, we have, we'd have gotten all of our attorneys, almost all to the point where they are on contract.
So why is she still an employee?
Mr. Gross, can you talk into the microphone?
She is an employee. And, and that's something that, that.
No, I thought it was a professional service contract.
Decision that was made, you know, that she, she has historically been an employee.
When?
I will have to go back to when, when, years ago, all the attorneys were employees. And then as what, what, what the towns have done, most towns have done, as, as they've changed, when the, when you get a new employee, a new, a new attorney, new attorney comes in for these boards, we just do the same thing. We don't bring them on as employees.
How come?
So it's just a matter of she, she is an employee. She is, you know, I, I suspect until she decides to retire, when she decides to retire.
Which she is, right? In July or June. So my, my question is, how come when we voted on her professional services contract in March for the zoning board attorney, it didn't state that she was an employee?
Because, because.
That doesn't make sense, says she's a consultant.
I'm going to explain to you and it will.
I just wanted to finish what I wanted to say first before.
Okay, 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 thank you.
Go ahead, Mr. Gross.
Attorney, she, as individually, she's an employee. In terms of defending the, the zoning board in court, her firm has to have a, a, a professional services contract. So that's why there's, they're two different things.
So does she get paid for being an employee as well as her services contract?
She gets paid for being an employee. She gets paid $7,000 a year.
What does she get from the professional services contract? But what does that position provide from the professional services contract?
Hourly rate, when, 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 when she defends the zoning board in, in litigation, she gets paid an hourly rate.
Well, what about for attending meetings?
No.
That's, that's in that.
That's all lived in her salary.
Okay, thank you.
You, you can understand how that could be confusing.
If, if, if we don't assume that, that things are, are, oh, I'm, I'm going to go down there.
There's a reason for this. So you just need, you just need to explain, explain it.
Well, it's interesting when, again, we have every other legal person in a vendor contract and then we still have one. I mean, those are questions that are legitimate questions. We have to understand that what, I mean, what, what we need to be mindful of, Mr. Gross, is that, and I have said this repeatedly, while Mr. Rutherford and I have three years or two and a half years sitting as elected officials, we still came in during COVID. So some of the information that is common, you know, we're just as new as our newly elected colleagues in just understanding operations and how things have historically been done in the past. And again, I'm, I'm going to repeat, you know, just for the public so that they can understand, we still got here somehow to, to 16% and we've gotten it down to 10%. But that is not acceptable, it's not sustainable and it's not financially prudent for us as a township. And the impact, the financial impact that it could possibly have on our residents, we have to be mindful as elected officials of that financial impact.
I have a quick question.
Yes.
What's the benefit of having her as an employee versus just contracted out hourly? Could we just explain the rationale?
Well, obviously, obviously, since any, any new attorneys that come on for that, we're not making employees. Our, our policy is not to do so. However, this is a longstanding employee and.
But to that point, we also have a RFP for a new zoning board attorney. So once that, once, once this. It will work itself out much sooner than later. So let's stay focused on the planning and development.
Just one.
Yes, certainly.
I appreciate and I apologize if my frustrations are showing through. The problem that, and, and one of the things that generates the frustration is certainly not the asking the questions. You ask every question that anybody has, we're going to answer that. The frustration comes from oftentimes the, the tone of the questions are as if there is something wrong. And that is troubling. So I'll, I'll just suggest that if we start off with the assumption that, that there's a reasonable, if you don't, if there's something you don't understand, there's something you don't know, because these are reasonable people doing reasonable things and doing them for a long period of time. And so if we can approach it that way, I think that we would cause a lot less frustration.
I think also, Mr. Gross, it's important for you to assume that we are well intentioned and that we are not trying to give you a gotcha question or set you up somehow, that these are genuinely curious questions that need to be answered for us to do our job. It is not with some malintent.
So I think we all have something to think about on that.
I agree, thank you. But we do have Ms. Gary Adams here, so.
Thank you.
Let's focus on her.
So, so I kind of painted a picture of the planning and zoning office, those two employees. And many of you know, the retiree, Rose DeSenna works for me a few hours a week.
And is she, why is she not on this?
She, she is.
Oh, okay, okay, I see her, I see her.
And, and Rose worked in the department, worked for the township for over 20 years. But in training new people for zoning and planning secretary, sometimes you don't know what you don't know. And it is a very busy office. So during COVID, when we hired the two, as you see, keyboarding clerks, I, I realized there were some deficiencies. I couldn't do everything, obviously, and we brought Rose back. She works a few hours a week and it is a tremendous help. It's a tremendous help because she knows a lot of the attorneys. She knows what to do. She knows a situation that you haven't seen before, what to do with that. So she works about five hours a week at $25 an hour. Okay, so that, that's that department. The other side of the coin, if you're going to look at it, is really the inspector's property maintenance. We have three inspectors. We've gone as low as two. My department was the only one that lost a person during the last layoff. And he was gone for four years. William Adonis is the senior, he's bilingual. William Adonis is the senior. He's bilingual. We all know that Fatima came from the clerk's office. She's an inspector doing an unbelievable job. She's really a great inspector. And Lou. So we have three inspectors. And if you see here, Fatima is a trainee. So under civil service, normally when you come into the department and you don't have any experience, um, we make you a trainee. Civil services, you know, after a year, you can promote them. I usually wait two years. I did the same thing with Lou. So as you can see here, um, as a bilingual code enforcement trainee, we're trying to get her the trainee title off of her name. Um, and she's doing a tremendous job. In fact, she saved people's lives a few weeks ago. She did an inspection. She had a CO detector. We have these CO detectors that we carry with us. She was in a basement and there was a hot water heater that was not vented properly and it had, you know, the dryer vent that you're not supposed to use in a hot water heater. She calls me, we call Tom, they get there and there was just a slight bit of carbon monoxide coming out of that equipment. Nobody was living in the house. But the fact that somebody was getting ready to close and buy, she potentially saved somebody's life just from doing that inspection. She's brand new. So that's the type of inspections that we do. We do the section eight inspections. Obviously, we do all the CCO inspections. We do, we have a tremendous amount of apartments. Um, I pulled some data, um, from Shane, actually apartments for seniors, I know you guys were asking that. We have 51 areas where the apartments are four units and up. So that's like Crestmont, um, and, and, um, West Mill and all those places. So all those apartments, as you know, people love to live in West Orange, right? So they're coming here and those inspections are actually higher this year than the single family homes. Because we all know culturally the interest rate is up and the inventory in West Orange is pretty low for houses right now. People aren't selling their houses. You know what they're doing? They're adding decks and pools and going up. I have 45 permits on my desk to look at.
And that's also a result of the, um, area in need of rehabilitation that we implemented and approved um, a couple of years ago, so that people would be able to do that expansion. Um, people were in their homes, working from home. So we do realize that there that there's an impact on people continuing to expand and grow in their current spaces.
Right. So people aren't selling as much, but they're upgrading their homes. A lot of people really stand out and doing some unbelievable, I mean, we're getting one story additions, big additions, decks, pools, you know, the whole gamut. So people want to stay here. So on the flip side, that is my job as zoning official to review every single site plan that comes into the township, every single permit that comes into the building department ends up on my desk. As zoning official, you know, my job is to make sure it meets the code. The zoning, we have 20 different zones in the township. You can have different impervious coverage here down on Main Street, but then if you live on Westmont Road or Ridge Road, it could be a different, there's 20 different zones. So I've been here a long time and, um, we can manage that, but it's a small staff. It's only really five of us and a six person that works five hours a week.
Are there any other questions for the planning and development department?
Yes. So, so Ms.
Oh, I forgot one thing. Go ahead and ask your questions, but I did want to touch on one other thing.
So just going back to, obviously you have four promotions in here. That totaled about $14,000 for your staff.
Everyone. So Fatima.
All together, all, all, all them together. Fatima.
Are those step increases or?
Oh, oh, so Fatima.
And hers, could you want to get her off the trainee?
Trainee, the two keyboarding clerk, one to keyboarding clerk two.
I mean, I'm good because I approve them. I just want you to explain to my colleagues why it was important that you put that in your budget.
Well, okay. So I, I think I've pretty much described what the keyboarding clerk one is. If you look at the, the, um, if you look on civil service.
If you guys listen to her.
Yeah. If you, if you look at what the job description for a keyboarding clerk is, those ladies aren't clerks. They don't take in. They are making decisions, speaking to every professional that comes before our board. Any resident that needs to see an application, making sure again, that by municipal land use law, this is not the law of West Orange. This is a state code that we meet every single condition before that application comes in. And guess what? I forgot something. Once the application is approved, there's another process. The plans have to be signed. They have to follow, but make sure all the conditions are done on, on, on the approved plans. So that when it comes to me and Tom Biondi as the construction official, we have what the board actually approved.
Okay.
There's decision making. That, that's not a clerk. So, you know, I, I leave that to the council, but I, I think you need to know in full disclosure, why other towns are calling us. We're only just calling the other day, Janice, do you, do you have a secretary or a secretary just left? These, these are not easy jobs. They're not.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions for my colleagues?
I have an, I have another comment though also.
Certainly.
Regarding our inspectors, because I forgot a large part of their job deals with the court. And going to court, I know, um, within the last, I would say maybe 10 months, we, we brought in probably about $35,000 in fines, which is on the low end for us. Um, but every complaint that we get does not get abated, unfortunately. You know, people are telling us they don't want to cut their crash. They want, they don't want to paint their house. They don't want to fix the cracked sidewall. And sometimes that ends up in court and that is a lot of time and effort. You need time to go and take your picture. You have to create your file. We have to go to court. We have to prep for court with our legal department. Then we have to go to court and then we're out for a day and a half. So all of that is also a part of their responsibility as a code enforcement officer. And it's a big part of it.
So I, I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
Um.
And we, we, if we can just expeditiously since, so we can try and stay on schedule.
Well, I, I can't promise that we will. I, I do want to understand these things. Um, so on the budget that was originally presented, I understand it may be different on this new one that we got tonight.
What page, Councilman?
Forty-three.
Okay.
We've got, we've got on here $257,020 for total salary.
Yes.
We're up on steps.
I get it. On the hourly pay is for, uh, the, uh, I don't want to use names, but for the third casey, uh, keyboard clerk, right? And so is, and so we didn't utilize the full hourly pay in 2022. Is that because that person only worked a part of the year? Or, because on, on, on here, it says eight, $8,832.09 out of the $18,200. And so if you actually adjusted for that, you're looking at about 247 versus 257.
So correct me if I'm wrong, John, this, this hourly pay must be Rose?
Yeah, Rose.
It's, it's got, it must be Rose, what we budgeted for Rose, even though she doesn't work those hours. She only works about five to 10 hours a week. She's a retiree. She does not want to jeopardize her pension.
I get it. So, yeah, are we doing 18, do you need 18-2 for the hourly workers?
18-2 divided by, I don't know what somebody doing math for me. Like, how many hours is that?
Well, how, I mean, what?
So, so like we have a secretary.
728 hours.
So that's half of the 18.
Divided by 52 weeks is 14 hours a week.
Excuse me, Councilwoman. So when you're a retiree, you're allowed to make up to 15,000 a year.
Well, we're budgeting 18-2. I'm not. I'm just going by the role. Do we need 18-2 for the hourly work or do we need 8,800 for the hourly work?
I would love for her to work, work the maximum, but I thought they could make up to 18,000. I don't know if that changed. I don't know if that changed. What a retiree can make in a year.
There's no longer a cap on what they can make.
Oh.
Well, once they hit a certain number of, well, okay, I don't know. I, I thought it was, okay. So that's fine. But what do we need for the hourly pay? Do we need 18-2? Do we need 9,000? Like what do we?
We don't need half. We, we need more than half.
Well, we spent half of that last year.
Well, last year, she, well, she had just retired.
So I was going to ask, is that because she worked half?
She didn't start back, I don't know, when it. Maybe this summer or something. And she only worked a few hours a week. Yeah, she definitely didn't work the beginning of the year.
So let's, let's.
So you need that whole budget is what you're saying. We're trying to see where we can skim line by line.
$200.
Well, so, no, so listen, this is being serious. I mean, we're, we're going to go through this with every department. So you, you, you said that, you know, for the hourly workers and I, and I'm not trying to hurt anyone here, so we're going to not use names.
I got you.
For the role, for the hourly pay, you said it's about five hours a week, roughly $25 an hour. That comes out to about 6,500 a year if it's five hours a week times 52 weeks a year. We're budgeting 18-2. Can we budget less is the question? That's the, the first one.
Um, we could budget a little less only because like the last two weeks, someone's in another country. So she's working every day for me. So that there's not one person who can't go to lunch and just has to sit at their desk from seven thirty to four thirty.
You're going to hire someone else?
No, no, no. But Rose is that person for me this, the last two weeks, because this particular person had to leave the country for 10, 13 days.
Right. So, so that's not a touch.
I need a little fluff. Not 8,000, maybe, you know, at least give me 15 and then I will adjust.
Fine. What about overtime? 2,500 was budgeted last year, 1,500 spent. Why is 2,500 being recommended this year? Can we drop that to 1,600 to 1,700?
Well, one of the reasons is because they're, hopefully their salary may go up a little bit. And we never know the number of meetings they're going to work overtime. We can't predict that. Sometimes we're in a meeting from eight to 11. Last week, we were in a meeting, or week before, from eight to midnight. So I, I can't predict how long a meeting is going to go and how much overtime they're actually going to need, especially with the way our meetings are going now.
What about other earnings? 1,500 was budgeted last year, zero spent last year. Can we not?
You have to speak to that, Mr. Gross. I don't know about earnings.
Don't forget, a lot of this too is the surplus that he numerated.
We want the surplus and that we want, we don't, we don't want to see, we, that's not what we want. We don't want to see surplus in line items that aren't being used. We want him to move that money to where it needs to be utilized. Yeah.
And Mr. Gross, it would help me if you are adding to the number for the purpose of surplus that you give us a, you know, a, you know, just give us an A next to it, or you know, small letter A or a small whatever. Small letter S, asterisk, something, so that we know the number is inflated to help with the surplus.
We don't, we don't plan surplus. We know that by definition, there will be surplus that is generated. We know from a history of about how much that's going to be. We manage these, these are documents. On a day-to-day basis, we manage the targets. You can ask any of them whether or not their purchases are managed. They are. So we don't plan surplus, but we know by definition there will be. And we know from a history point of view about how much there's going to be. And frankly, um, the, while, while I certainly appreciate your efforts here to, to, uh, make these types of, of cuts. These people do this every day. If your intention is to get X number of dollars out of this budget, council certainly can say to us, say to the department heads, I want to cut this much money out of your budget. And you cut it. And you just cut it. And we'll figure out how, how, how to manage that. And we'll tell you when you do what, what we think the risks are, but it's up to you. You are, you're the council and if that's what you decide to do, that's what you decide to do.
So we, we, we have already asked, um, Councilwoman Catalino, asked what needed to be done to get this budget that you have presented us at 10% down to $300 increase per household.
Less than.
Less than 300.
$300,000.
For 300, exactly.
Rough, roughly 900,000. If, if you're at 10, and that depends on, again, we, there, the decision needs to be made about the revenue side. If you're, if you're down to that number, the 10.1%, it's roughly 900,000 to get you just below 300.
And so one suggestion, um, that we already considered, we didn't act on it yet because we haven't acted on anything, was to remove the $800,000 surplus and allow, and, and possibly allow that to be applied. Um, there, there is some concern from some of my colleagues that certainly we don't want to put us in a jeopardized position. But again, if we're asking you to get us there and you're telling us you're going to get us there, but don't worry about how we get there. What we are trying to suggest is that that might not be the most fiscally responsible process for us to get there. And what we're also asking is how can we, as our elected officials, our legislative body, who handles the purse strings, really understand where we are financially without a clear budget or picture of what each of these categories really need and spend? Like it's okay to have surplus and we understand that you don't budget for surplus. But again, what we're asking is that you budget for based on how you spend.
But Councilwoman, the, the, and I respectfully disagree that, that you don't have that data presented to you. It may not be in the format that you like, but we all deal with things we don't like. And, and, and so what I'm suggesting, and we've, and we've converted that data into the format that you've requested before you, and it is before you. So you have in front of you how much we budgeted. You have before you how much we spent. We have before you how much is left over. What you're talking about is redoing it to, uh, uh, allow it to be in a different format that, that is in, in the format that you prefer. We're trying to help with that. But at the end of the day, to, to suggest that we're not presenting you with the level of detail required to make these decisions, I, I just respectfully disagree. We will, we will do everything we can do to try to, to help the, the change the format of what you're looking at on a timely basis. But some of the things that you're asking or, or asked previously, uh, just couldn't be done in the timeframe to, to create a whole new budget, budget.
We understand that. Okay.
Councilwoman Gabbra Michael has her hand up.
So I'd like to make a motion to remove line item 200 other earnings for 1,500. We have to remove some line items in this budget if we're going to bring down our, uh, proposed tax increase. And I'd like to also, after this motion, go on to the operating and expense and do the same for a couple of line items. So.
Okay. So is there, so there, we have a motion on?
A motion to remove line item 200 other earnings for 1,500. And the salary and wages in planning and development.
Is there a second?
Yes.
Uh, is there discussion?
Yes. Discussion is this. So we're going to do that along way. We're going to do this. This is why I wanted this done the other way, because we're never going to get this done tonight. And I hear you. I know you guys are trying on principle and I get that. And I know we'll wait to submit the budget. We also have a responsibility to operate. And yes, we could delay the budget or whatever, whatever, and we could take 20 meetings. You want to get down to that number? And I, again, I, I said this to you last night too, because I knew this was going to happen. Then we should wipe out everything on here. That's the 800,000.
Yes.
And I know, but you're going to go line by line by line. He could do that and we give it back to us.
Okay. So.
So we, I, I'd rather spend the time instead of making them go through every little thing, I'd rather the directors explain the particular questions so everybody has a better understanding of the department and the need as opposed to, well, you only spent, you know, this on printing this year. I, I, I mean, I, I just think it's better time served for the nuts and bolts of what they do for you guys than to go for everything.
Can I ask a question?
Well, hold on one second. In addition to that, Councilwoman, I know the motion has been properly moved and seconded and we're in the midst of discussion, but because we do have a schedule, again, if we could hold those additional changes to the last hour, so that we can have the commentary from the director. If we're going to direct Mr. Gross to remove the $800,000, then once that's done, we can then come back and look at the line items and make some additional cuts and adjustments.
Okay. And then I make a motion to rescind my motion.
It's been moved and seconded.
Can I ask a question? So I'm assuming then you're going to remove all the line items that haven't been used. Is it, yes or no question?
Some of them.
Not all of them.
Not all, but some.
So how am I going to? Which is why, which is why we want the directors here, so that you all can explain how your departments function. And then perhaps you might have to deal with some additional cuts.
Mr. Gross mentioned layoffs, 150 employees, and we don't want to do that. We'd rather get rid of, we can't do that.
You can't operate that.
Look, you're on bare bones now. So we'd rather go through and, you know, remove some of these line items so that layoffs won't happen. Cause we don't support layoffs. Anyone, people up here, council does not support layoffs at all.
Anybody. And you have to realize, one of my constituents said to me, I had to take a 25% reduction in my salary for two years
because of COVID. And he, this person suggested that non-un.
That person might not be a civil servant, and so that might not apply. So, so that example, that example is not. No, but I wanna make sure we're clear.
Is coming from. I want you to understand that everybody's probably gonna have to cut a little bit. Because the public is coming from this perspective. They are not going to pay these tax increases. I don't mean to interrupt you. I'm a town resident too.
I know.
I live here too. I raised my kids here too. Of course, we all do. So you don't have to explain to me why you're cutting. Right? You don't have to explain to me why you're cutting. I, I get it. I just wanna know. There's no sense in me making a presentation. I gave you what our department does. We're bare bones.
Well, we understand that.
So, but let me finish, let me finish. If you're gonna cut, just let me know what you're cutting.
All right, so I do have some questions so that we can make an informed decision.
But, but right now, some of the additional questions, because I don't know that we're going to. So what we don't have, and we're all frustrated, because whether it was our expectation, and, and I do recall Mr. Gross saying in the last meeting last week that he was not going to give us the entire budget redone, that it would be pages of the cuts. And so now, and, and, and I, and, and we did receive that yesterday evening. None of us have had an opportunity to take the revised information, look at the line items to see what adjustments have been made. So we took one hour so that we could have a presentation from Mr. Gross on what he has done. We now are going through the continued departments. We are asking Mr. Gross, it sounds like we are all in agreement that we are going to take the $800,000 reserve out. And if we're not, then we will discuss that at the last hour of our meeting. If there are any additional questions, I'm going to ask that you meet with the department head outside of this timeframe so that we can continue moving forward.
Respectfully, Council President, we have her here now. People are watching and they're gonna watch later on. Let's just get the questions. And I know the schedule is off. I apologize to all of you that are waiting and going to be here late with us tonight. It is certainly not our desire to, to take your time. But there's, there are questions on what was been, what has been presented already that I think, because the public has looked at this document, that the public deserves an explanation, as do we. So base salary pay, 2022 was 204610. And, you know, we talked about what the increase is today, and I understand the source of that, right? We've got steps and civil servants and whatever. I get it. But it also says that only 86,000 of that was spent last year. How can that be?
Because, um, Ms. Gary Adams, last year, yeah, last year's budget was not a director. This year she is a director, so her salary has been moved. So this will, you know, people come and go in and out of these budgets based on, you know, different assignments as it can be. So if, if you look, uh, if you, there is a, when, when you, and I'm, I'm sure you've seen this because you've all gone through the budget. There is the next page where it shows that everybody that's in this budget, she is now in this budget. Mr. Smoraldo used to be in this budget. He is out. She wasn't in here last year. So these, these shifts are account for the type of variance that you're seeing. So, so I will tell you that the salary and wages, and this is why I only did the OE, the OE, the salary and wages represent exactly the salaries of the people that are gonna be in here. To answer your question, which I tried to get you before, the $1,500 for other earnings is for the meetings. That, that, the, the meetings overtime as opposed to regular overtime. So that's what they're there for. So sometimes, particularly in the salary, we, we have with our systems, when somebody gets paid, their pay gets tagged to a particular line. And it may not make it to the meetings line, but we still account for it because we gotta make sure there's enough money in there for the meetings.
So Mr. Gross, this goes back again to the, to the question that we continue to ask repeatedly. Each of my colleagues are asking this question. Then if we need that money and it can't be cut, why is it not okay, possible, realistic for it to be moved to meetings? Why can't we change that line item instead of it saying other earnings? Why can't it say additional meetings? So that again.
It does say that in the next page.
I'm on page forty-three. The next page is forty-four, which is the salary and wage budget detail.
He means forty-five.
If you're looking there, there's a column for overtime and other. You go down to the bottom, there's the meeting and overtime, right there.
All right, I, I wasn't really done with my questions, so.
Okay, please continue.
So if I understand your answer correctly, Mr. Smoraldo was in this 204610. Then he came out. And then Mrs. Gary Adams was then put in. Was there some gap between the time that that changed, those changes were made? Meaning he came out on day one, she went in on day 100. Because it's still.
Well, you go, you go, you're sure, when the, when you're, the, the budget talks about where we are right now. Any changes that happens later on in, in the year doesn't change the budget because it, unless the budget's adopted, it's adopted. It doesn't, it doesn't.
All right, so, so, so she was included and Mr. Smoraldo were included in the 204610.
Not, no, she was not included.
In the 204.
In, 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 in this, in this budget, this department number 3002. She was not included originally.
No, no, I'm, I'm looking at 3001, planning and development salary and wages. Yeah, base salary pay 204610 expended to date 8626904.
Correct.
I don't understand, I don't understand that. I don't get it. If Mr. Smoraldo came out and immediately Mrs. Gary Adams was.
Other funds earnings are credit minus 84,000. Okay, that is a credit that came to offset Mr. Smoraldo's.
Exit.
No, not his exit.
Is it the HUD?
It, because that's the HUD money for the, the, that, that contribute towards his salary.
Is that part of planning and development? Is HUD part of planning and development?
It was budgeted there last year.
Yes, it still only gets you to 170.
204 minus 84 is 116.
Oh, okay, it's 120. And then one, and then you've got, you said you only spent 86, so there's still a gap. So the 86, the way I did it was, I added the 8626904 and the 84655, and that comes up to about 170.
If you look at the last year, we spent, if you go to the bottom line, I always like bottom lines because it's the bottom line. We budgeted 142 last year. Of that, we spent 96. And if you're, that, that's the facts.
So I, I don't dispute the facts. That very well may be. No, you're not getting pushed back on that. I'm trying to understand how you got there because it, it, it. So, you know, part of what this exercise is, is not just for us to agree, but at the end of the process, if we are forced to raise property taxes, or as you have suggested, layoff folks, which none of us are in support of.
I've never suggested layoffs. I have been very clear that, that layoffs are a potential for this budget.
However you wanna characterize it. If we are forced to do either of those things, it is important that the public understands how we got to that place. So if we just say, okay, these numbers don't make sense, but we're happy with them and we'll keep them, the public is not gonna have confidence in us when we ask them to swallow the bitter pill, whatever that bitter pill may be, layoffs, property tax increases. So it's not just for our sake that we're going through this. It is to help make sure that when this process is over and we ask the public to, to, to swallow that pill, they understand how we got there. So, so that's my question. These are the questions that I had. I, I understand the other fund earnings, 84655, that's coming from HUD. I understand the budgeted amount for the hourly pay. That is for your a, a, assistant that helps with the, filling the gaps. I get it. On an hourly basis, I am not in favor of the fulling team, but we'll wait for the last hour to make the suggestion. I put it on my, put my notes in there. I do not understand how we got from 204610 budgeted to 86269. And then if we're now going to say that the bottom line is the bottom line, we spent 96655, now we're up to 265887, and we've not added a single employee.
You have added employees. I just told you that Ms. Gary Adams came over. And the person who left was a, was a, was a good portion, major portion of the salary, if not all the salary that was budgeted in here was offset. So we added a, this is an addition of Ms. Gary Adams to this budget.
So Mrs. Mrs. Gary Adams was not on, in the planning and development salary and wages last year. Okay, so I just asked that and you said.
I said she was not. I said she was.
You said Mr. Smoraldo came out and Mrs. Gary Adams came in.
That's right, because she was out. She came in because she was not in there.
Do y'all understand that? If y'all are comfortable, you understand.
I, 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 I don't understand how we get to 265887.
I've been doing this a long time, so I'll step back, but.
I don't know. I, I don't understand how we're at 265887. Because if I, so, so if we, if we're adding up the total salaries, it's 257020.
257 plus $4,000 for, um, the overtime and wages. Uh, and plus the 4867, which were requested promotions. And that comes to 265867.
And so we've already, we've already removed those.
We removed the promotions.
Maybe, maybe I should, I apologize again if, if I haven't been clear or helpful in this. But, uh, you, you've gone through and familiar, the format of all these salary pages at the very top of the columns are totals, and that they, you, you take them across and that adds up to the total.
Right, but we have the 265887 for the total, but we removed 4867.
Because he didn't change it. He didn't change this.
Well, then that helps.
Last week's budget.
No, he did. He gave us some updates.
You're going off the new page.
Yeah, we were talking about the updates that he provided to us.
On that.
There's no update in the salary. No, the salaries, he said.
The salary and wages.
He only did the operating.
At actual salary.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, he only did operating.
The only, the only thing that is not actual is our estimates.
So then, so then that being the case. So that being the case, if these little salary, if these little things. Well, I was not gonna say it will matter.
No, 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 no. I'm saying, but I mean, as far as for tonight, like you're looking at it, he.
But that ultimately can get us down even more than 10%.
Yes.
We're at 10%.
And I definitely do that with every department.
But he calculated it. He just didn't give you the, the paperwork for that. So this is only OE. But the 10%, am I, am I, did I understand you right when I asked you these questions last night? The 10% is already took, took after five, the 550 that we all did last week. That's not.
Everything that from last, I, I, I updated. I, I'm, the salary and wage lines are actual numbers, the salaries that are required to the staffing that we have. The only thing that is not actual is our estimates for overtime and other expenses that are not directly related to, or directly.
Does that answer my question? The 4867 for this particular budget?
What is the 4867?
That's the open positions and the promotions.
We, that's done. So we did that, we calculated in the 10%.
Yes, that, we, that's, that's included in the, the, the things that were taken out at the last meeting.
Okay, that, that's, that answers my question.
So I'm clear, so I'm clear. They're, they're not getting this then, right?
No, we, we, we removed all promotions.
I just wanna be clear because I don't know why I have this then.
Well, that's, that's what we're saying, that we didn't get an update yet. Mr. Gross has not had an opportunity to, to give us the updates.
Clear that every time you make a change, we're not gonna be in a position to return to you a brand-new budget reflecting those changes. Those changes are gonna be, they are kept track by, by Madam Clerk. And, and those are the changes until, until it's adopted, it will not be updated until you're done. We cannot, do not have the resources or the people, unless we're gonna pull everybody off of everything else they're gonna do, and we're not gonna do that. We cannot provide you a brand-new document every time there's changes made.
Well, we don't have to have a brand-new document every time there is changes, but prior to adoption, once we've gone through all the changes, we do need to see an updated document.
I just have one more question.
And that's fine. Just for you, I'm Ms. Gary Adams. Because apparently it wasn't communicated to you. In our last meeting, we decided that no promotions would be given this, in this budget.
Does that include the person that was the trainee?
Yep, yep. Anything that's considered a promotion or even a new position has been removed.
I don't have any new positions.
I'm just letting you know, this is for all departments, all divisions.
And I should.
Except for police and fire and the school crossing guards, we've eliminated all open and new positions and all promotions to try to bring this increase.
What we're trying to do is prevent layoffs.
Keep people in their jobs is what we're trying to do.
I told you if there's layoffs, you might as well shut the office.
That's what we're saying. We know we're at the bone.
Right. All right, so thank you.
We're pretty, any more questions for me then?
One more question, uh, Councilwoman Catalino.
I just wanna make one more point for the sake of clarity for, for this evening and for the, for the director. So the whole purpose, you're saying, well, then why am I here tonight? The whole purpose that I thought we said, because I had supported some of these after we talked about them, is for the directors to make their point of, you know, for their needs. So if something was taken out and you feel that's.
She doesn't even know what was taken out is what she's saying.
Well, I could tell you right now, you're, none of your staff is getting their promotion.
Well, that's what we've said, and she's heard that from all three of us.
So I'm saying, so the directors have an opportunity to, to, you know, to come here and explain why sometimes those promotions happen.
So that is across the board for every single department, just to be clear.
Yes, thank you.
Wait, there's still a motion on the table, by the way? We still have to deal with the motion on the table?
We, we had, we had a staff meeting afterwards. I apologize if, if it wasn't made clear enough at the meeting. We did announce at the meeting that, that the, the promotions were removed. So I apologize to you if I didn't make that clear enough at, at the meeting. But I, I know that we, you know, we certainly discussed all the changes. But as far as promotions are concerned, those were all removed.
Some of the open positions we.
And open positions, most, the majority of the open positions.
All, all, all open positions except for police and fire.
That's what I said.
Yes, that's what we just said.
Cross the police fire department.
Yes.
All right, so I think we will dismiss Ms. Gary Adams. I wanna say.
There's no motion.
I, I, okay. Thank you. We will dismiss Ms. Gary Adams.
Thank you, Council.
Thank you very much.
Anybody has any additional questions, you know how to get me.
Thank you. And we had a motion that had been properly moved and seconded. Um, we can either vote that motion down. It is now owned by the body, so we can move forward.
For to remove other earnings in the amount of $1,500.
Or, or we could just do one clean swipe at the end of the.
Yeah, well, we, what we.
Can I comment on this resolution?
Sure. We're, 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 we're gonna, well, we can table it. We can table it.
Well, it's already been offered and we have to vote, right?
Yes, I'm just waiting for a vote.
So I, what I would recommend we do is vote no now and then revisit it at the end.
That's what I've asked us to do.
Just to move on.
So as far as the other parts of the budget, I understand the promotion, the other parts of the budget, when am I gonna know whether I have that one?
Well, that's up to Mr. Gross to advise you of that. We can't advise you of that. So we're gonna continue to make, we're, we're gonna continue to make some changes and adjustments. And then as Mr. Gross has indicated, that those are, are captured by the clerk. And then the clerk will communicate those to Mr. Gross. And Mr. Gross, before adoption of this budget, I don't know what date that is going to be, uh, will have to provide each of us, and hopefully that will infiltrate, trickle, trickle down to the department head so you all are aware. But that's on, that's on you all's side because that's an internal, um, operational control. So you can speak to him about that in your next director's meeting.
The departments will not know what their budgets are until you adopt it.
Okay.
So it'll be.
So that's fine. All right, so, um, Madam Clerk, the roll call for the vote?
Yes.
All those in favor?
All in favor? No, no.
No, those who oppose, please, no, or nay. Nay.
Nay, nay.
She's got it.
No, she doesn't.
I'm a little confused. I said all in favor.
And there was nothing.
Okay, any opposed?
No.
Yes, some opposed.
Yes, yes, yes.
Yes, five opposed.
Thank you.
Before we have, I need a bio break for the next one. I've been drinking coffee, sorry.
Okay. All right, we'll take a two-minute recess. And next on deck is our police. So we'll ask Chief Abbott if he will join us at the hot seat. Um, I'm going to call the meeting back to order. I want to thank our chief of police, Mr. Jimmy Abbott, for your presence here today so that you can give us an. I want to thank our Chief of Police, Mr. Jimmy Abbott, uh for your presence here today, so that you can give us an explanation on your budget. Um we are turning to page fifty-two. Page fifty-nine for the general public, if you wanna follow along with where we are. Um the actual budget for our officers.
That's other expense.
Actually starts.
Fifty-two.
On page fifty-two. With the police salary and wages. Um Chief Abbott.
So most of the increases are, uh, all the increases are contractual. People move up in steps and so on. So we, we went up to looks like two and a half percent. And two point seven for non-uniform and twelve point one on the dispatchers.
Sorry, I didn't hear you, Chief. Could you please speak up, please?
All of the uh, the increases in salaries and wages are contractual steps, et cetera. So we went up two point five percent for base hour uniform, two point seven on non-uniform, twelve point one on the dispatcher. The hourly pay went up thirty-seven point five, I see. Cross, crossing guards went up too. We, we asked for a large increase in the crossing guards. To, uh, I, I believe covered the privatization.
And by that you mean not having police officers do it, have non-police officers?
Yes, yes, sir.
I had a question.
Do we? I'm sorry.
Line item a hundred, the overtime for uniform.
What page?
Uh, on that page, fifty-two, yes. Uh, so I'll start again. Um line item a hundred, overtime uniform.
Yes.
Nine hundred seventy-five thousand was budgeted in twenty twenty-two.
Right.
One point three million was spent. Why are we budgeting nine hundred seventy-five? Why not budget one point five million to cover? So there's in a shortfall.
So normally um we, we use slippage as people retire. Most, most police and fire retire February first. That's the most common date. Um so you, you end up with the remainder of the year to put toward the overtime. You, you know, we normally come in at or under budget.
This is a perfect example of why I talk about we, but we, we, we manage from the bottom line. I mean, they spent a lot more last year, but we know from history that, that this is a, this ended up a blended rate, it was all at the bottom. So, you know, if, if we went ahead and um budgeted for exactly what we spent last year. And we budgeted exactly what our employees that we have here. We would end up increasing blend-up direction where you're trying to go. This, we know this worked. We could do this type of budget.
This doesn't work. This doesn't work. No.
We, we know that it works because we know that we've been able to keep our expenses down uh over that period of time. The policies before of, of zero, you know, the, the zero increases and very, and very small increases. Want to hear to your face.
I, I think honestly what we're really shining our light on is the, the fact that we just have a philosophical difference in how we budget. I think the people that are sitting around this table, while we do understand what it means to budget at the bottom line. Again, what we're asking is not to budget at the bottom line, so that we can get a more true and accurate budget. We understand the reserves. We understand that the slippage. We understand all those things. But what we are, what we continue to, to, to support and advocate for is a true and actual budget. And then, and unfortunately, over the past years, several of them, maybe as much as the time that you have been here. You all have historically have done it in a different philosophical way. And we're, we're suggesting that we do something different.
And I just wanna say, my constituents are asking for the same thing. They're looking at every one of these. I have five pages that they sent to me, typed up. And they wanna be able to look at this and understand it. They all do complex budgeting in their jobs, they're finance people. They want it done right.
And it's not that it's done wrong. Again, that's why I was critical in saying there's a philosophical difference in how you get to the end result. And we, we're just not satisfied with the way it's always been done.
Excuse me, Council President, for all those constituents listening, they need to realize that you have been following this for many, many years. Mr. Gross inherited the budget. And for the past couple of years, he has been cleaning up a lot of line items with different transfers and making it more legible and understanding.
And we appreciate that. And I appreciate your bringing it to my attention a while ago.
Yes, so I just.
And I will stress, this budget, this budget process provides incredible amounts of data. And maybe that's the problem. Maybe, maybe there's too much data there and, and that's something we can talk about. But, but as a matter of, of transparency, we have always tried to give out. More, not less, information. And this, if you look at the deep level of detail, just on this page, it's incredible the amount of detail here that you have before. So I know, we, man, we, I, I'm not gonna apologize for that. I'm not gonna apologize for this format. This is a format that works in municipal government. It's been working in municipal government for a long time. And I appreciate that you'd like to do something different. We respect that. But we, and, and I also understand that you respect the way that this has been done, is the way that many professionals such as myself have been doing this for a long time as well. So we, we will try our best to help you understand thi- this. Uh and, and give you additional information or as best we can. When you, when you look at the bottom lines, the bottom lines are, are not, uh, not in debate.
Let, let's um continue to hear from Chief.
So if, you know, if I'm understanding it correctly, you, you would prefer to budget what we actually spent.
Correct.
So I, I think this applies to any department head, not just police. It's really more the salary and wage side, which comes under the CFL. But you, you will have to budget, you know, I'm gonna use round numbers. You're gonna have to budget a million four instead of nine seventy-five. That's just adding to what, you know, not, not detracting from what. At the end of the year, when all these people retire, retire in February, you'll have a surplus. You're gonna spend the same amount of money either way. You'll have a surplus left over, but you're, you're front-loading your budget. You're, you're putting all that money up front and then having leftover at the end. I don't know if that's something you wanna do. That's entirely up to you. It's really, as, as I said, it's really got nothing to do with any individual department head. Cause I, I'm sure this is gonna come up with police and fire and everybody.
Councilman.
Um so a couple, a couple of questions for me. So I, I see the two and a half percent increase on the top line, base salary pay for uniformed officers. But that is, to, to your point about the format, that's actually, and, and it's, it's technically right, because it's two and a half percent more budgeted this year than last year. But it's really about five percent more budgeted than was spent last year on that, on that line item, because we spent nine and a half million of the nine point eight that was budgeted. So if you go ten million.
Two point three is the, is the increase from the button. That's correct.
Two point five, yes. Yeah, so I, 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 you know, it's just a different way of looking at it.
Does that include their step? Or is that in addition to their step?
The, the two point five?
Yes.
I believe that's the full vote. That's everything. Steps, contractual raise, everything. Is that correct?
No, that's, it, it, it is their, it's their base salary.
Okay, I'm sorry.
It's base salary and then there's, you know, the other factors are out, again, identified separately all down, something that most municipalities don't do. It is, is to do that. So um we, we do it both ways. We tell you how much the total salary is, and we also tell you on this page how to put the breakdowns.
Alright, so my, my second question, and that was not really a question, it was just a statement. Um the second line or line number or category, account name zero one five, base salary pay, non-uniform. Last year we budgeted three hundred forty-nine thousand, nine hundred twenty-nine dollars. We spent two thirty-five, three eighteen, and we're adding, we're increasing uh just by ten thousand from a budgeted standpoint to three hundred fifty-nine thousand, seven hundred fourteen. I need to understand how we got there. That's a roughly a hundred and twenty thousand dollar difference um from what was actually spent last year.
I assume that vacancies.
Well, we, yeah, we'd have to go back and look and see what the vacancies were or what, you know, the, the.
So that makes sense. So that's, that's folks that were non-uniformed that left or weren't hired, either left mid-year or weren't hired.
Mostly, probably mostly weren't hired. We, we had a number of vacancies that we attempted to fill, we just couldn't fill. And, and it's, well, dispatches, yeah, it's, it's gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna submit, it's probably the parking enforcement officers that we're unable to hire. Clerical workers weren't able to hire. We advertised, did our best.
Same thing with the crossing guards, right? That, item number thirty-seven, hourly pay crossing guards. Six hundred and one thousand was budgeted last year, six hundred eighty-three spent, but eight hundred and thirteen thousand is being requested.
Because they have a thirty-five point one percent increase.
In order to get crossing guards.
It's increased their pay.
We had to increase salary.
So what was the, um, what was the base salary for crossing guards prior to this increase that's been recommended?
Above minimum wage first.
So that's, is that thirteen?
Salary, uh, we're now at the twenty-two, twenty-two eighty, I think, for twenty, twenty dollars.
And what do most crossing guards get in other municipalities?
The survey that we did was, it was comparable to our top, our top pay, which is why we went to the top pay.
And have we been able, when did we go to the top pay?
We've done better. That's the twenty, I guess twenty dollars and eighty-seven cents an hour.
And when did we increase that? So new hires for uniform?
And everybody comes in at the same pay.
At twenty-two?
Steps. There's no steps.
At twenty-two. But my question is, when did we increase the pay for the crossing guards? Because it seems like we still have vacancies, a tremendous amount of vacancies in crossing guards.
We still have vacancies in crossing guards. Uh, we did it, I would say about three or four months ago.
And so how many have we hired?
Say that, maybe, maybe, it might have been tons flying quite fast. Maybe it was six months ago.
Six, so how many new hires have we, crossing guards have we hired since the pay increase?
Yeah, we're, we're, we were really in a bad way. We were holding entire ships over to cover posts.
Yeah.
And, and one of the, one of the things is it's not a benefit, it's a benefit that town's giving away, but it's just the legality of, they get vacation days now, sick days and things like that, so.
But do we still, I, I mean, I still haven't received the answer to my question, which is, we increased substantially the pay. How many crossing guards have we been able to hire? I mean, because quite frankly, we're trying to figure out if we need to keep all these open slots for crossing guards. And, and I, I, I'm, I'm not suggesting that we don't, but if there's anywhere where we can limit and reduce, because they haven't been hired. And the increase is not substantial enough where they all need to be in there. Maybe we can reduce two or four or five. We don't know that.
We, we did a study. We reduced a couple. There was a little pushback here and there, but for the most part, it really wasn't an issue.
Aren't you making up an overtime though?
Well, that's the question. What is the impact to overtime by hiring these crossing guards? So if we are successful now that we've increased the pay, that is a twenty dollar and eighty-seven cents or whatever per hour figure for a crossing guard. Instead of, you know, forty or fifty, or sixty an hour for a police officer. So what is the, do we have a way to quantify what the impact to overtime would be by hiring, by spending an additional? If we spend an additional two hundred thousand dollars or so on crossing guards?
We, 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 we've done, we've done work, but it's not, it's not pure, you can't, it's difficult because of scheduling to, to, to be precise about it. But we've done estimates that are, are additional overtime because of, of crossing, not having crossing guards. Between, between one hundred to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
So then that means we're.
In addition to what we were already anticipating, so.
So the two hundred thousand won't be wiped out by overtime. Some portion of it would be wiped out, but not all of it.
I'm sorry.
So, so the line item for crossing guards, we spent, we budgeted six hundred thousand last year, six oh one, six eighty-one. We spent six hundred eighty-three thousand, eight eighty-seven point two eight. Now we're budgeting eight hundred thirteen thousand, eighty dollars. So depending on which line you go from, you're going either two hundred and thirteen thousand, two hundred twelve thousand, or a hundred and thirty thousand. But it's uh between a hundred and thirty and two hundred and twelve thousand dollar additional expense to hire these crossing guards. On, on top of the overtime, I get it.
No, on top of, no, no. A hundred to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in addition to what we would have spent on crossing guards.
Alright, so you're saying, just so that I understand accurately, even spending the eight hundred thirteen, we're still gonna have a hundred to a hundred and fifty thousand in overtime for police?
In other words, we have a shortage. So if we allocate, well, you know, we, we spent crossing guard, but we would have spent that money, we, we spent overtime. But we would have spent that money on crossing guards. Well, we deducted that, because that's a legitimate argument. Because if it's a wash, you know, it doesn't matter. And on top of that difference, that's between a hundred and a hundred and fifty. It may be more. I mean, it, again, it's not pure scheduling.
You mean a hundred and a hundred and fifty more in overtime?
In overtime, on top of the two, the difference.
Right. So, so that means, so, and, and now, now that I'm, I'm clear on which line item we're talking about. So overtime for uniformed officers, nine hundred seventy-five thousand was budgeted, one point three million was spent. We're budgeting another nine hundred seventy-five thousand. That nine hundred and seventy-five thousand that has been requested for overtime includes this additional hundred to a hundred and fifty thousand that you're talking about to help cover the.
No, no. See, the, look, the, the million four, why is that higher? Well, that's because, in, in part, you know, in major part, because of the crossing guards. So, so, so you could say, well, I don't need the crossing guards in, but, but yeah, you do, because that'll bring down your overtime figure.
Right, and that's, so that's what I'm trying to get at. The, 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 the reduction in the overtime figure. As a result of hiring all of these crossing guards.
That aren't hired.
Would be about a hundred to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars above what we actually pay the crossing guards. Is that what you're saying? So we're gonna pay two hundred thousand more for the crossing guards.
And then we're still gonna have overtime.
If you got rid of the crossing guards, the nine seventy-five would be probably nine seventy-five plus uh three fifty. So you're at about one point three maybe, and we would have to budget that.
So that, so then what I just said is a different way of saying.
Exactly what's.
What you just said. You're saying, just so we're clear, and so that people that don't spend time doing this on a daily basis understand. We're, we're budgeting approximately two hundred thousand dollars more for crossing guards. And by doing that, we eliminate the need for some of the overtime currently being budgeted for police. To the tune of, not just the two hundred thousand we pay the crossing guards, but an additional a hundred and fifty thousand, because we pay police more than we pay crossing guards. Is that an accurate statement?
We are, we now are communicating, yes.
Alright, so, so that's part of the reason why you're not requesting as much in overtime.
Yes.
Is because you expect to fill these spots with crossing guards.
Correct, sir.
But we know we can't. We know, but, but, and to that point, we have had an increase for the past six months. In the fee that we're paying our crossing guards, and we still have all of these vacancies. It has not, it has not had the impact, the increase in the fee has not had the impact and ha, and given us the capacity to reduce this overtime. So my question is then, why are we keeping all of the positions? We can still reduce them some.
Who's paying the overtime?
Take out the two hundred thousand and add four hundred and fifty or three hundred and fifty to the overtime. You'll, you'll, you're, the math doesn't work. You, you're better off. We, we need to continue to try to find crossing guards.
You have to cover those last meeting.
And, and at the last meeting, we said the re, the only way we're advertising for them is on the website. Well, I doubt all the people who are older, who would like the job of the crossing guard are going to our website. Maybe we just need to be, think outside the box about how we look for our crossing guards.
Well, that's why we talk about it at meetings. That's why, that's why Mr. Fagan announces it, and that's why I'm certain the, the.
It's on Facebook.
Talked about these things.
Maybe we.
My update is twenty dollars and eighty cents?
Twenty eighty-seven.
Send down.
In the last budget meeting, we made it clear, we need to keep all crossing guards.
Well, I'm not, I'm not suggesting that, I, I just wanna look at the numbers. And again, if the numbers don't add up and don't make sense, and it's somewhere where we can make some reductions, then that's what's important. Because at the end of the day, we still are looking at a budget with a ten percent municipal increase, and that is absolutely unacceptable to our residents, to myself. I'm a homeowner.
Okay, okay, but at the same time, and, and for the sake of everyone's sanity, is this, those, and I get what you're saying. But we gotta strive to get those positions filled. Otherwise, next year, move them to overtime. So if they don't get it, I think it's fair to. So if they don't get it, I think it's fair to say they don't get it filled. Move it, because it's not like we're not spending that money. That money's gonna be spent on the overtime, but the goal is to get them filled. So I get, I hear what you're saying, but it, it doesn't help us with the ten percent budget.
Okay. Any other questions? Mister Chief Abbott, have you finished your summary? Because we keep asking questions and interrupting you before you.
Yeah, actually, I prefer to answer questions.
Okay. So one of the other things that we wanted to point out is that we have a hundred and fifteen salary positions, fifty-seven hourly positions. The salary positions are our uniformed officers and non-uniformed officers is my question. Or is it, how do we break down the one hundred and fifteen for the salary positions?
So we definitely have salary civilian positions. We have salary dispatchers. We have, um, salary support staff. That would add up to the one fifteen.
And then we have twenty-eight open positions under the department. So if, if we, we did agree that we wanted to put a freeze on any additional hiring, but can you give us information on the twenty-eight open positions and why they are absolutely necessary? If, if it's possible that any of those can be reduced?
They're, they're listed, they're listed on pages fifty-four, fifty-five, uh, and fifty-six. Even further on, you know, the crossing bars, et cetera. Those numbers that you see at the top are, are a combination of these documents that, that we've included in your package. And so, and every, the open positions, we put a column in with open positions and promotions so we can point out to you the, those positions.
And then I had another question on, um, the open position. So I'm looking at police officer training step salary. Um, open positions and promotions, they're coming in at eighty-six thousand, nine hundred and thirty-one dollars, open with benefits. But it looks like police officer training, um, only makes fifty-eight thousand. Can you explain why there's that discrepancy?
Because the, the open positions, um, include benefits, where we, you know.
So we're going to hire new officers. So that, so what we're, what we're saying is that the offices that are here now don't have benefits and their salary is fifty-eight? And then we're gonna hire new people after them at eighty-six?
They retired and we're still paying their benefits. So anybody new that comes in is gonna be additional cost to us for benefits.
Are, are you all clear on that?
No.
I, I'm not, I'm confused.
So we, we have new retirees that we, we budgeted, that, that have decided to go.
Do they make fifty thousand dollars for the base salary, four hundred and fifty-two dollars for their base? So where are they on?
When they leave, the retirees leave.
That's great.
We continue to pay their health benefits. So when we hire their replacement, we have to budget for their, the new health benefits too. Because we're gonna continue to pay our retirees' health benefits. We don't, it's not like the employee that leaves that we, that we now have. We, we, we don't, we have a, a reduction on our health benefit line. It doesn't. Our health benefit line stays the same. So when you bring in that new employee, we have to add on to that. That's the nature of.
Right, so I, I, I'm, I'm still confused, because it looks like that a new hire, if you've already, if you've been here, you have a base salary of fifty thousand, four hundred and fifty-two dollars.
That's right. And their, their health benefits is budgeted somewhere else. Maybe that's the confusion. Their health benefits are budgeted with their health benefits. I don't, didn't, I didn't do that here, because you have, when somebody knew, I'm trying to make sure that when that you see the impact of, of, of hiring these positions. And so I'm identifying here and.
And so I don't see, what I don't see is, um, when they were hired. So it doesn't have the actual date of the hire associated with the actual.
When we, when we printed this, um, I don't think they had been hired yet. So we may not even have had their names at that point in time. They're open positions, so we don't know when they're hired.
No, I'm looking at people who have a name beside the actual police officer training step.
So is your question is what does a new hire make?
Yes.
Okay. They, they, they start.
But a new, new hire in an open position makes eighty-six, nine, thirty-one.
And that includes their health benefits.
And a person that is not a new hire makes fifty-eight, four eighty-three. And, and that's with their benefits.
No, not with their.
Where are their benefits?
The benefits are budgeted somewhere else.
Where else are they but?
Under benefits.
Under benefits.
Their existing benefits.
And they also have a four fifty-seven contribution?
Those are for the new hires, because they're not gonna get the retiring benefits. That was the last contract.
So ultimately, I guess my question is, when you look at someone who has already been hired and they have a fifty-eight thousand, four hundred and eighty-three dollar salary and a four fifty-seven contribution, and a new person comes in at eighty-six, is the newest person coming in making more than the person that's already been here?
No, because the eighty-six has their benefit in there.
Includes the benefit in.
Even though it's not listed here. Because the benefit's not, not active, he, he listed here. Once it becomes an active and they're, um, uh, getting their healthcare benefits, then it goes to the health benefit category.
Okay.
That's why it shows the guys that are already on making.
So, so basically then, it, it, no, it's not confusing to the public. We're basically, basically, the very thing that we're asking for, which is a actual budget attributed to line items, is selectively done in this department, but not done elsewhere.
No. The category.
Because it's broken out. You're breaking it out in line items.
As, since it was an open position, and since open positions were something that I knew, given the, the, the status of this budget, that it was something that you were gonna look at, I wanted to give the council the ability to look in one place and see what the value was of, of that position. So that you could make, instead of, in, instead of budgeting it in two different places and make you go back and forth, or maybe not even think about going back and forth, I tried to present to you the, the, the total amount. I was, I, I thought that I was, it was, it was a, a, and I, and perhaps misguidedly.
No.
I, I thought that it was, and that's why I put it in a separate column.
Okay.
You know, so that it was, it was, give you the opportunity to see the full picture at a single glance as opposed to have to go all over the place.
So my next question, Chief Abbott, we have ten open positions. If we were to put a hiring freeze on those ten open positions, how would that impact your department?
Drastically.
And can you explain to us why?
Sorry.
Can you explain to us why?
Because we're holding, we're people over now just for staffing purposes. I mean, we, you know, we just, we're down. I've got three in the Essex County Police Academy set to graduate. I've got seven in the Passaic County Police Academy set to graduate, and I've got five that should start the Morris County Police Academy in July.
And so how long is the academy?
Um, in fact, if I'm not mistaken, you know, some of these are actually, they're saying vacant, but they're actually.
Well, this is one that, when this was printed, they're, they're actually now all, as a now they're all hired.
Really? Because these, the ones that start in July have, already have a conditional offer of employment. Because the, the timeframe that it takes to get somebody in the police academy, do the background, do the medical, do the psychological, do the urine test, all this stuff, this, this takes time. So you can't do any of that until you give them a conditional offer of employment. So they have that.
And so when they go to the academy, what's the time spent in the academy until they really come on to the department?
Four plus months probably, and then you have a, a three-month, uh, field training officer program, but they do count in the staffing level. So if they're in a two-person car, then both those officers count for a staffing level, so it doesn't affect the overtime as much.
And so once you give them a conditional letter of employment, as soon as they start going to the academy, they are eligible for this salary that we're seeing?
They're in the training step, correct. I think it was fifty-four, whenever it was.
I'm sorry?
Fifty thousand, four fifty-two. That's the, that's just their salary, that was, that's not their pension payment.
But I'm looking at open positions and promotions in the same eighty-six, so that includes their health benefits is what you're saying?
If you look right next to it, it says open with benefits.
Right, I see that. But it doesn't have their four fifty-seven contribution here, and all new hires get a four fifty-seven contribution. So then what is the actual number? Because it only says open with benefits and it doesn't have their four fifty-seven contribution. So does that mean that this eighty-six thousand, nine hundred and thirty-one is lower because the four fifty-seven contribution is not indicated?
The four fifty-seven is on, which is about five thousand dollars.
So where is that reflected in the budget?
That, that is in the four fifty-seven.
Yeah, there's another category in the budget for four fifty-sevens.
Well, can you point that out? Because I don't see the health benefits either on here. Can you point out where that is on the budget?
It's fourteen million dollars. It's one of the biggest ones you've looked at.
So you lump all of them together under that? Everybody, all the employees?
I, you, when you looked at it, I'm sure you saw that there's a section for employees, there's a section for retirees, by, by health benefit, by prescription, by, um, by dental.
Can you direct us to that page?
I know, I've seen it.
I have some other questions. I mean, I'm happy to wait. I have some other questions.
No, go ahead. I mean, he can find that while you're asking your questions.
Alright, so a couple of other questions. For, uh, dispatchers, the increase, is that to increase their pay or is that to hire more?
What line are we talking about?
Uh, sixteen base salary pay civilian dispatchers.
What page are we on, please?
Fifty-two.
Okay.
Combination steps.
Fifty-two?
Yeah.
And where, where, what, what number on fifty-two? Oh, one oh six civilian dispatchers?
Uh, sixteen.
Okay.
Zero one six.
Okay. And so base salary pay, and the departmental increase went up. And, and so do we have an explanation of why that, that's a twelve point one percent increase if we're not filling any new positions there?
Step increases.
So twelve pu, twelve percent step increases? How many civilian dispatchers do we have?
So is that, is that listed as public safety telecommunications? That's the dispatcher? Right, so, so it is, the, so these numbers that are reflected on the, on the budget, and now I'm looking at page sixty-five. I mean, I'm sorry, fifty-six. These numbers that are reflected here at the bottom of page fifty-six, public safety telecom operator, I guess, that reflects their increased step?
It, it reflects their actual salary, which if they, if they have not received, they've not to the top step yet, it includes their step for this year.
Are any of them on the job, and I don't wanna use names, are any of them, have any of them been on the job less than a year? Because we have, we have four here that are making thirty-five or thirty-seven thousand dollars.
And then the others are over fifty.
I'll be happy to send you their.
Tenure. I'd like to know how long they've been on the job. And then you only have two open positions.
They've been filled recently, but after you've got this.
Okay. So I think to the council president's point earlier, Mister Gross, I don't think there's an issue with presenting the number with benefits or without. It's just when you present some with benefits and some without it, it causes a little confusion on our part.
Speaking of benefits, sorry, Councilman Rutherford, page one twenty-one, one twenty-two, one twenty-three, one twenty-four. Has all the pension and, uh, retirement system.
One twenty-two is four fifty-seven.
Yeah, one twenty-two is the four fifty-seven contribution plan.
Alright, um, I have, I have a couple more questions here. We talked about overtime. So now that you've hired the two new open positions, would that allow us to then cut some of the overtime that's budgeted on one oh six for dispatchers? We had a hundred thousand budgeted, sixty-five thousand spent last year, another hundred thousand budgeted.
You know, again, if you, if you cut it, you, you don't have it if you need it. Uh, we have, we have a high turnover with dispatchers.
Wouldn't they take the salary of whoever they replace?
Not less.
And, and, um, we, we can, our biggest problem, and it's a different issue, is, 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 is finding and retaining dispatchers. We need the overtime, because if we don't pay our current, this, we have seven, I think.
We have, we have nine in part-time when we're fully staffed.
Well, I'm sorry.
We have nine in full-time and one part-time.
So.
But are we fully staffed?
You, you, you're required to have two, you're required to have two dispatchers.
Uh, you correct me if I'm wrong, two dispatchers at all times, at least two at all times. So that's twenty-one shifts, that's forty-one, um, so true, that's forty-one shifts a week um, from nine people. So nine times five, that's forty-five. So in theory, you could have some, you, you could actually need that. But you have paid time off.
No, I, I get it.
My point is, the point is, there's always gonna be vacancies, and you're always, always, and, and.
But when there's a vacancy.
It never happens at the right time when you have the extra staff.
But when there's a vacancy and you feel that vacancy, they're also feeling that, that salary that's already budgeted for. We're not, we're not gonna.
Talking about overtime. We're talking about overtime.
So, but if we have nine full-time is fully staffed, I understand we may not have a part-time. At least I didn't see it on here, so.
There is one part-time Ken, you're out, he's been with us for years. So, um, it's very important. There's, um, yeah, it was one, one Friday.
So.
There, there's history lesson, when, when Sam Spino wanted to totally civilianize the desk, other than the sergeant, the desk officer, or lieutenant, or, or certain capacity, um, patrol captain, and I said to, then Chief Parton, we have to build on a relief factor if we're gonna do this, because people get vacations, people get sick, and we wouldn't hire more people. So it's been that way ever since. I've always tried to get additional people, but it's not an easy task to convince the council that's looking to hopefully not cut anybody to add people. Um, so point is, there's, there's no relief factor. If the dispatcher takes off, that has to be filled with overtime. If they're sick, if they're on vacation, they take a personal day, you name it.
No, no, I understand that, and I, and I get it, and I think that is the right way to plan. And, and I think the council supports that type of planning. The question that I have is, last year we had seven, and we ended up using sixty-five thousand in overtime. This year we have nine, and, you know, is it possible to allocate less toward overtime now that we have more full-time employees?
We actually have more overtime, because you have more people to work overtime, because it isn't as if you only needed that much. Police officers are filling in.
Okay, so that, that's not, that wasn't clear.
We spent a ton of money in police overtime on, on working the desk.
So, it's gonna go up.
So, so the police overtime line, and that, that, we're back to this line one hundred, this one point three, six, five million, that is largely because of crossing guards and civilian dispatchers. I know there are shift overhaul, uh, mandatory, you know, uh, holdovers for shifts as well, but it sounds like a big part of that, uh, amount that's above the nine seventy-five was because of dispatch and crossing guard.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And so again, it's, it's just confusing. Oh, it's, it's just, I don't understand when we increase the hiring, why we can't decrease the overtime. It, to me, it just doesn't register.
We did decrease the overtime. We went, or, or we, we kept it the same, but we spent four hundred thousand more, and we did not budget that for that extra four hundred thousand.
I mean, I, 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 I understand, so what, what, because of the new hires in dispatch, and I still have another question on dispatch, uh, because of the new hires in dispatch, and because of the potential new hires in, uh, crossing guards, we'll, we should spend less money than we did last year for overtime for police. So he's expecting that that number will be somewhere around nine hundred seventy-five thousand, as long as we can fill all of those roles. Now, if we don't fill the crossing guard roles, that number's gonna be high.
Well, but then we also have more surplus.
But, but, so let's say we don't fill five crossing guard roles, and we're paying them roughly twenty dollars an hour. The people that fill in for those five
Are gonna take overtime.
Sixty dollars an hour or more. So we, we wouldn't save, even though it would be offset a little bit, we still wouldn't save, because we'd be spending more to fill that role.
Council president, so let me just add to. So, so if we all agree at the end. Council president, so let me just add to, so, so if we all agree at the end to take out that eight hundred thousand. He finds the other hundred thousand. You can't, I get what you're saying, try to cut down more, but like the things that Ms. Gary Adams or, or, or the chief may need that were taken out is like, that's an area that it would come from down the road. So you can't, you can't strangle your, you know, your, your.
We have to.
Budget, I, 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 listen.
We want to strangle them.
Yeah, but, but this is what you're, you're doing. You're, you're tying them up where if we have a situation. I mean, it's gonna, you think it's bad now, it's gonna, because I, listen, I've been there. I, I, I've been there on the school board. We had a destiny and we laid off thirty nine people that year. It was, it was horrible. So I, I know where you're going and what you're doing. At the end of the day, at the end of the day, when something comes up, it's, it, you, it, he's going to be, he has to find the money somewhere. So I get what you're saying, but you, you gotta have traffic guards, you, you have to have the desk covered. So we pick and choose where, where, where you're gonna.
Yes, which is what we all agreed to in the last meeting, right? That we would keep all the public safety positions open, the police, the fire, the dispatchers, the crossing guards, except for the clerical ro- roles and mixing all the promotions for every department.
Right, but, and, and as we do that, and we did agree to that, and that was in the effort to save jobs.
Yes.
The, the thing I think, council president, that, um, we should be considering when we're trying to make these kinds of cuts is the, the, the cost benefit. For, for some of these roles, if, if something goes wrong, well, that too, that too. But if something goes wrong, for example, with a crossing guard, if something goes wrong, you've got a parent or child likely involved in some level of an accident. And that is something I don't think we are willing to accept. If something goes wrong with police or fire or dispatch and someone needs them in a, in a, in a crisis, I don't think we want to, at least I don't. That, that's part of the reason why I want to protect those spaces. Because the downside, although it may not be a high likelihood, if it does happen, it's such a, uh, uh, yeah, I, I just don't want to do it. So I think that's a, that's a part of it.
Okay. Um, you have some more questions?
I, I do, so still, but on that, you, you, you still think you need a hundred thousand in overtime for the dispatchers?
Yes, I would, I would say we need all of that.
Alright, I mean, we're going to make our recommendations li- uh, later. But, uh, last thing I want to say is, you know, the reason I asked about how long these folks were on, uh, had been employed, those that are in the, that, that their income is in the thirties or the mid thirties. Um, that is probably a part of the problem in attracting folks to that stressful job and having a, a starting salary so low. Now, we're in a budget crunch, so nobody's recommending that we raise those salaries now. But that is something that I think we got to figure out. Um, be- because if we starve them, we're, we're not going to get. If we do get good quality people, they're going to leave to another department that pays more, and I think you've already seen some of that. Um, so, so that's my commentary on, on the dispatchers. I have a couple more things. Other earnings, what is that? Eighty five, eighty four ninety nine? What is that?
Go to. The. Four point two oh eight, overtime and other.
Where, where, where are we at now?
Two hundred is other earnings.
Fifty six.
Okay.
First world for the overtime and other expenses.
That, that's the, that's a promotion.
Motion, so it's uniform allowance, there's, you know.
Well, that eighty four ninety nine.
All different things go into that number.
Well, here it's listed as a promotion. Is that, is that the same? You said on page fifty six. You, you.
Overtime and other.
Mm-hmm.
No.
Overtime and others.
I'm. Yes, that's the column before that. So it says open positions and promotions. So that eighty, eighty four ninety nine is the eighty four ninety nine listed on line two hundred other earnings. So line two hundred on page fifty two has a departmental request, eight thousand four hundred ninety nine dollars.
All the way to the right.
Mayor's recommendation, eight thousand four hundred ninety nine.
Page fifty two.
Line two hundred.
Other earnings. That we took the money from for the promotion?
That's, that's the.
We said no promotions in the last meeting.
It's got to come.
The mayor?
Eighty two, right? Eighty nine two.
Eighty nine two?
No, eighty four ninety nine. Yeah, it's line two hundred under police salary and wages. Go down to line two hundred and it is a line item under the mayor's recommendation for eight thousand four hundred and ninety nine dollars.
Sorry?
And.
That's a promotion.
Right, so we want to make sure that comes out.
So do we have to do a motion to remove that line item?
No, we've already, we've already.
I wanted to make sure.
Well, that's it. See, they're still in here.
Yeah.
Yeah, so anything you took out is still here.
Right.
Alright.
So you need your sheet from last week that we took out to.
Got a, got another question. So there's, there's a line here, nine fifty, that says terminal leave.
Where are you?
On page fifty two.
Line, what line number?
Nine fifty.
They're from the bottom.
Says terminal leave.
I'm sorry, wait, 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 wait.
On page fifty two.
Okay, nine fifty, terminal leave.
There's nothing there. Are we not anticipating any payout for terminal leave?
We don't anticipate in the budget. Uh, if you recall, in September, October, we come back to you with, once we have a sense of what's going to happen. And with, then we, we, um, do a, a financing of that, that the state allows us to finance that over five years as opposed to having to pay it all upfront, since it's a sizable number, rather than raise it in taxes upfront. Uh, we find out what it is and then try to shred it out over the next five.
I mean, so taxes still pay it, but the, the question I have is, there's nothing listed here for twenty two. Even if we did it that way, wouldn't we, if we didn't budget it, but it ended up being?
A different line in the budget, it's not there. It's all, it's, it's combined into where the, where, where the, the action is. It's, um, under other, other salaries.
Can you show me that in the budget?
Let's give us a page number.
I know, one twenty three.
Is that the pending retro non payroll?
One nineteen. Other fund areas, nine hundred fifty thousand.
And that was the terminal leave? I'm sorry, that was terminal leave?
That's terminal leave, if you recall, if you go back to the agenda back in, I think, second meeting, or first or second meeting in October.
Can you give us a breakdown of, of what that was? And then can you also give us a breakdown of what you expect it to be?
I don't expect it to be because we don't know who's going to retire.
So can you, can you give, because this is only for, that would be for whom? Is that for any, any?
Any retired.
Any retiring?
Any retired.
Alright, so, because that's a number, right? Nine hundred and fifty thousand is a number. Now, last year we faced, you know, what was it, a two percent increase or, or thereabout? Um, this year I think it's important that we understand what that impact is going to be.
We won't know. And I can't give you the, I can, I can tell you everybody who's eligible.
That's what I'd like.
It's an astronomical number.
Yeah.
You can't.
Let me know the astronomical number.
You can't, you know, it's, it's everybody who could possibly retire.
I'd like to know the worst case scenario.
Okay, sure.
Yeah, thank you. Now, and then why don't we put that nine fifty? Because it's, because you got here, it says terminal leave five thousand.
I was going to say, we have another terminal leave here, it's to your point.
I budget five thousand for the line. Okay, so that we have a line, this is budget rules, you have to have a line. So we budget five thousand for the line to preserve the line. And then when we, later on, when we, when we go through the process, it gets added to the budget.
So let's make your reallocation.
Look, we don't have to do it that way. We can budget it the, the way that you want, and we can guess. Or we can wait to the way we do it and know how much we need and come to you and say, okay, this is what we need, this is how much we spent. This is how much it's going to be.
So I think, I think, and this is getting back to what you and I agreed on at the onset of this meeting. I think we need to both, uh, approach this from a place of good intentions, right? Well meaning. On, on the budget line, on, for, for page fifty two, police salary and wages, we have a line that says terminal leave. It has zero on it. Then we go to the back and we have a line that says terminal leave. It has five thousand on it, but it says none was spent. But then above that, we have other funds earnings, nine hundred fifty thousand, nothing budgeted. And that nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars is the entire category. But it's not reflected in the individual depart- because I assume that that is not just police and police, right? Because we're, we're only talking about police right now.
Yeah, it's police and fire and any, and, you know, and, and anybody who retired last year.
Right.
And any department, and any department.
To his point, why'd you put it back in this?
Because the rules say it, it's its own line. And that's the way the, the rules in New Jersey government budgeting.
In some, in some spaces, though, you have negative numbers to reflect how that money has been allocated in different places on the budget.
That we made.
Right, so where, where we're asking you is for our clarity and for the public's sake, to, you know, do it that way here too. Like, let's be consistent in that presentation because it would look as if we have no money budgeted for terminal leave.
We don't.
Well, we do, we've got five.
No, we do.
You've got five.
Five thousand, I apologize, five thousand.
Right, you've got five thousand budgeted. So we do have something, you just went through that. And we know we're going to spend something more than that. Or there's a high likelihood that we're going to spend something more than that. And what I'm asking, and I think what the council would appreciate, is a, is a more accurate reflection in the specific departments.
You keep saying accurate as if we know, and I keep telling you, we won't know. I tell you what the maximum is, it's millions of dollars.
Alright, but you do know what it was last year, right? And you put in this.
Put that there, sure.
Mr. Gross, you put it in category ninety six eleven on page one hundred nineteen in a category all itself. And that's a nine hundred fifty thousand dollar number, which is opaque to me, because I don't know which departments got that. And I think it would be helpful for us to know how that's spread out. So even if you put the nine fifty here.
And I agreed to give you the list of what that is so that you'll, you'll have that.
Well, what I understood from you was that you agreed to give me the worst case scenario for next year. What I'm also saying, I want that. I need to know what the worst case scenario is.
You asked me for both, and I agreed to both.
Well, I, I didn't.
Okay, then let's go ahead and move on. Any other questions, councilman?
Just so they're clear, though, that number will be reflected in the specific departments that you have actual terminal leave from twenty twenty two.
With the departments. Look, w- w- we, we have a lot to do and I don't mind giving you any information that you want. But I'm not going to re, I told you before, we cannot reformat this budget. We cannot produce a new budget to you every ti- every week. It just can't happen. So I will give you a list of the documents of, 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 of everybody that was paid out last year and, and, and what departments they were and how much they were paid. I, I don't know why that's not sufficient.
Let me, let me tell you what. To council president's earlier point tonight, what we would like is a, a reflection in each one of these departments that more accurately depicts the actual spending. In this particular case, we know it was nine hundred fifty thousand dollars for twenty twenty two. If you've got it in one category in ninety six eleven. Page one nineteen, if you've got it there, then just, if, if a hundred thousand of it was for police, then put a negative hundred thousand here. And then point us to it. So we, because then we'll know, hey, there's a number there, that number's elsewhere in the budget, we need to understand that based on some other parts of the budget. There's another hundred thousand for fire, there's a hundred thousand for health, there's a hundred thousand for legal, if there's a hundred thousand for this or that or the other. Put it in those different departments so that we know. And that's all we're saying. And, and it is, again, not just for us. This is a document that is publicly available to every resident who pays into the funds to pay these things, and they deserve to know as well.
Okay, we produce the final document for you, we will do that.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, councilman?
Is the same thing true for, uh, pension?
Number nine sixty on page one nineteen.
No other expenses there.
Okay. Uh, council.
We have, we have pension. That, that was, that was included at one point in time. It was something that we wanted to look to do, was to, to break everything out as we went along. And we came to realize that it wasn't efficient to do that. That the amount of effort that it took to, to do it accurately was, was not. We weren't able to do with the staffing that we had to do it right. So it was, while, while we anticipated that possibility, it's something that, that we've determined that it wasn't effective, wasn't efficient or effective.
And so I, I just want to remind, uh, my council colleagues that we just authorized a new software program, um, as well. And so some of these, um, things that have been done historically by hand or by staff will also become automated. And so that will relieve, um, some of the burden and stress and should be able to also provide us with a little bit more detailed information because again, everything will be automated. So I just wanted to remind the public as well as my colleagues, Councilwoman Gabor Michael.
We had, which is one more.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Um, in our last year's budget, there was a line item for slippage. Do, 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 are we not going to include that this year?
There was a, um, um, it was a calculated, frankly, it was, it was a calculation of a difference. Um, it wasn't a, it wasn't a true number. Um, when I say that, it was, there was a two balance and went through it. It was, it was accounted for as slippage as an explanation. Um, we certainly can look to do that in the future again, if that's what the council wants.
I, you know, just for consistency's sake, um, you know. So like, you know, Councilwoman Williams and I have been, now this is our third budget, right? And it, it would be helpful for us as we continue to go through this process, even if it's just for four years, that we have a consistent way of looking at things so that, you know, we don't have to kind of guess or figure it out every single year in a different way. That's it for me, council president.
Councilwoman Gabor Michael.
Thank you. I have a question about the reorganization plan, page one twenty three. Um, we had one council meeting where I inquired about this and you said it was a mistake, it should be zero. Is there seven hundred fifty nine thousand budgeted? And I just want to confirm that.
And I think I, I think I then, what, I, at first I, I was looking at a different page, I said it was a mistake. And then I can realize that that was the, the payout for police and fire for the COVID payments.
Okay.
And I did, I did state that at the time.
I don't remember that, but thank you for stating it now.
Any additional questions regarding the police budget?
Nope.
Um, I think so. Let me just continue to check my notes, though.
I, I had something.
Okay, go ahead, councilman.
Chief, you, you had in there for, add, uh, a position in there for admin. For a hundred thousand, what was that going to be for?
I'm sorry.
We, we denied, we denied a, a position, new position for a hundred thousand for, I think, an admin.
Secretarial or something?
Yeah.
Administrative secretary.
Secretarial assistant, it's on page fifty eight.
What was that supposed to be for? Just curious.
Oh, yes, secretarial assistant is page fifty eight, chief. Third from the bottom, secretarial assistant, starting salary with, new with benefits was a hundred and one thousand. Our concern is that again, when we talk about some of these positions, they're so inconsistent in where they start. Um, you know, keyboard and clerk one is starting at thirty five thousand dollars. How does the secretarial assistant start at a hundred and one?
So, uh, understanding Mr. Gross, the way this was put together, that includes the, um, benefits.
Right, but how do you, how do you, how do you, that's seventy thousand dollars.
Right, so that's, that's a secretarial assistant, that's not a.
We understand. So what does that person, what is that?
We had two retirements, um, two full secretaries in the criminal investigation division, um, Horey McLean and, and Michelle Montacio. So this would be one to replace the both of them.
And can we get through with that person being absent? And can we get through with that person being absent until twenty twenty-four?
You gave me all my costs.
But just so you understand, if you promote somebody into that position, they, there, there's a chain reaction. And, and so even though you're, you're, you're starting with somebody new, ultimately, the full salary for that position gets paid out. So, you know, you, i- i- if, if, if indeed.
Well, how does that, how is that so? Because in replacing some of these other positions that had higher salaries, um, the communication to us was that we're not hiring someone at their full salary. They come in at less.
Certain positions, i- i- in, in certain positions that we're hiring, if we're hiring at a, a um, entry-level position, then that's the salary. But if you're doing, if you're, if you're hiring somebody. And to, now, this, we, we treated this as if it was new, it was only because the person hadn't been here in so long that it was still in the budget. Um, but there was, we weren't paying health benefits for the person. So we, we treat it as new because we had to add the health benefits in if we were going to replace it. I don't, I, to be honest with you, I'm certain that, I, I'm, I'm gonna speak for the chief, but I know that I anticipated that this position wasn't gonna end up being filled.
Okay, we removed it anyway, so I think we can pause on and continue conversation, because we did remove it.
And I'd like to confirm that we removed the two keyboarding clerk um, hourly roles as well. Their budget of eighteen thousand.
And what page is that on?
On fifty-six. I just want to confirm, yeah, okay.
That was three open positions.
Yep, three open positions.
All right, thank you.
Clerical.
All right, thank you. Chief Abbott, we want to thank you for giving us your time and attention and explaining a little bit about um, how your department functions. Uh, what it, what it needs to function at its base level.
I have one question on the OE, though. Just, just one more question, chief. I, I know you're ready going. I know the rest are ready to come. We've got a, on page fifty-nine, uh, line eighty-three, training courses and aides. We spent thirties, we budgeted seventeen-five last year. We spent thirty-six thousand one hundred ninety-five eighty-eight. Your request was eighty-eight thousand six fifty, but the mayor already reduced that to seventeen-five. What, what is the need there? And, and, and how does that affect us if we're not? I mean, because one of the things that I've heard is um, in multiple places, but including from you, is how well-trained our officers are and how that has led to better outcomes, use of force, all these other, you know, types of complaints. And we, we minimize those kind of issues when we have a well-trained force. So I'm just trying to understand, if we cut seventy thousand out of your request, how does, what is the impact? And is that something you actually need, or is that something that we can do without this year?
So we use a lot of uh, forfeiture money. We have used, but we had somebody assigned full-time to the uh, the DEA task force, and that brought money in. And that, that's good, but now they're, they're requiring five-year commitments. That's a lot to say, yeah, we're gonna give you an employee for five years. There's promotions that take place, and those people want to, you know, they want a task, they want to be promoted. They're not gonna guarantee five years. So it's, it's, we haven't, we haven't done that, but we don't get the money to sort the training budget.
Gotcha. So that money was offset by other things.
By, by forfeiture money, yeah. And we don't have a lot of it left. We have some left, but that, it'll, it'll go fast. I mean, you, when you think about it, you know, the ninety-eight police officers, if, if, if you only spent a thousand dollars on training, I mean, each guy is ninety-eight thousand, guy and girl.
So how will that impact outcomes? Or can you predict any of the impact on outcomes?
Uh, uh, you know, I'm, I'm a big fan of training, and as you mentioned, it's, it had, you know, it lends itself to positive outcomes, the, the proof's in the pudding there, but I don't think you can quantify it. Like, I don't think I could say, if I, if I don't get them trained, bad things are gonna happen. It's just that when you don't train people, bad things happen.
Got it. Thank you very much.
Again, thank you, Chief Abbott. We appreciate your time.
Thank you for your support. I know you're in a very, very difficult position, and uh, I'm, I'm very happy that you uh, kept this up.
Thank you. All right, next on our list is the legal department. And Madam Clerk, legal starts on what page for the? Oh, I'm sorry, fire, fire, fire. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm looking at the time and not looking at the, um, so fire. Chief Vecchio, please come forward. Oh, I can arrange that, but we want to get, get out of here, so. Good evening. All right, um, for the public, we're looking um, at the budget that was originally presented. And we are turning to page sixty-seven. Okay, Madam Clerk. All right, we're, we're on page sixty-two. Correction to the public. We're on page sixty-two, beginning of fire salary and wages. Chief Vecchio, floor is yours.
Okay, uh, so I don't have too much of an intro. Uh, like Chief Abbott, I, I'd like to hear your questions. That's probably the best for me to do. Couple of things that I do want to bring up, though. Each year, um, when the administration asks for um, our ideas, what were uh, areas where we maybe need additional funding, um, we always have, and, and as, as do I, I put together uh, both for OE and for capital, um, a list with justification. So I don't just arbitrarily write things into um, a spreadsheet. Uh, I justify them with, and it's available to anybody if you want to see it. I do, I, I, that's why I do the annual report as well, because I don't think we communicate enough. Um, and at least that's a kind of uh, a way to, for you to see how we run and where we spend our money. Obviously, you don't, that doesn't say how we spend it, and that's why we're here today. But um, if you did want to see this, it's, it's kind of written out in where it says departmental requests. It's just why I justify it. And if you ask me questions about it, I'll probably use this as a reference. So, um, some of the areas, there's a couple of things that I did want to bring up. Uh, one being, and I know we're gonna get to this, and I know that we've talked about um, cutting out uh, open positions. I just, and, and if it happens, it happens, but I do want to uh, advocate for the position that you're cutting from our admin. We have two administrative people. Our budget is very close to the police departments. We, we have two administrative people. You cut one. We have one administrative person for our twelve million dollar budget. She can't do it. I mean, it's, it's, she can't do it. And I've thought of ways, bring, bring a uniformed person inside to do that additional work. It's, A, they're not qualified to do that work. It's a different job function. And again, back to uh, we, we're running the same retention problem. We did have someone in that position last year. We thought she was great. She left for, for more money. I mean, that's, that's unfortunately what happens. Mister Gross and I have talked about retention and how we can, we can improve in that area, but uh, but it's, it's, it's very difficult. But we were looking to fill the spot. At this point, quite frankly, could, could we wait to the end of the year? Probably, if that helps, let's put this thing together. But I know what will happen in twenty twenty-four. And then there will be no money to fund that position then. So I was very nervous that we didn't fill it. It's been vacant for, since the fall. We've interviewed probably a half a dozen people for the job. We had two that were ready. And then salary came up and, and they were no longer ready. So we weren't able to fill it. I had a feeling this is where it was gonna come, but I just wanted to put that out there so you all know that it's, it's a job that we're lean in that area, so.
But the starting salary is at seventy-five. Generally, keyboarding clerks, don't they start at thirty? Keyboarding clerk one?
That includes benefits.
So what is the starting salary for a keyboarding clerk one then?
Um, starting salary right now, entry level, um, the, the very bottom salary is a little over thirty thousand. Now have the ability, we, we, to, to give uh, credit for experience, uh, things and start them a little higher. So we're, we're looking at, you know, obviously, we're considering that, but we haven't so, some positions, we haven't been successful.
Of the seventy-five, what, how much is salary and how much?
We have to anticipate a family, a family, family coverage. Family coverage is right around forty thousand, forty to forty-five thousand.
But chief, you said that you are okay, because that's not filling it this year, and the next year could be budgeted.
Sounds like if that, if that's what I can give, I mean, if that's, if that's what you so choose, I'm just concerned that when I come next year and say, we really need to fill that position.
I think you, I think we. Yeah, I think we understand the need.
In, in that same area, because I just, I just went to this page, the one person that we still do have is acting as a supervisor. She, we, we do have one administrative person, and I'm calling her an administrative assistant in a general sense. That's not her title.
Oh, what page are we on?
Uh, well, I'm looking at page sixty-six.
Okay, thank you.
Is that her technical? Her actual, yeah, her actual title is Technical Assistant of the Construction Official, which, and the reason for it is she came from another department where she had that title. Um, and Mister Gross and I have talked about it. It's a, it's an interesting title. There's no she's a supervisor now, but that title doesn't allow for a, a new title that's a supervisor. So therefore.
It's a civil service anomaly.
Yeah, so um, we have uh, talked about some things. She is also a fire inspector. Um, and uh, again, I don't expect that this is necessarily gonna happen before next year, but I want to throw it out there that um, we would like to consider, um, again, the title change is a difficult, but if we had another title, uh, we might be able to adjust that, that salary to, to reflect uh, what she does. Because she is a sup, she's the only person there, and even when there was someone else, she was the supervisor. Um, and that's the way we work in, in municipal government. There, if there's someone who's supervising other people, they should be compensated accordingly, so. She's, she is where she is, but I, I owe it to her to, to put that out to you folks, because I'm, I'm gonna ask again um, the next time I come out. I know uh, this is very tight, and I, and I don't want to sound um, like I'm asking too much. But again, I we have one person. We have one person. And we have, just to give you an idea of how we're structured, and you have our, our um, organizational chart. Administratively, um, we have uh, myself, our fire official, and three other administrative people uniform inside. We function a little differently than the police department. Um, we're very lean administratively, and we're, we're heavier, I won't say heavy, but we're heavier operations-wise. Uh, and we, we function, and I'm sure you're gonna get to questions on this, but we do function with a minimum staffing uh, of seventeen, which means that at any given time, there needs to be seventeen people, and within that, there needs to be supervision. So, um, the way we work on, on shift is with one tour commander, that's a deputy chief. We work with six fire captains and uh, up to at full staffing, um, let's see. Tours differently. We might have, so the total tours, three, three shifts have twenty-one people working. Uh, and one has twenty. And in that are, if you do the math, the one tour deputy, the six captains, and whatever the balance would be, are firefighters. Of those twenty-one or twenty, we have to have seven working. Uh, and I tell you this because I'm certain that you're gonna get to a, a line uh, in this budget that talks about overtime. And I want to explain where that comes from.
Before, before we get to overtime, can we talk about the open position for a firefighter with EMT salaried at fifty-two thousand four hundred and seventy-eight dollars on page sixty-five? That's an open position and promotion. It's the fifth line up from the bottom.
Okay.
Um, again, my question is, the salary is so much lower, and this is an open position.
Well, that's, I, I would have to defer to Mister Gross. That's, that's the, that's the starting salary for a fire. That one doesn't include, um, that doesn't include benefits. That's the base salary.
That's the base.
Why don't you have the benefits in there?
Because this posi, this position had, was budgeted for previously, and therefore it's we already have, we already have it.
But we, but it's saying open.
The, this issue of the new salary only comes into place if it's a replacement of a, um, fire, um, sorry, a, a retiree, um, that, um, or if it's a brand new, it's been a long, a, a, a long vacancy.
And while we're, while we're all on that page looking there, I just want to draw your attention to acting pay, which is the line right underneath it.
I was getting there too.
And I, I bring up acting pay because I know that, that um, across the board, you said no promotions. We're not doing any promotions. And the reason I'm bringing that up is regardless if you promote a firefighter to a captain, you're paying someone for the spot. So right now, for example, we have an open captain spot. You're paying someone to be in that spot first level, first step captains. So whether you, whether you promote them, which is a nice thing, because you actually put someone with rank in that position, you're paying them anyway. So to just say, well, we're not promoting anyone in our strong, that may not be the way it is in, in some of the other, other departments, but in our department, they're getting paid first step anyway. So if I come and say, hey, John, would you pitch to the mayor that we promote X, Y, and this person to the next rank, you, you're already paying that person in acting the first step there. So I just.
But that's only in the case where you would not have your six captains. You would need one to be in acting. Is that, is that?
Correct, correct, I'm correct, yep.
So you're trying to say we can't touch that seventy-one thousand?
No, you can completely say that we're, that you're not, that you don't want to promote anyone, but in, in our case, it's not, it's not really a, a, you're not saving any money by doing that, because there's already some. Contractually, there has to be a person acting as a supervisor.
These funds are required.
Yes, that we, so we know we can't eliminate promotions that are contractual. We're referencing the promotions that we can eliminate.
Okay, I, I wasn't aware, and, and I watched the last couple, I wouldn't, I didn't hear that.
Well, so, so my, my understanding, though, is if we promote someone to captain, we're paying them every time they're working at the captain rate. The acting pay is for someone who is not a captain, but when you don't have enough, which won't be every shift, but whatever.
It will be every shift. It may not be the same person, but that position has to be filled with a captain or an acting captain.
All right, so you have four shifts, is that right?
I'm sorry, say it again.
You have four shifts?
We have four shifts, and on each shift, there's six captains. So if, like currently, right now, our tour two has five captains. Well, every shift on tour two, it may not be the same person, there's a person acting in that sixth spot.
Gotcha.
And that's all, that's contractual.
So now, so let's, let's talk about staffing level then. So you have eighty-eight firefighters, is that right?
At, at full staffing, yes.
So if we filled the open positions, you would have eighty-eight firefighters?
Correct.
So you then currently have eighty-seven. It's only, I think it was only one.
This may be a little.
Well, this is, this was.
Yeah, we actually, we actually have eighty-six, and as of next month, we'll have eighty-five. This is, this, yeah, this is dated, I guess, from, from beginning of the year.
No, no worries. So, so you will, will have.
And do you have anyone in training?
We have six in the academy right now.
Yeah.
That, but they're, or they're, they're being, their employees are.
Right, they're accounted for.
They're accounted for?
Everyone's.
Everyone's accounted for except for the, the, the one spot you see, one spot where they retired last month, and one spot where he's gonna retire next month. So when I say there's three, they're all, they're all counted for. I'm saying, but, but you see the one on here. That's why I was.
Right, but the ones that are in the academy, they're accounted for, and the eighty-six that's going down to eighty-five? Or is that gonna be, once the new person retires, or once the next person retires, and the number goes down to eighty-five, do we still have the three that are in the academy?
No, we'll have three open positions.
You gotta put somebody else.
Academy, academy position, people that are in the academy are included in the eighty-eight that are budgeted.
That's what I'm asking.
So now there's a statutory, is there, is there a formula that you have to know how many firefighters you need? You know, in overall, based on the number of these, these four shifts, is there a number that you know?
So it's, it's not, it's not statutory, but it's, but it's, um, it's by our standard, which we, we follow NFPA, uh, and NFPA. We're actually, I mean, I'm not, I don't want to get into that here, but we're actually understaffed.
Now, that's what I'm trying to understand.
Says that, um, but I, I don't think I'm, I mean, I'd love if you guys want to give me another fifteen firefighters. I'd love it, but.
Why not budget for them then?
Yeah.
Right, because, because we've got eighty-eight here.
We've been at eighty-eight for, for, since I've been on the job, we've been, we've been at eighty-eight.
And you've been here for six years?
Six years I've been here? Oh, as a chief, yes, 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 I'm sorry.
But the, the reason I ask is, we've got one point eight million budgeted, I mean, spent for overtime last year. We budgeted six hundred eighty-five thousand. We're budgeting another six hundred eighty-five thousand now. And if you're understaffed, does that six hundred eighty-five, is that a, is that a accurate?
Let me clear, let me clear up. When I say we're understaffed, I'm saying we're understaffed at eighty-eight. But we work based on eighty-eight, so our shifts are based on eighty-eight, and the twenty-one, 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 and twenty per shift. So, um, that's where the over, that, that's what, that's what creates the overtime, not.
So could we, could we? Could we add a firefighter and then eliminate the overtime?
How do we, how do we minimize the overtime is the question?
Yeah, certainly.
It would be nice if you could add staff and, and, and have that.
And keep the minimum at seventeen.
So how many firefighters do you need to do that?
So to give you an idea, all, all of the, most everything that creates overtime is contractual, so at our seventeen minimum. We have, let's, I'll take the, a heavy tour of twenty-one. Contractually, five people are allowed to be on vacation at any time. So, uh, and, and the amount of vacation time that police fire get is, is lucrative, it's, it's substantial. So automatically, if everyone takes off, even the, the heaviest tour of twenty-one, we're in overtime. Now, on top of that, you have sick, you have injury, you have compensatory time, which by law, they're allowed to use when they, they're allowed to take. When they work overtime, it's in lieu of cash, in lieu of payment, and then they're allowed to use it at any time. So, um, when you take all those things into consideration, very often, you're down to fourteen per shift. So now you're paying that many per shift.
So again, my question to you is, how many more firefighters do you need added to this?
I, I'd have to do the math, quite frankly, I'd have to do the math.
We don't have the money.
And I don't, I, quite frankly, at this moment, um, if you're willing to entertain that, I'll discuss that with the administration, and, and I.
Right, I don't think we need it now.
So when we, when I put this all together, just so you know, I, I'm assuming, I'm making an assumption after conversations with the administration, that. That we're probably not going to be able to hire at that minute, if, a few years ago, to give a little history. I guess in two thousand fifteen, is that what EMS? We made a very big change in West Orange, and, and the fire department took over full-time EMS, in doing so, we lost an engine company. So taking, we used to have four engines responding out of four sections of town, we, we have three engines responding now. Because we took over EMS and assigned those personnel, so no one lost jobs or anything, but we, we readjusted. And we brought our fire protection down below where it quite frankly should be. Um, I'm asked every, every day by our, our personnel, our unions, to get that engine company back. I, I, I would love to do it, if we can have an, a conversation about it, I would love to talk about getting engine one back. Um, but I also know when I speak to our CFO, that's probably a two million dollar. And, again, if, if I'm told that that's a conversation to have, otherwise, if it's going to be futile, I don't even know why we've.
No, here's the, here's the point, uh, chief, we, we need to, so part of our challenge. As we've been going through this, this year, and is understanding partly how we got here. So that we're, we have some context for some of the difficult decisions that we have to make, but then, as a result of these decisions. What's going to happen next year and the year after, so we need to kind of plan, right, and I don't, I don't know that we. So we definitely not adding it this year, but we need to know what is coming down the pike, so that we can properly plan, so that when we get down the pike. We don't have a sixteen percent tax increase that year, or ten percent, or nine, or eight, or seven. Like, and if we start planning now, if we know that we're understaffed, so we know we're understaffed at police. Uh, chief has been very clear, the union leaders have been very clear about staffing levels, we know that, we know we've got to make investments there. That's part of the reason why when we came into this budget, right off the bat, we said we're not cutting police or fire roles, we know we're. Someone understaffed at police, at a fire, we want to understand that, so that we can. A, as we make difficult decisions this year, understand what that means for next year and the year after, so that once we get out of the difficult period. We know where we can make some investments that, you know, makes sense for the township, hopefully without drastic increase in property taxes. So that, that's why we want to know, and, and if you could give us some insight on that, obviously, it's not going to affect this budget, we're not adding two million. We're not adding more firefighters this year, but if you could give us that insight, and, and it doesn't have to be right now. But if you could give us that insight, it'll help us as we go through next year, and then as some of the other things come on. We've talked about additional sources of revenue, some we know will come on, or we believe will come on next year, some are likely to come on. Um, and if, if, if we know what our needs are, you know, we can be informed when we decide how we want to. Encourage the administration to consider using those dollars.
So again, chief, that's not necessarily a conversation we need to have today, but if you could provide us with those needs. Um, so that we can move forward and be more supportive, we appreciate it, colleagues, are there any other questions?
Back to this overtime figure, so budgeting at six eighty-five, you expect that number to hold, or you think, I mean, is that a good number, is that not a good number? Based, I mean, based on what you've said, is, is, is that?
So again, the, the six eighty-five number also, I guess, that's, since I've been the chief, that's the number that's been budgeted, we exceed it every year. I always assumed it was, as Mr. Gross has explained, that's a, a part of the budgeting process. Uh, how is it paid? I assume, again, back to slippage, there's, there's people that do retire, uh, mid-year. We have to often, overtime is created because they're not here, so that's, I, I would assume that that's where that, that money.
So is there a particular date that your firefighters tend to retire? Chief had indicated February first for the police department, is that consistent in yours as well?
There's compensation reasons why they, they want to do that.
Okay, so do you?
Although, although that, that has changed, we had, we, last year, there were a number of people that, you, you have late retirements. There's been a, a definite shift in the past couple of years.
Was that due to?
Quite frankly.
Was that due to COVID, or was, is that something that we expect to be repeated this year as well?
In, in, it, this is a contract year, contract ends the end of this year, so we also see sometimes that people will. Who are ready to retire will retire before the end of this contract, because they're, they're nervous that something can get negotiated. Um, under which they would fall, so they don't want to go into retirement, they want to go into retirement with the contract they know. So I, I do anticipate, and I can't, like Mr. Gross said, I can't tell you who's definitely going to retire.
But we can find out who's eligible.
For example, last year, there were people that were planning to retire, and there was an extension to the contract. And they decided to stay for the extension, because why not, but now, there's going to be negotiations, so I do anticipate in the fall, we'll probably have a.
Can you make sure we get the list, uh, I guess, from your department as well, of those eligible to retire?
That's a worst-case scenario, yep, and then, just, this is probably more for Mr. Gross, but you may be able to chime in as well, chief. We've got a other funds earnings adjustment of twenty-four thousand five hundred.
Where are your councilman, I'm sorry?
On page sixty-two, uh, line nine hundred, other funds earnings, uh, adjustment of twenty-four thousand five hundred. At the bottom of that, uh, same page, uh, sixty-two, uh, offset account is twenty-eight two fifty. Is that, are, are those the same numbers, or, or like what? Like, can you?
I'm going to defer that, that one to Mr. Gross.
Twenty-eight two fifty is, um, if, if you look following the, um, fire department.
Allocated to uniform fire safety, uniform safety.
That's our fire prevention.
Fire prevention. Rather than, because it's a partial salary, so you have to have an employee in two different spots, we just allocate that down. Have to go back and look and see what that twenty-four was last year, I frankly, I don't remember.
Could that, could that be the inspector?
No, I don't, I, I don't think so.
That's all right, just let us know, we've got plenty of time, if we go to page.
It wasn't utilized, so, you know, whatever it was, we were anticipating, I just don't remember.
You offset it somewhere else, but you didn't need it, so you put it back. All right, just, you know, just for informational purposes, would like to know, on page sixty-seven, uh, got a couple of questions there too. Um, so on line seventy-one miscellaneous, you budgeted five hundred, you spent twenty-six hundred, you budgeted five hundred again. That, that, we've made this point over and over again, so just want to reiterate it with regard to that particular line. Um, you know, about the consistency in, in the presentation, on line eighty-two, training and education. Budgeted thirty thousand, spent thirty thousand, requested fifty thousand. Mayor dropped it down to thirty, and I'm just, want to, same question I asked the chief with regard to training, how does that affect outcomes? Um, and is that something that you can live with?
So, uh, let me, I'm, since it's in right in front of me, I'll read it from my, my, my original justification. The services provided by West Orange Fire Department have evolved exponentially, included, including but not limited to emergency medical services. The corresponding training budget, uh, has not, we attempt to utilize no-fee training whenever it becomes available through organizations. Organizations such as Garden State Municipal JIF, PSEG, and FEMA, some equipment vendors, et cetera. As training in the foundation, as training is the foundation for firefighter EMT safety and survival. As well as a necessity for effective delivery of services to our residents, we are again requesting a modest increase in this budget line. To allow for additional training requests that regularly come from our personal, from our personnel, and are routinely denied due to lack of funding. The township does not include off-duty training days, uh, for our personnel as part of the current labor agreements. As other collective bargaining units are afforded, we regularly look to incentivize participation in outside training opportunities. And the additional funding will bring us closer to our goal, with currently vacant positions and planned retirements for several personnel in two thousand twenty-three. The current training budget will likely be gone in the first quarter. So, uh, a couple of things in there, uh, police department, part of their labor agreement, uh, include training days where they can, when they, when they're paid to go train. Um, our, we do not have that, uh, so often what we, we do ask, uh, for, if there are, if there are classes that our personnel want to go to. And they're willing to go on their own, uh, sometimes they'll ask us to pay for the classes. Often, we deny them because it's, we don't do that, um, we don't have the money, because the thirty thousand is pretty much taken from mandatory training. There's no, there's no additional training, we have, we have live burns, we have EMT refresher classes, we have CPR, we have. EMT, um, basic, which all new hires, for, perfect example is, we have, um, six new recruits. Our six new recruits by themselves will wipe out that thirty thousand dollars, so. It's an under, definitely an underfunded line item, and I put this, I put my requests in order of importance, if you will, and training is always something that, um. And I do talk to my, um, my, I'll call them friends in other towns, but other chiefs in, in, in other towns and. Uh, their training budgets are much higher than ours, so.
And by that, you mean, can you just give us a range?
Well, I think Bloomfield is seventy-five thousand, something like, something in that ballpark. But, and we do look for opportunities, I'm, we, we definitely look for opportunities where we can get, um, training for free, there's a lot of stuff online now, but. Um, hands-on is, is the best for us, so, uh, and there's always cost, now, in addition to that. Unfortunately, is, is when someone, when we send someone for training, they don't go on their own, we have to pay them. So, uh, last year, we were part of a, uh, we share a grant writer with, uh, five other. Five other towns, Orange, Bloomfield, McLaren. I don't remember where the other towns were.
When you mean, we share the grant writer?
The town, the town shared, we, we all use, I mean, a millennial, right, so. Why, I don't mean share by that, I mean, they use them as well, and there was a, an opportunity for a regional grant, the FEMA had through their, uh, AFG grant. Uh, and we all applied together for it, and we got it, it was six hundred thousand dollar grant, and. And I'm proud to say that I brought this up, because when we were talking about it, everyone says, oh, what can we do for that, what can we do for that? The cost of the training wasn't six hundred thousand dollars, of course, the training itself was probably fifty thousand dollars. The cost is to send the people to the training, so I asked if we were able to, to, uh, fund overtime. And for some strange reason, strange way they do it, but they won't fund overtime, but they'll fund backfilling. So in other words, we would send people on duty, and they would fund to pay the backfill for those people on duty, which is very strange, but. Um, our portion of that was about a hundred thousand dollars, and, um, and we got to do some, uh, some really good training, we had, we had a, um. Officer development program, so it was, it was good, so we do look for opportunities like that, um, but they're absolutely not guarantees, so.
Got it, and then the next few lines, uh, conferences, dues, and meetings, and sim, I'm sorry, conferences. Dues, I'm going to skip a line and then go to bedding, conferences and dues, would that be included in training, or is that? Separate from training, I mean, I know it's a separate line item, but would that all be?
Well, well, dues are, are association dues, that kind of thing.
Like your union dues?
No, like, um. We're, we're, I'm, I'm a member of the, I have to be of the Essex County Fire Chiefs, it's our mutual aids, where we develop our mutual aid program. Um, and, uh, and again, this was a, this is going back probably, back when, when you were chief, the, uh. There was, uh, yeah, they didn't, they didn't want to pay for, the town didn't want to pay for dues for that, so we would have to find another source, and that would come from a. Um, like the chief has, uh, seizure funds, we have, um, some penalties, that kind of stuff, so that's how we'd have to pay for it. I always felt it should be in our ROE, it shouldn't be, we shouldn't have to go to a trust account for that, because I have to be a part of that, and there are other. Uh, NFPA, which I told you is our, it's where we get our standards from, there's a subscription for that, that, that should come under dues. But we pay it out of another account, so.
So it'll be helpful for us as we plan going forward, because obviously, we can't do that this year, but if, if we know, these are some changes that you'd like to make, please. Include that in your communication to us.
Okay.
Then bedding, at, so help me understand that. You requested fifteen hundred, uh, line, uh, one oh six, on page sixty-seven, you requested fifteen hundred, nothing was requested last year, nothing was spent. And you requested fifteen hundred, but the mayor put it down to zero, I just want to understand that.
I don't even have a justification for that, so I'm curious to know why.
So then we can take it out?
Well, it's not, it's already out, it's.
Mayor's recommendation is what, let me, let me, let me back up a minute. This budget hasn't changed since before Chief Smeraldo became chief, so we're talking twenty, almost twenty years, twenty years, so. This hasn't changed, that we're working with the same dollar amount, and quite frankly, paper towels cost more. I know this is what everybody's going to say, we all know that, so it hasn't changed, so the, the concept of working, uh, you know, more with less, that kind of thing. We are, we're doing more with less, um, so, you know, please don't, don't look to take anything away from this, this is a, this is a very lean.
So I have a question regarding the air conditioning new, nine hundred and twenty-two dollars, can you give us explanation on what that's line?
So most of our firehouses are, have window air conditioners, so that's, they, they don't last forever, and one is five hundred dollars or whatever, so it's. Um, we're working on that, because we, we just, you know, we had many splits put in our fire headquarters, so. We're done with window units there, but the other firehouses have, you know.
You requested twenty-five hundred for firefighting foam, and it was, uh, knocked down to zero, you didn't have anything last year for it, so want to.
Right, so, so, um, firefighting foam has become a, a subject of a lot of controversy, and, um. For those of you that don't know, they found that firefighting foam has caused cancer, um, so all of us, um, and even our, our neighbor. Uh, Melbourne, they have an entire tender, what a, a tanker, whatever, which, whatever term you want to use, of three thousand gallons of the old foam. Um, there, no one knows what to do with it. So, uh, the county did do a program last year, uh, through Nutley Hazmat, and we got rid of almost all of our bad foam. But we need to keep some of it, because it's a, it's something that we need to use in our business, we don't use it often, but it's, it's, it's a tool in our, in our. Um, toolbox, so, uh, I'd actually asked for it in capital, uh, which you're going to see it in my capital request again. Because we need a whole slew of it, and we need it for storage, so it's, we're going to keep it, um, but I put this in because. Um, I want to start the replacement happening, uh, yeah, so that's where we are, that's foam.
Un, understood, uh.
I have a question. Line two hundred, medical exams, fifteen hundred was budgeted last year, zero spent, you requested six thousand this year. Can you explain that?
Sure, so, um, medical exam includes, um, uh, uh, physical evaluation. Um, and psychological evaluations for new hires, um, and to give you an idea. I believe the, uh, physical evaluation is seven hundred and fifty dollars, and the, uh, psychological evaluation is. Either five hundred or seven hundred and fifty dollars, and we just hired six just now, so the fifteen hundred. It's, we don't, we, we have to find it somewhere else, so it's not, um. We've also had to do, use, even, even without new hires, we've had occasion.
Why not just put it in this line item?
Is it, is it designated for that in your budget, medical exam, so it says under?
There's, there's, there are a line in, in, in the, in the budget, they call it. There's, there are lines in, in the, in the budget, they call a line for that.
Can you, where is it?
Mr. Gross? We see where that is.
There are lines in, in, in my budget for the administration that, that we deal with personnel, and it's paid for out of my budget.
So would that be the CFO budget, the business administrator? I'm sorry.
Business administrator.
Could you point us to the line item in the budget?
And then I have two more questions.
Mr. Gross, she wanted to, she wanted to know where in your line item.
Can we do that when you get to my budget?
Yeah, we could, sure. Just make a note.
All right, and then on that same page, sixty-eight, line one twenty-six, oxygen hydrostatic safety testing, I assume? Thirty-five hundred requested last year, zero spent, another thirty-five hundred requested and approved this year. Can you speak to that?
I can only think that it's because three years ago, we got, we had, we got a grant, and we got new SCBA's, our PACs, which come with all new cylinders, and those cylinders need to be hydrotested every five years. So I'm guessing that's why we didn't spend money on that this past year. But there, we're going to have to, because there's, they're starting to come, and they're, they're not all the same. I think some are dated, because we, I think we kept some from our last, so, so they're going to be, they're going to be staggered. So we may next year have hydrotest them all.
That, that was part of the firehouse tour. When we did the firehouse tour, that was something that was brought to our attention.
The amenities are not.
So, so you expect, so help me understand that. Do we budget thirty-five hundred? Well, this may be for Mr. Gross. Do we budget thirty-five hundred a year, because ultimately every five years, we're going to need fifteen thousand or seventeen-five? Or do we budget thirty-five hundred a year, because in any given year, if we have to test, it's going to be thirty-five hundred?
We do not, we do not budget on an accumulated basis, because you can't accumulate much. So it's, 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 it's anticipated. It, it is an allocation that's anticipated on, in, in that budget. Now, if there, when there's a year that we need more, obviously, we go to the surplus lines to get that, you know, because not every, and not everything, this is another reason about having the, the, the differences. Not everything is an annual cost, so it might be more. And so you don't want to, and then again, this is a philosophy, philosophical decision. In order to maintain some consistency in budgets, as opposed to having them going up and down erratically, we tend to try to build that money in so that it's there. Again, if we don't spend it, it's not, it, it, it's not like we, we spent it. You know, we don't spend it, it goes right back to the taxpayer the next year in the, in the.
One more circle, that's right. Okay, last, last one for me is line one thirty-one, computer maintenance. You requested twenty-five thousand, it was dropped to zero.
Right, so this is in, when the IT department was, was introduced a few years back, we had a line for commuter, for computer maintenance that was taken from us, and we used to pay for software through that line. So now, again, it's like anything else, we have to find, we have a couple of software programs that are proprietary that just the fire department uses. We've changed a couple, because now we're, we're, software that the town bought, we're going to integrate, so hopefully one of them will go away. If InfoShare can get their, their module up to speed. But, yeah, so that's why I asked for it, because that's about what we find elsewhere for computer software maintenance that we pay annual maintenance for. We have a ProPhoenix, which is our inspection software. We have another program that we use for policies and procedures called Lexipol. We use another program called Power DMS. So some of them, again, we're trying to integrate with this new software, but that's why I requested.
So, so where does he get paid from, Mr. Gross, if it's not paid from?
I, I can answer that. Fire prevention is another area where we, so, so usually out of a fire prevention account, you'll find, you will take the, the cost for the, not the Lexipol, the ProPhoenix, because it's the inspection software.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other questions for Chief Vecchio? Okay, thank you, Chief. We appreciate you. We appreciate your time, and.
My phone's always on, so.
Absolutely. Thank you. And we appreciate you giving us an opportunity to tour the firehouses as well. I think that was extremely helpful.
You're always welcome. It doesn't have to be a, you know, set-up tour, if anybody wants to come.
Thank you.
Your yearly reports.
For your kids.
So I just want to make some adjustments to the schedule, because it is ten o'clock. And in our original agreement, council colleagues, we indicated that we were going to have the directors up until ten o'clock, and then if we had any additional questions for Mr. Gross or any additional cuts, we could go through them at that time. We have the legal department prepared and ready. I would ask that we hear from the legal department and perhaps get through that. If we are able to add one additional department, it would be DPW. But I'm going to ask that we do engineering, health, recreation, and administration and finance on another date. We can at least relieve those directors from their presence here this evening and allow them to, to go home.
Council president, if I may, I, I think doing, what we've shown tonight is that we're probably not going to get through all of those, in, even in one more meeting, we're probably going to need two more. So my recommendation, for the sake of time, and so that we're not here till, you know, one in the morning.
Oh, we're leaving at eleven.
So I, I think we should stop where we are, handle the, the adjustments that we've made so far, and then reallocate the time across the other department heads over two other meetings, instead of just, I, I, because I don't even think we scheduled for one other meeting. I think we probably need two others to keep it at a reasonable time. I'm happy to hear the thoughts of my colleagues, but one thing, we've been working a lot in late hours, and we know what, I would prefer us to be a little fresher as we're going through this. And I think you would agree, we've been a little kinder with each other, at least in this particular proceeding, and I think if we go too much longer, that may change.
So, so I, I agree with that. But I don't want to deliberate on anything to the very end. I want to hear from the departments, if we're going to eleven. I, I, you know, either we deliberate, I, I think we should deliberate everything at the end, because why keep rehashing conversations?
I totally agree.
So if Legal's here, they're in, he's in the seat now. If any of them rather not come back and stay, I.
Well, no, 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 no. I, I think, I think we can, if we're going to continue to deliberate, then we can go through Legal, we can go through DPW, and it might, and it might be able to even get to Engineering, if we're going to just continue to hear from the directors. So.
I'm, I'm happy to continue hearing from directors. I, 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 I hope we can get through more than just Legal, but I'm not confident that we will.
But for those who, we said ten o'clock, who rather not comes, you know what I'm saying? So if they're, they sat here all night, and they, they want to leave, I would, I would say yes, if they want to stay and get it over with, then.
But we're not going to be, we're not staying here past eleven. We, we have a hard cutoff at eleven PM.
It's going to be one more hour and we get it done.
We're not going to get it done, because we still have to come in and deliberate, and again.
Really, we should be able to get it done, but I don't think we're going to get it done.
Yeah, we're not going to get it done. Look at where we are right now. We're on the fourth department, which is Legal, and it's ten o'clock, and we were supposed to be through all of them.
I don't want to hold them up, but.
So again, that's why my recommendation was to release the additional departments. Admin and Finance is the last one, we're definitely not going to get to that. Recreation and Health, those last three departments, if we can get through Legal, DPW, and Engineering, those departments are welcome to stay, but Health, Recreation, and Administration and Finance, I don't, I don't see the need for you to stick around. Our track record is, it's taking thirty to forty minutes per department. So.
I, I, I see some of our directors and here shaking their heads. Can we ask them? I think they want to stay. They've stayed this long.
Yeah.
Can we ask them? I mean, what are your, what's your thought, directors? Do you want to keep going, or do you rather? Right, you're already here, you already stayed this long.
And so your health. And there's no way we're going to get through Legal, DPW, and Engineering before eleven PM.
Can we extend it past eleven, just to hear them out?
Absolutely not, no. We are not, we are not ourselves when we continue to go this late, and it's not fair. It's not fair to us, it's not fair to the public, it's not. We need to be fresh when we make these decisions and ask these questions.
On line, because then we don't have to do Engineering today.
Yeah, let's not do Engineering.
I would just do the ones that are here.
Yeah, let's just do.
And then we deliberate another night, and then has I bed there?
I'll go along with that as well.
They've all just stayed here this full time, it's not fair to them. I'd rather we extend it another hour.
So, so who is, okay, so who is here for DPW? Okay, and who is here for Engineering?
I have, I have a letter to read.
Okay, that can wait. Okay, and who is here from the Health Department? Okay, and who is here from Recreation? No one. And who is here from the Admin and Finance, other than Mr. Gross? Okay, so again, Engineering, DP. She's not on the list. I, I appreciate you all, but she's not on the list, and you have a copy of the list.
So when are we going to get to them?
Ladies, God bless you here for fun.
So we, we, we do need to have, no, they're not. And we do, they're here because they want to be here. But, but what we need is, what we need is another date, just like we indicated. And if we want other departments here, then we need to discuss that once we finish with the department heads. But they're not department heads, or, I'm sorry, they're not directors, they are department heads. So if we want to bring back and hear from our department heads, we're welcome to do that, but we need to plan for that.
I think that because DPW and the Health Departments, if they want to stay, we should just hear them out after they're done with Legal. Even Legal's been, Mr. Trink's been waiting patiently, they've all been waiting.
I have no problem with that, and we can end at eleven.
And the rest.
As long as we end at eleven, so we're ending at eleven.
Can I just say something? Is Bill Keough planning on coming here? Maybe you should tell him.
I would expect, I believe he's watching.
Okay.
And planning to come at the time when he's called.
Which, which may not be tonight, okay.
Correct. So we'll go ahead, we'll move forward with Legal, then we'll hear from Engineering, and if we have the time, we'll move into the Health Department. And we're, we're not hearing from Engineering, we're not hearing from Recreation, and we will postpone the Admin and Finance. I'm just going to ask for another three-minute recess, so that we can use the bathroom before we continue. We are back in session, and we're with the Legal Department, and Madam Clerk for the public, the Legal Department starts on page.
Eight and twelve. Thank you, Mr. Gross. Mr. Trink?
Good evening. Thanks for your time and attention, it's better. Obviously, at its core, the most important thing I want to say overall is, at its core, the reason for any legal department in any organization is to work with the incredible men and women who make this town run and serve all of the residents and people who travel through this town on a daily basis. So I think the four components that have always existed with regards to the legal department have been to work collaboratively with the line, department heads, and everyone who works in this town. Number two, to be accessible, and your department heads, your line and people, your, your four people and whatnot, have always been accessible, and we've tried to be the same, to be cooperative and to be responsive. So we continue to be committed to that, we continue to be excited about accomplishing the goals and needs of this town, and to do it in as efficient and economic manner as possible.
Do we have any questions?
Yes.
Go ahead.
All right, so we're, we're, we're on page eight. Yes, page eight. First line is litigation general, one hundred and fifty thousand was budgeted last year, three hundred and sixteen thousand was spent. We received some communication earlier this year that said three hundred and sixty-eight thousand was spent. Is there a reason for the difference in the numbers?
Yeah, I can answer that. I mean, we, we did a complete analysis of all legal costs across, any funds that we've, that we have, and so that includes capital fund, that includes trust funds, it includes the, the current fund as well. So that number was not broken down by, by budget, it was broken, it was basically an analysis of what we spent on legal expenses over the past five years for, in, in, for those vendors, those, those firms. So it, this is, is, as you've heard before, I mean, this is, this is, this particular fund is how it's budgeted. Capital funds are budgeted, as you might imagine, you know, through, through the capital ordinances, and then trust funds are, again, are other sources where we pay for. So when we did it, we didn't just look at the budget, because that's a, that's a finite, and that's not what council asked for. Council wanted to know what all of our little expenses were across the board. So that is, that is problem, that is the most accurate look at what we spent. What you see here is just what was charged off to this budget.
Right, because that number was not just three, the three fifty-eight, I believe, not three sixty-eight. Three fifty-eight was for the Trink Isabella Siddiqui firm.
That's correct, and, but, but again, that's across other, that, that's everything, no matter where it was. So if it was a redevelopment and got charged off to redevelopment, a redevelopment.
So this three sixteen is not to Trink Isabella, this is three hundred and sixteen for litigation, regardless of who the actual firm or attorneys were?
That's correct.
All right, so we budgeted a hundred and fifty thousand for it, we spent three sixteen. What was extraordinary about last year that makes us only need a hundred and fifty this year?
Again, there were several extraordinary things. I'm looking for the breakdown of the dollars from last year. As you are aware, last year was where we concluded the litigation, where we obtained back the property in the Dandam Carter for the redevelopment area, so that was definitely one area. Definitely, the redevelopment litigation was part of that. Again, I don't know if you can pull up on your thing, I have the breakdown of it, we have it.
I have the, I have the spreadsheet.
Yeah, yeah. And then, again, to be able to pull up, we can go through it. Because we, each matter is broken down separately. I've given you each the seven hundred and seventy-two pages of specifics, and so obviously I'm worth answering questions I may.
Seven hundred and seventy-two pages is one of those kind of documents that's just so long, there's no point in even starting. Seven hundred and seventy-two pages is so much, there's no point in even starting, because there's no way any of us are going to get through seven hundred and seventy-two pages.
But that, that is the basics, when you ask the question, which is fine, so that's what you analyze, okay?
Right, but a summary would be appreciated.
But you guys asked for that breakdown, so they got that.
We did, we also asked for the summary.
I'm sorry, and you got it, so, okay. But specifically, Oprah, as you can see, went up significantly. As you know, Council Russell, because you've been over-asked by people that you've talked to me about, that have been, will go on repeat events. So Oprah is a significant time expense, takes the Perks Office, it takes a multitude of resources. Property maintenance is always a major issue. That was not as big during COVID, but it's extremely important with regards to quality of life issues in the town. There's a particular piece of litigation, I'd rather not put the name, because it's still pending, with regard to a property on Gregory that has been up and down the development vision several times. Cannabis, as you can see, cannabis expansion from twenty twenty-one went from seven thousand, seven hundred and seventy-five hours to thirty-two thousand dollars.
How can we see that? We, we don't see what you're reading from.
We have it on our email. They sent it to us.
Is that the seven hundred pages?
No, it's not the seven hundred and seventy-two, not at all, sorry.
Okay, we're direct us to it.
I'm sorry.
Direct us to it.
Okay, so.
I can email to.
It was the, no request that I had made, and they responded to.
Okay, I, I didn't see that.
You guys didn't read it? Yeah.
No, I didn't. I didn't see that. I saw the seven hundred and seventy-two pages. We talked about it and I said that was ridiculous.
And again, to Ms. Rose's credit, he prepares.
Again, so I would just like to, I'm sorry, I would like to, I would like to correct the record because Councilman has indicated that a summary was not in receipt. Councilwoman has indicated that a summary was in receipt and Mr. Gross is reading from said summary.
And, and, and Mr. Gross, and Mr. Trank, who sent that? What, what, Mr. Gross sent that?
So again, I don't know. It looks like it was bad purpose.
I just resent it out.
Okay.
Getting so much information, I think.
I know, we've been getting so much information. Mr. Gross just resent it.
Did you guys receive it? There we go.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Trank. If you'll just go ahead and continue. Yeah, it looks like, I mean, does everybody have a copy? I don't know that he needs to.
Yeah, we do have that.
That was sent to us. I have it right here.
Okay, so I, I don't think it's necessary for him to go through a document that we already have access to.
So the question was, what was extraordinary about last year? Okay, I'm, I'm, I'm looking at, what, what was extraordinary about last year? So this, this document that I'm looking at, it is broken down by firm.
Now, it's on the same, there's another, another attachment.
Right, I'm looking at it.
That was the items you had then, you'd asked me about, how did they go from tax to law? So this shows the increases in between twenty twenty-one.
So, and you don't expect to need more than a hundred and fifty thousand this year?
Oh, I don't, I didn't say that at all. I'd say it's impossible as you look at the art of legal fees. Legal fees, and the reason I made my opening remarks is, legal fees don't generally self-generate. They are reactive. So if we have lots of litigation because we're sued, then there has to be counsel, as you know, the county can't appear in litigation in the other way. So it is, in my opinion, virtually impossible to ever, you know, be budgeted. We've been incredibly successful in maintaining them. We keep, as you know, our rate that we pay to my firm, two hundred and fifty dollars an hour, which is pursuant to resolution that this council adopted unanimously. And so the bottom line story is, the way I try to maintain the department law is by making those hourly, hourly rates low and by trying where possible, for instance, with tax appeal counsel to have, we'll call it capital, or have flat fees. But again, if we get sued in five, ten, other, depending on the type of litigation and whatnot, then it goes with the territory. For instance, as you well, I'm sure know, Doris Israel was defeated. If that is challenged in spirit, pardon the jersey, we'll have to fund to defend that challenge to the die. That was a substantial obligation that went over. I only, I only know anegotating, but that will cost a job money. And that happens, that can happen more so once every year than less than a hundred.
When, when was the last time we were at a hundred and fifty thousand?
Go back and look and see where we have, but certainly if you take a look at our overall experience, certainly two eighteen probably was probably the last time. Since then, we've had a lot of, a lot of experience with two eighteen.
So just, just so we're clear, the spreadsheet that I'm looking at now does not, is not fully populated back to two thousand and eighteen? No, it's not. I'm looking at it. I'm looking at the Trink firm it has.
I mean, the Trink firm.
All right, well.
The other firm.
MSB.
MSB for certain years, so.
Okay, so, so in two thousand and eighteen, we spent less than a hundred and fifty thousand? I'm talking about for litigation general, that line item.
In, in two, two eighteen, two eighteen was a hundred and seventy-one thousand altogether.
All right, so for litigation?
I can't tell you that because this is not broken down by that. So this is, I mean, if we, if we, if we, if we focus on this, this master spreadsheet, I think that's more accurate because number one, that, that shows you all our legal expenses. So it's easier to, and, and, and if you go deep into, you know, connect with, look at by category, what those actual expenses are.
All right, so I, I'm looking at what you're referencing. Two thousand and eighteen, a hundred and seventy-one thousand in total fees. Two thousand and nineteen, six hundred and seventeen thousand. Two thousand and twenty, eight hundred and ninety-one thousand, almost eight hundred and ninety-two. Two thousand and twenty-one, five hundred and eighty-six thousand. Two thousand and twenty-two, five hundred and forty-six thousand. How in the world could we possibly reasonably with any integrity think that a hundred and fifty thousand is a fair number?
It's more that, that's not the only amount allocated.
No, that is not the only, that, that is the amount that is in, in the current fund budget. So that this, these numbers are from all sources.
Okay, so then you've got two hundred and seventy-five thousand for litigation. You've got.
Labor matters.
For litigation. But a, a lot of these labor expense, a lot of, sorry, a lot of these expenses are, are, are either from the trust funds where, for instance, with the group, when we were doing redevelopment.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Corporations, there are companies that would, would fund a lot of our legal expenses. So it was paid for out of trust funds, even, you know, now we, we have several of trust, trust funds that, for instance, was, that are still remaining for redevelopment. In terms of capital, our, our, our capital accounts for, for own expenses as well as any litigation that would, for instance, that was, was related to redevelopment is paid for out of capital. So there, there, there are multiple sources of, of funds for this. That's why this is a better way to look at it.
What is a better way to look at it?
Through, through this master sheet because that's, those are, those are the total numbers. Regardless of where the money came from, that's what we spent.
Right, so, so on average, over the last five years, we've spent a little over five hundred thousand per year, right? We've had one extraordinary year of one seventy-one. We, we have another extraordinary year of eight ninety-one. And in general, they've been five, four, five fifty to six twenty. So we're spending a little over five hundred thousand per year on total legal fees. When I look at this budget that you've presented us, I don't know where those other monies are coming from, but what I do see is two hundred and, I'm sorry, a hundred and, let me get back to the page. Two hundred and seventy-five thousand for litigation. And forty-nine thousand, five hundred for legal services. And then another, and that, those are, what I, and then another one hundred and forty-two thousand. So I see less than, I see about four hundred and seventy-five thousand and that's a little less than that, that's allocated. And we've not had a year where that's held with the exception of two thousand and eighteen. So how, how can we budget for that if we're not meeting, if those numbers don't have any integrity?
Well, it, it is part of, of the over and under that, that we, just, just like we under budget for, for overtime in anticipation of savings elsewhere. It is, it is a technique that has long been established. You know, you don't, you, you budget based on what you actually think you're going to spend, not just by line, but overall. And you don't necessarily budget for the maximum because if you budget for maximum, pretty sure, you know, a good chance you're going to spend that maximum.
Well, no, that's not what I'm saying. And I'm, I'm not saying that we should. What I'm saying is our experience now, we have at least in this spreadsheet, five years worth of experience. That five years worth of experience says that a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for litigation is probably not going to hold. And there's going to be significantly higher expenses for legal fees in other areas as well. And so part of the challenge for me is we are looking to not increase property taxes by ten or sixteen percent. We're looking to hold on to all of our employees. And in order to be able to do that, we need to have a fair understanding of what we're spending on legal fees. Two point eight million over the last
Five years.
Five years is, is, is quite a bit. And I, and I think if we're not accurately preparing for that, it's going to come from somewhere else at some point in time. And then, you know, you can kick the can down the road to use your terminology from the last meeting, but eventually you're going to get down the road and that can's going to be there. And I think that's part of what we're dealing with this year. So what, what I would appreciate is a more accurate reflection of what the expenses are expected to be. And, you know, I do see this now. I did not see this in, in my original, in my email whenever it was sent two weeks ago or whatever that claim is.
It should be about two weeks ago.
Yeah, so, you know, it's not, it's not forwarded, so I don't, I don't see it, but that's not.
Heard it out, so she received it, so we all received it.
Great, so what I would appreciate is a more accurate reflection because even the numbers that we have on here for legal aren't all legal fees. There are other, you know, minor numbers here or there and some of these people are actually employees. So that's, that's number one. Number two, I need to correct Mr. Trank. He said on the, you just said that your a hundred and fifty dollar an hour fees were unanimously voted on and approved.
I said the rate of a hundred and fifty dollars was adopted by this person. That's the rate. That's the rate.
Okay, because your contract was not approved.
The rate? Again, we can go back and listen to it. Again, I said the rate, the hundred and fifty dollars. And I obviously urge you to check any other town in this county to see if anybody else spent a hundred and fifty dollars for wages. That's what I said. Nothing more.
I, I understand that. What I'm, what I'm saying is, I just want to be clear, your contract was not approved.
But that's not what we're discussing here and that's not, that's not what he said. That's not what he said.
So perhaps I misheard you. What I heard was your contract.
Okay, and we've clarified, we've clarified, I'm sorry, gentlemen, 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 we're not arguing.
Council President.
We're not arguing. I, because I'm trying to talk over two people.
Stop trying to talk.
No, I'm not going to allow you to continue to go back and forth when what he said was the hourly rate was unanimously approved.
You are very quick to talk over me in particular and others on this side of the table. When you feel like it's an issue that you don't want to hear about.
It has nothing to do with the issue. And again, I am going to ask that we move on. That is not the argument. Please. And this is not the time of the place. This is not the time of the place. Ask your questions and let's move on. But you're dealing with a fact of, of that is insignificant. He did not say anything about his contract.
Allow someone else to speak.
You know how to respect the person who is, has the gavel.
I was speaking at the time you interrupted me and that is not.
Interrupted both of you and I spoke louder than both of you so that I can ask that we continue to move forward.
As I was saying, as I was saying, I wanted to correct the record as I heard it, and I did, your contract was not approved. That was the point I made regardless of what anyone else has to say about it. Second thing, we've got a hundred thousand dollars allocated for tax appeals last year, zero dollars spent. And I know we've settled tax appeals. So how is that the case? Can you help me understand where those dollars would actually be in the budget?
They are, they are in the, in the reserve for tax appeal paid out of there.
So, so the eighty-two four is what we, what we spent, what we paid for tax appeals. So help me understand this. I, I see the line item. I've highlighted the line item. Why, why do we report it that way on the budget?
Well, normally, normally I would have left it in there, but because we had the room in, in the reserve for appeal, I moved it to there.
All right, then the, the, the third question, we have for labor matters, a hundred and twenty-five thousand budgeted last year, sixty-eight five of that was spent, excuse me, we're asking for another hundred and twenty-five. I would expect, and I, I do not know for certain, maybe you can shed some light, Mr. Trank. Is that all that we spent on labor matters last year? Sixty-eight?
No, that's, that's how much we, that's how much we paid as of twelve thirty-one. But what was built, we have bills coming in, you know, as Mr. Trank said, the legal bills come in after the fact. So, you know, there, there, there are more bills this year, so that number is, is more up towards the, the, the top of that. I can get you the number.
So we update it in the final budget before we review it?
I'll, I'll be, I'll be happy to provide you with an analysis of it.
Yeah, because I, I would like to know what we're spending in lit, in litigation on labor matters. And I know we've had active, ongoing litigation now for some years. And so I'd like to know what that number represents. And I think it's important for us to understand that because, one, we've lost many of those cases. And we are now facing additional payouts as a result of that litigation. And in at least one case, we've requested that we not have the litigation. So we're spending money on the litigation, then we lose, and then we owe more money. So that doesn't seem like a good usage of taxpayer dollars. So I'd like to understand what we are spending on labor matters, on litigation for labor matters. Because I don't, I don't, you know, I've, I've made my point there. That's it for that particular page. I don't know if any of my colleagues have a question on page eight.
Well, if they do, as a, as a presiding officer, I think that's a question that I can ask.
You can. I was done talking, so I just turned it back to you.
Thank you.
Counselor, just, just for clarification, what I can do is I can take this spreadsheet that, that, with our total costs and break out the, the different, you know, that, those categories so that you can see it from there.
I greatly appreciate that.
Are there any other questions for Mr. Trank, council colleagues?
No.
Well, not on, not on page, not on page eight. There's, we, we have page twelve.
Okay, let's continue.
So, so page twelve, base salary pay is sixty-three five. We spent forty-seven five and now we've got forty-nine five. Now, on the summary page behind it, 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 it doesn't show that these are raises. So I, I don't understand how it could be forty-nine five this year and it's forty-seven five last year.
Must be a timing issue of the firm description, but there's definitely no raises, I can promise you that.
I think that, that.
And the only thing that I find, again, the way out of the budget, so, because as you know, besides the zoning board attorney, crowing, planning board attorney, it's seven thousand and.
Well, and that, that was increased last year, last year, it was thirty-five hundred. I'm sorry.
All right, so, so the discrepancy is with regard to the, the, the stipend for the zoning board?
Well, and, and again, correctly or wrong, I believe when you proved the increase, it was the zoning board attorney, planning board attorney.
And public advocate.
Right. So I just don't see their line item.
Yeah, I, there was not, I have to go back and double check this, but my recollection was that the, the, the salary change took effect mid-year, so adopted, not, not retroactive, so.
Right, but it's.
It was budgeted for the whole year, but it was so.
But shouldn't it still be identified as a position in the salary and wage budget detail? But shouldn't it still be identified as a position in the salary and wage budget detail?
I'm sorry.
Shouldn't the public advocate and any other
So yeah, the difference is whether he is employed or
But wouldn't the assistant attorney be on here?
Like, he's, uh, He's also not an employee.
Even under the organizational chart, whether he's an employee or not, he's still the assistant attorney.
He's not an employee, the organizational chart's only employees.
Okay.
All right, so so it's because of the mid-year adoption of zoning board and pub- public advocate?
Yeah, it went from thirty-five hundred to seven thousand.
And I didn't blame work it.
What's that?
These three.
But they're, but they're, but they're not employees.
Again, I'm sorry.
All right, I'm
Mr. Trink is the only one
So if if, but are the, okay, so they're not employees?
But she is, Alice is.
Alice is still an employee, but my question then becomes, are the, and this is a completely different department, and I'm just trying to understand, are crossing guards employees?
Yes.
Okay.
If if they're on there, if they're in there, and on the employee, you know, salary and wage, they are employees.
I I think, but to, I think where you're going with that is crossing guards in particular are part-time, so you don't have to pay the the benefits, uh, for them, God bless you.
Thank you.
Uh, I'm done on that page, if anyone else has any questions, I'm done.
No, not page J, questions on the next page.
Okay, go ahead.
Um, line item twelve, legal services, and line item twenty, municipal prosecutor. So for legal services, it's thirty-one thousand's budget, zero is spent. So why is thirty-one thousand being requested? What is this line item for?
I'm gonna check, I think that's a typo. And is that thirty-one-five is Mr. Kaser? So I'll double check that.
Okay, and then for the municipal prosecutor, sixty-one thousand is budgeted, forty was spent. What is this? Cuz in the contract that we approved in March, I remember that he's getting paid a thousand dollars a week, so it's fifty-two thousand. Why is sixty-one thousand being budgeted for our prosecutor? Is that also a typo?
Well, but there also sometimes extra sessions. And in this case, there weren't, there were fewer sessions. But but we budget, we budget based on the contract amount, plus again, there there are times when there are additional sections, so it gives us sufficient.
Any other questions on this page?
No, but I did miss a question on the last page on twelve. So we big, we budgeted sixty-three-five. Uh, this is seventeen oh one, page twelve, legal services, salary and wages, first line, zero, one, zero, base salary pay sixty-three-five. And then we spent forty-seven-five. How how, if if these are, how did that happen?
Go back and look, but I I think that, remember, I I mentioned before that as as we rotated attorneys, we've taken them off of employees and made them, um,
Service.
That's all, so I know, uh, last year that happened with one of them, so that's, that's at least, um, some of that difference, I can't, I don't have to go dig and see the the entire difference.
Okay. So just let me know, please.
So number ten, the base salary pay. Under legal service.
Yes. It's if me with fourteen.
Any other questions, colleagues? Any other pages? Under the legal.
There there are no, no, are there?
No.
Are there?
No. Thank you, Mr. Trink, we appreciate you.
Thank you.
And next, on our agenda, is engineering.
No, uh, you, well
CPW, I'm sorry. CPW.
I want you to, CPW is, um, probably about, what, five or six, seven, um, different mini departments, so you're gonna be spending quite a bit of time.
Okay, no problem, that's, we moved up to the next meeting. So, and we are engineering, thank you so very much.
What page are we on?
So I'm going to our organic every
Seventy-six.
Department of I have a question. Yes, go ahead. What page are we on, for the public?
Seventy-seven.
Building and property. And operating expenses, page seventy-six, so starting with here. I wanna do the
No.
What page are we on?
Seventy-six.
Seventy-seven.
Seventy-seven.
But engineering, operating
John, Mr. Pelosi, he's, he's DPW, he's confused, so seventy-seven.
All right, and where are we in the organizational chart? Under public works department. Mr. Pelosi, thank you so much for joining us this evening, and if you would give us a brief overview of your department.
We would be grateful.
We are, perhaps in both of the town. Um, you know, we do your snow plowing.
Can you speak in your mic, please? Thank you.
We do your, uh, snow plowing, we take care of your roads, we take care of your stores, we take care of parks. Um, we pretty much do everything, we're on call twenty-four seven for emergencies and and whatnot, and, uh, that's what we do. We set up for events, special events, and and take care of those too. Um, so we're we're, we we try to do the best we can, what what we got.
I have a question.
Yes, Councilwoman.
So so, Mr. Pelosi, thank you, uh, for being last tonight. Um, but, uh, last week, we went over open positions, and I supported, yeah, the truck driver position, can you go over with the council, please?
Sure.
What the need and how important that, uh, decision is for your department to function.
Um, we're we're coming, um, we're coming of age, and, uh, we have a lot of people that that kind of started at the same time. Um, the institutional knowledge that that department's gonna lose in the next five to seven years is gonna be irreplaceable. So to cut Pete positions out while people have a chance to learn, learn the job from people that have experience is a little hairy. So this year, we're gonna lose, well, we lost one guy to retirement already, and we're gonna lose another one come July. And we're only gonna replace those guys with one person. So again, like I said, you you know, there's, you know, there's gonna be two less guys to teach people, new people, what to do, where to go, how to do it. You know, so every P, every person that I can get through the door, I would love to get through to the door.
So do we have a RFP or RFQ out for that position, if we know that there's a a pending retirement in July?
Well, the the, I think we're talking about two definitions, last meeting, there was one open position in in the budget, uh, and that the council removed, voted to remove.
Mm-hmm.
Um, in addition to that, there's two, since then, two two retirements that came out, came open, which certainly the administration intends to fill.
And we have not removed those opportunities from this budget.
As of now, they're, you've not
Okay.
Well, they've not retired yet.
They're not.
But their their salary will be compensated.
That have have developed since then.
Since the budget was created?
Yeah.
And so they, since they're already budgeted for, that's not gonna create an increase in the budget, because they
You continued with this budget as it is, yes.
Then that will, okay.
No, but I was talking about his open position that did, you guys did cut out from him last week. Why it's important that, and that's, you know, just, I know we had a mandate, or you guys had a mandate with all of them. And I had explained, again, knowing a little bit more about the department, just, you know, to give him an opportunity to advocate to keep that truck driver in.
And we, I I personally understand that, but at the end of the day, it would be um, unfortunate for us to not make the same cuts across the board. And this year is a very tough year, so we we have to just figure it out. And and then implement and reinstate this position for twenty twenty-four.
Yeah, I think it's important that because we are trying to save jobs, we have to be fair. And we we've gotta, it's a, it's tough, and I get, understand it, right? Um, um, but I think, I I don't think we are in a position to do that now unless we can get that property tax increase number down significantly, and then possibly be able to consider it, but I don't, I don't, I don't know that that's even possible. What I, what I would like to, are we still doing questions, or you, I'm sorry? Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I apologize.
I know, you love to talk, Councilman.
Oh.
No, but no, it's important to answer the questions, and and seriously, I just want these notes taken because when we get to the end to deliberate, and we look at, I get every dollar, but when you you look, we're trying to get to a certain spot, just the the services that will be affected. And I, again, it'll be a discussion on a separate night, but as we talk to each department head, as you just gotta realize the impact of what it will create. Um, and a- again, I I mean, you know, the s- snow removal and things of that nature.
Let me, I, I'm sorry, I kind of got off kilter there.
Yeah.
But, um, with with having a a new truck driver position, you know, we're we're kind of like, when it comes to snow, we're kind of contractor-heavy. And, you know, that's one less contractor we might have to hire. And then puts a guy on the line for the whole year, not just for a snow. You know, so, you know, you're talking about saving nickels and investing in the town. You know, employees, full-time employees are kind of the way to go. You know, if you start privatizing everything, you're gonna, you know, you just don't get, you don't get the services, you don't get, you know, you don't get the, you know, and we've gotten lucky, the last four or five guys we hired are are very, very talented, very, very fit right into the, right into the mix.
Thank you. Any other questions, colleagues?
So I I certainly do agree with you, Mr. Pelosi. Um, we get much more bang for our buck with full-time employees than with contractors. Unfortunately, we've been outsourcing a lot of these things over the course of time, and that's part of the reason why I think we're in the in the situation that we are, we need to reinvest in many of the departments, and as a matter of fact, uh, with the exception of legal, everybody has, including you, clearly articulated why we need to. Um, it's just this year is going to be very difficult to do so. Uh, wanted to ask a question on the, on the, um, work chart. Uh, we've got thirty-five salary positions and one open position. But before I ask the question, can I ask, how long have you been the director?
Well, I'm acting director.
Oh, okay.
Um, I've been the superintendent for ten years. I've been the superintendent for recreation before that for twenty years. I've been working here since nineteen eighty.
So in in your term here, just dealing with public works, right now, we're at thirty-five employees. How many were we at when you started?
Sure you wanna go there?
I absolutely do.
Between, and this is like a close guesstimate. The three department, uh, the three departments that the public works department now is encompassed in engineering, public works, and the recreation grounds maintenance. Probably when I walked in the door in nineteen eighty, it was probably a hundred and thirty-eight guys.
Yeah. In nineteen eighty, it was a hundred and thirty-eight employees.
Yeah.
And how many do we have now?
Well, you read it, you read it, and then plus you gotta add in the engineering department. And and and
And public works and recreation.
That's all of it now.
No.
Parks and recreation are here.
Okay.
They're on there, and the three people, four people that are in in the engineering department. So you're talking thirty-nine, forty people. And it was like one thirty, one, one thirty.
At one time.
At one time.
And and the town didn't get any smaller?
Oh, no, no, didn't get any smaller.
And, uh, and, uh,
Thirty-five.
And now, in order to compensate, we we contract out essentially?
We do, yeah, we do.
So how does that affect us?
And and not to say anything, I have a bunch of talented guys. But again, like I said, they're getting older, and they're talking about retiring and stuff like that, so.
So so how does it affect the 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 outcomes of public works department to go essentially from a hundred and thirty-eight to thirty-eight?
I mean, I know Like you said, you know, a lot of things were contracted out, and a lot of things, you know, probably things, jobs that we used to do, we just can't do it anymore, so they get contracted out. Now, we used to do our own paving, a lot of our own paving, we used to, you know, we we used to put in our own curbs, you know, it's sidewalks and stuff like that. And we 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 accomplished a lot of what the contractors get paid for now. The garage, the mechanic garage, yeah.
So Councilwoman, Governor Michael just asked the question, why couldn't we go back to doing some of those jobs ourselves?
Hire more people and get rid of the contracted services.
You need to hire more people, but like
In addition to equipment.
You know, if you're gonna put a, like, you wanna put a ha- another firehouse online, you you like, like us, if you're you're talking, you know, you're gonna have to hire five, six, seven guys and equipment trucks, you know, it's like you're saying, it's an investment.
Has anybody ever done a cost-benefit analysis of what we're paying with contractors versus what we did it ourselves? Mr. Gross, I guess that might be a question, or so you might be.
I I've never really looked at it, you know, other than what it, what the bills are, you know?
Once you take it out, it's hard to put back in.
I- is it, is it, is it? I I would assume the reason why we did that, and again, this is assumption, an assumption, I could be wrong. I assume the reason why we did that over the course of time was it was less expensive to contract it out, at least in the short run, than it is to have employees, is is that accurate?
I wasn't part of that decision-making process. Um, I I can sit here and all I can do is speak from my heart.
Yeah.
You know, and I always thought it was wrong.
You you come across very well, sir.
Um, so line, I had a one sixteen.
On what page?
Mm-hmm.
Privatized services.
The operating expense for building and property.
Seventy-seven.
I don't have the page number, it's the original document, it didn't have page numbers. Um, so, one sixteen, privatized services, a hundred and thirty-five thousand was budgeted last year, a hundred and eighty-five thousand was spent. You requested two hundred thirty, but the mayor recommended a hundred and thirty-five. Can you explain what this line item's for, what was spent on, you know, the one hundred and eighty-five dollars?
John.
And can we, um, reduce it, cuz we really need a truck driver, would it make sense for us to reduce the salary of the truck driver from the privatized services recommendation, so you can get your truck driver? Cuz you're saying that if we hire him, it's cheaper versus, you know, contracting out.
Mr. Gross. You really, um, the 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 major amount of this is the contract that we let out, um, last meeting for the um, for the grass, the the lawn, lawn and grass, um, contract. Um, you you know, we we certainly can take a look at this, most of, most of what, um, Joe's referring to happened um, before I arrived, so I I don't have any, any history to get, that I can give you as to how it occurred. There has been some attrition since since I've been here, uh, but but nothing, I don't think, in major uh, in in terms of a big project, so, um, again, um, the 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 mayor had approved, um, replacement of that, the the open position. Um, feel that 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 was something that was important. Um, would have liked to have seen that state, uh, in terms of making a shift now away from the the contracts that we've privatized, that would take some time uh, to do, and it's certainly something that could be considered to be done. Um, and, um, but but it probably realistically, it's not gonna impact this budget, cuz number one, you have contracts you've already let out, number two, you have to, you have to go through a process of of developing, um, You know, the and staffing and getting the staff. I mean, we've we've got openings we can't fill now. So we really can't let our contracts go until we we get to a point where we feel like there's a labor force available to us. What are the terms of those contracts? Are they long term contracts? Usually they're they're annual with with extensions. And have we done or should we do some kind of cost benefit analysis? Well, we've done. I mean, from a, from a, a pure cost benefit analysis on on the services that we're providing. It it's economical. What Joe's talking about, and he's not wrong. There's value to having headcount, you know, people here because when, when it hits the fan. You need people. And so it it definitely, there's definitely value to it. And and you can quantify some of it. But it's really in order to do it properly. We'd have to evaluate all of our contracts and we'd have to figure out how to time them all appropriately. But it would require investment. You know, upfront to get the staff on board and trained, ready to go, so you have overlap.
Right. But what I think we would benefit from, and obviously, this is not something we're expecting in the short term. But in an analysis that kind of gives us an understanding of that. Again, what we've, what we're trying to do, we know that this is the crisis, right? So part of what I think we want to do is not just understand how we got here. But also understand how we can plan our way out. Over the next period of time, and for me, that's at least five years. And I know that's not an election cycle. But I think that's what what we've got to consider, and it may be a completely differently composed council at that time. But I think they would appreciate. Some of that work being done, at least the analysis part, so that they can understand and or we can understand, should we still be here? What some of the investments are, so then when we when we're making cuts. We're not just arbitrarily making them as we've had to do in this particular case with cutting out all open positions. That that does not take into any consideration the impact on these various departments or the impact on the residents. But that's the situation we find ourselves in. If we can start to create, at least have the data. So that we can understand what those investments are going to be, then we can begin to plan a little further out, so so that would be my. My request of you, Mr. Gross, whenever you work your plate down. To add that to it, or Miss Stephanie, I can you give me a last name again? I'm sorry. Santana, Mrs. Santana. All right, so.
Got a big job.
We. So we went from a hundred and thirty eight to to roughly thirty eight, and that that is part of what I wanted to to highlight in this. Is that when we're talking about making cuts to staffing levels, there are, there's almost nowhere to make them. That's number one. Number two, I just have a, an aside, it is not really budget related, but I wanted to ask this of you. Are your, are your employees in a union?
Yes, yes.
Which union are they in?
The subordinates are in the AFSC union. And supervisors are in the Teamsters.
And and okay, that that's just all I wanted to know. So we have, most of these jobs are union jobs, which brings union protections and union negotiations. With regard to salary, wages and benefits. Except for the leadership, right, right, all right. All right, so now, if we're going to look at these pages, Council colleague was on page seventy seven. I would say that we just stay there until we get off of it. Unless there are some objections on. All right, so elevator registration is line forty. We're on page seventy seven. Zero four zero. Budgeted thirty three hundred last year, spent four thousand, requested eighty five hundred. Approved, or at least the mayor's recommendation is thirty three hundred. Is it, how, I don't, can you tell me what elevator registration is?
Each, each, each elevator in all the buildings have to be registered, I guess, by the state. So there is a registration cost and they come and inspect it and all of that happy stuff. We acquired another building.
Yeah, two more elevators.
Yes, that has elevators.
So how can we keep that number at thirty three hundred when we have more to do? And we spent more than thirty three hundred last year?
Well, that speaks to the line items that we have where there's been no money utilized. For instance, the next line item service contract field has spent sixty five hundred, non spent last year. Sixty five hundred departmental requests and sixty five hundred mayor's recommendations. So again, you're taking the surplus from a line item that's not been utilized. To supplement the line item that we know the funds need to be expended from.
And and to answer your your question directly, we segregate out the expenses for ten room. Because it's for the library and it comes with a different category, so that's why.
So so. If thirty three hundred is enough to cover the elevators in all the buildings minus ten roomy?
The way that we have been budgeting, which we're bottom line budgeters in terms of looking at it. We felt, we we're confident that the higher budget is sufficient to for what for. This year, again, under the concept that you'd like to see realigning it, that that's what you're talking about.
Yeah, so we could we do that?
That's that's that other discussion.
Yeah.
But but in terms of, you know, the bottom line, we feel that. Yeah, we spent more than that last year. But this is building and properties, some some expenses perhaps. You know, would 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 qualify as capital expenditures. If we run into a jam, so I mean, we, there are ways to deal with that. Again, you know, when you're looking at budget in 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 this environment, because we have such strict. One thing you have to keep in mind, we are very strict, we can't transfer. You know, uh, uh, until certain, till late, late in the year. So, you know, the the major transfer, we get winter transfer all the time, these fees. But if we ran out of money entirely. We 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 were locked into that for quite a while. So it's it's not the same as normal gap accounting. We have very. Restricted rules. So, you know, we 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 look to leave us, there's a reason we do it, and it's not, it's not, it's to. Give us the ability to manage with the things that you don't know, like we sit around here saying, okay, well, we spent that last year. We'll spend this this year and then we'll we'll budget that amount this year and move the rest out, okay? It it's, to me, that's, that's no different than just anticipating more, more revenue. From 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 your reserve. But leaving, if you want, if you leave it in, it does give us the ability to manage.
I I understand.
Manage with the unexpected.
I I understand. I I think this, though, in this particular case, so before I had any clarity on this. My, my question was, am I safe walking into an elevator? And I'm sure folks in town would look at that and say elevator registration is probably not something. So and I I understand the explanation, I get it, but. You know, without the explanation or without being able to speak to someone who actually knows. It that is a, a something that I would think would be unsafe, right? So the clarity is important, and I think budgeting that that line item, the way we've been talking about. Helps at least in this particular regard. How do we not have any fuel dispense? I don't understand that.
We actually did an upgrade on it recently, and and so some. Some of the stuff, if it's, if it's a small dollar item and and it's not, doesn't apply here like like, it would be written off of this. If it's an upgrade, that's going to be capital, so it wouldn't show up here. And frankly, it 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 may have got, you know. We we we're, we're talking about about ten to twelve thousand dollars, these line items that we do a year. And sometimes they get misclassified, so it's quite possible that there's something somewhere else that's misclassified for that. You know, it's not practical or reasonable to do that level of 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 an audit over over an item like that, but. It's probable. If we went in and 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 tried to look at the benefit, we might find that. It was, it was a different line, which would qualify, but you know, maybe just missed on that.
Do you have a question?
Well, so my my last statement would be, instead of going through, because on this particular category, I highlighted almost everything. And instead of going through each one of them, I I would request that you work with Mr. Pelosi. Figure out what has to stay. I know your, your, your bottom line is three eighty seven. We spent four sixty one last year.
Right, that has to stay. I mean, we need the money, if we spent, using, you need just your own, you know, theory on this. We spent significantly more than we're talking about budget.
Right, so tell me that, like, put that in there, like, if you need, because we know they're already cut to the bone.
That's what, that's what the analysis that I gave you does.
Well.
It goes through all these lines and 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 puts that in place.
So I didn't, I didn't read this one, but based on my understanding of it. All right, so let's.
So we take out that eight hundred thousand, it's going to wipe some of these, so so to to his point. And the one question I do, I do have, and I'm sorry, Councilman, are you?
No, I'm happy to have the conversation.
So. My concern is, again, we have properties we acquired. And we have, we're going to have maintenance on them. Are are we prepared with this budget to be able to handle? Handle all the properties that we we purchased, even. New ones down downtown before, because obviously it doesn't look like there are going to be any transactions this year to sell them.
A number of these, between our, between our capital fund and this fund. We feel that we'll be able to maintain our properties. Would we like to be able to spend more on our properties? Yes, of course. When we're doing studies, first of all, to me, the very first thing, and the council approves this. We need to facilitate reviews to find out exactly what, so that we're not just band-aid. We're moving forward, putting together a plan, and then we'll come back to the capital plan and a and a maintenance plan. For those properties, but it's really, I don't want to say it's pointless to it, but but.
And and that's what we did with the fires, yeah, and that's what we did with the firehouses a few years back when I first came on. We did the facility studies for them. And 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 we continue to do the same. A lot of what we're discussing tonight, I just want to share with my colleagues, is. A lot of this planning and these kind of conversations should be done in a workshop in like October. Because that's when the administration would start, you know, start to put their budget together for the following year.
Maybe if we did a workshop, we might be able to get the budget a little earlier as well.
Exactly, so.
Great idea.
Exactly, next year, and we'll do better. When you know better, you do better, and I think this is. Revealed that there's some things that we have to do differently. We know now and we will, so. Are there any other questions for Mr. Pelosi?
So not, not necessarily on this, but I just, I I I just quickly did the numbers on here. And it's only like a four thousand dollar difference. It's actually four thousand dollars less than this three eighty seven. So I I don't know where the discrepancy may be. But again, if it's a, if the three eighty seven is the number, we we need, even if we end up, if you tell us, look. You know, I've worked with Mr. Pelosi. And in order to do what we need to do, a better reflection of that is just for argument's sake, four hundred fifty thousand. Even if we cut it back from that, or if we say, hey, look, we can keep that. I think we need to know what, what is required. Not, I, you know, it's, I know you're saying that this is absolutely what's needed. But in the format that is presented, it's hard for me to 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 understand that and accept that. So give it to us in a format.
You can't have it both, you can't have the format in both ways. So if I do that, right, then you, you've got the list that you had me do. And if you go and look at that, you'll see that the numbers for some of these lines are higher and some of them are lower. And so it ends up, it and and it ends up giving us the number based on what we, what we spent. Which means other lines are going to be lower, i- i- not just this budget, any other budget, so. So what you're, what you're suggesting would do just that. Now, if I do that, then I'm not going to come back and 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 add money in unless we're, unless we're adding. Let's conceptually. You're you're. Saying that we should expand our server. The administration is telling you that we feel comfortable. With with what what we've recommended. In terms of the dot, the total dollar amount.
Well, okay.
Your, what your suggestion is, the sort of suggestion is going to raise that. We're comfortable with that too, and we may end up being uncomfortable with whatever goes down, but we'll talk about that after. We'll deal with it.
Not without cutting some more, no, I don't think so.
Okay, so do any of my comments, thank you, Mr. Pelosi, we appreciate your time, we appreciate you being here this evening. And we appreciate making sure, you making sure that you serve the residents of West Orange to the best of your capacities. With the limited funds that we do have allocated, and we appreciate that.
So that's just for, he he's just responsible for building and property OE?
What about the shade tree operating?
You can keep going if you want.
A lot of lines.
Yeah, let's.
Shade tree as well?
And and just for the record.
Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna.
Well, let's just finish with him. We don't want to bring him back another night.
You're right.
There's still a few more pages left on.
Yeah.
Sanitation.
So again, are there any other questions regarding any of these additional pages that we want to ask Mr. Pelosi? Yes, go ahead.
Shade trees. Trees. Fifty two thousand, this is line item two hundred. Fifty two thousand five hundred was budgeted last year.
This is page seventy nine for the public.
Zero was spent. And then fifty two thousand is being budgeted again this year. So no trees were planted, I mean, that doesn't seem accurate.
That line, we bought a lot of trees. We also have capital money for trees. And I I'm going to think that that some of the tree money is probably included in the.
Yeah.
Tree per use or some, some, some aspect of trees is that that tree is not tree per, necessarily tree purchasing.
We got that emergency fund, emergency tree fund.
Yeah, there's like.
We also, we also, we also got a couple of grants for trees last year too.
That's great. Line item ninety Township Forester, ninety thousand budgeted, ninety seven thousand spent.
Overtime?
Is that overtime or is that overtime?
No, no.
That's the two different positions, the two different people.
We we have, we have. You know, secondary foresters for actually working on trees, not not to make, not in terms of our decision making. But actually coming out and doing work, so that's for that.
Not any more questions?
Thank you. Do any of my other colleagues have any other questions on shade tree?
You know, you know, the same, same argument holds as before. And then if if the fifty two five is not for actual purchase of trees. If that is somewhere else in either in this budget or in a capital budget. Let us know, because you know, that's, that's a, that's a number that, you know, fifty thousand does, that that one helps.
That's all including, right now, that's all including your eight hundred thousand.
At fifty two? Yeah, okay. I.
Whatever we didn't spend in this budget is going towards a, what we think we're going to spend through the rest of the year. Which is that, that, that column, and then the anticipated reserve.
Councilwoman.
The next page, street salt and chloride.
Oh, did I miss a page?
I know, several pages, eighty, page eighty three.
Okay, before we go to page eighty three, let's go, let's stop at page eighty, Councilwoman.
Okay. So so going back to that truck driver. Overtime we spent was four hundred three, three thousand last year. You budgeted two ninety five. So again, is is part of that overtime from not having that position filled, which is less than fifty thousand or what? Gave you the.
And.
Now, I'm just trying to, you know.
I I understand, but.
The principle of it, but.
But at the end of the day.
Overtime.
We, you, it's my recommendation that we put in some different control mechanisms. If we have overtime at two hundred and ninety five thousand. Then, quite frankly, we shouldn't be spending four hundred and three thousand on overtime. We may have to make some hard decisions. Again, this is why we're here.
With all due respect, Council, Council President, the administration is responsible for the administration of this budget. With all due respect, Council, Council President, the administration is responsible for the administration of this budget. This council gives us a bottom-line budget, and it's up to us to determine on a day-to-day basis how to spend that. Now, I, I, and, and I appreciate your concern about that, but the truth of the matter is, if I got a tree coming down, I'm gonna spend it. I'm gonna send somebody out and, and, and we're gonna spend the overtime because it's an emergency circumstance.
So then, so then if we were to say, if we, if, if the members of this council agreed that we should reduce our budget. Municipal budget to no higher than a six percent increase, then the administration has to figure out how to make that happen.
Now, you have to tell us which lines you wanna cut out.
Well, now you can't have it both ways. Exactly, exactly, exactly.
When we were on a break, on a bathroom break, when we asked you about this, and we were talking about percentages, you said that if we gave you a percentage, you would work it out and come back to us. Did I not hear you correctly?
If you tell me, if you tell me that you want to use this, the eight hundred thousand dollars and, and it, it, whatever the, let's say the numbers are the enough. And the eight hundred thousand dollars and reserves, you tell me it's reserves, I'll work that out. But that, this, but, but if you're, but if you say, no, it's not, because this goes back to our original conversation. Reserves are kicking the can down the road, okay?
Where it is, it is, but we have additional.
And, and, and I, and I understand that, that you've come a long way, and that, that, that might be a desirable thing. And, and, and I get that, I have to tell you what I think about it, but I also respect the, you, you're making tough decisions here. And you may have to take some combination of those different methodologies to get where, to where you need to go.
We're trying, we don't wanna residents paying ten percent.
So, having said that, but in terms of, cut, now, the real cuts, in terms of policy. You have to decide where you wanna cut it, where, where is, because, because that has to do with service levels.
And in fairness to administration.
Service level you want to reduce.
Yeah, and if there's administration, and I, I know there was a, um, little pushback la- last week, cuz it's new policy and implementing tougher procedures. I know you came up with the, um, with the contracts for any events that, you know. People have to fill out the form, and so you guys could get a- You guys could get a, a better handle on the amount of staff that's needed for all the special events.
Um, and- Which a lot of those are overtime.
Your overtime, I, I, I know, I know. Um, and so, again, so that's all part of this, wh- whether we get to accomplish all that this year.
So then, why not, some of these line items here. The requested budget is much larger than what was spent in the previous years, why not increase staff? Why not have two or three truck drivers or extra personnel, you know, seasonals even to help, right, at an hourly rate?
That's what I am.
Versus having full-time salaried people, hire a bunch of seasonals, and that, that's gonna help us. Like, if you go to the next, uh, if you go to page eighty-three, salt, chloride, and snow, line item one thirteen. Four hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars is, uh, amended in the budget. Over six hundred fifty-four thousand was spent, we barely got snow last year.
We had ice though.
A lot of ice.
A lot of ice.
Anyway, there are some line items in here, I feel like we-
Disagree with you that, that we should be looking at that.
Yeah.
We cannot just do it, though. You've got to, it has to be done with a plan, it's gotta be planned out, because what you can't have is us coming in, into, into next year. And not have, have the staff onboard, trained and ready to go. And we have to, and we, and, and, and if we're gonna be protected, we need to, we need to do those contracts this summer, so there's an overlap.
So I hear you, but right now, right, we just talked about trees. Fifty-two thousand was budgeted, zero was spent last year, you're saying we have a tree fund, we get grants. Why not take that fifty-two thousand, apply it towards seasonals, right? And then there you go, you get help, and then you don't have to spend all this extra in overtime.
You may not accept this as, as a professional, I'm just-
Just trying to understand.
You cannot make that decision today, take money out of the budget. Because I, I cannot sit here and guarantee you that we can turn that around and be ready for this, for, for leaves and for, and for snow. I can't tell you that, and, and we're not gonna recommend it.
Well, by the time we have that next meeting, would you be able to tell us?
No, it's, it's gonna take months to put this together. First off, you gotta hire people, we can't hire the positions we have now. And I have union contracts, so I can't go out and just say, okay, let's pay them more.
I didn't say pay more, I'm saying hire, I'm saying hire seasonals at hourly rate.
We can't hire seasonal, they have to have C D Ls, because they have to be able to drive the big trucks. Oh, and by the way, if we're gonna do that, we have to buy trucks, it's about a one-year wait on the trucks, it can't be done that fast.
Thank you, are there any other questions? Yes.
Just not particularly on that, but just in light of what we're talking about, is we can't make all these changes quickly. And we know we need to look at our budget and do forecasting and projecting, and look at it. The I T, have we ever looked at like the expenditures, one point two million on I T services and that budget? Can we look at that department and see if there's any way that we could?
Your I T expenses are only going to expand if you're gonna get a hold of, of future budgets. We look at I T every day, I just today, we ma- made a decision about our, our, uh, our backups for, for emails. And went to a, a service that is, uh, twelve thousand dollars less than what we were anticipating it was going to be. Uh, so, so we look at this stuff all the time, I'm deeply involved in that aspect of it. Um, but having said that, our expenses, right, you're only gonna go up because, because our, our ability to be competitive is about, is about information, uh, gathering and, and distribution in, in effect.
All right, do we have any more questions from Mr. Pelosi?
I do.
Yeah.
Street salt and chloride, page eighty-three, line item one fourteen, it just says private, what is that? Three hundred fifty thousand was amended, was requested last year, and eighty-three, and two hundred fifty thousand dollars was spent.
That's reimbursements to, um-
Private companies?
No, communities.
Condo associations and such.
Okay, any other questions?
So was it an extraordinary year, meaning the, the two hundred and fifty? Is that, is that, so you, you were expecting three fifty?
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you were talking about the, which one, which one?
No, one fourteen, it just says private.
Yeah, we got less snow.
It is private.
That, okay, I'm sorry, apologize, uh, it was a lot less, we usually go-
So what does that mean? What does private mean?
Paid to private entities.
Okay.
So, I, 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 I'll also check on that to see whether or not, so whether they will all submit it.
Is that a contractor or are those communities?
Those communities.
Right, so, so, you know, I mean, this guy is mentioned by name, I'll use mine as, as, you know, so like Bel Air, we do certain things ourselves. And then we get a portion of that back, right, so that's included, this is all of the communities that get those kind of, Llewellyn Park and all the other, right. So, what, if, if we were expecting three fifty, how did we get two fifty? Cuz I'm sure the, the communities-
No, because, because, um, it really depends, what we pay them is a percentage.
Of what they spent.
Of what they spent, well, based on, based on what it would have cost us to do the work that they did. So, we, we prorate, so, I, I'll go back and look at that, my, my suspicion is-
Less snow?
Well, that's certainly an impact.
We get a breakdown of that, um, when we pay them back, we authorize the reimbursement to them. And we're provided with a breakdown per community and development with what the expenses are.
Um, street cleaning and drainage, line item seventy, uh, dredging, brook, cleaning, and prep. Hundred dollars is budgeted last year, zero spent, the department requested fifty thousand, and why was only a hundred thousand?
A hundred dollars?
A hundred dollars, excuse me, out of the fifty thousand requested by the department.
What are you, you're asking?
Yeah, I'm asking you, yeah, no, line seventy. Yeah, why, why?
Why I ask for fifty, cuz like, some of our brooks need to be cleaned. And, you know, that used to be a program that we had, that's why there was a line item in the budget.
Will that help with flooding?
It sure would.
And so this, 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 this speaks to, um, some of the contact calls that we've received from neighbors. And unfortunately, you know, some of the situations where we have been, um, investigated and understood that some of the dredging and brook cleaning is on certain homeowners or residents' properties. And it is not the responsibility of the township. So I, I do recall one specific instance where it should have been surveyed, it should have been surveyed. And when the home inspection was done and it was not, um, but certainly cleaning them and dredging them would protect some of our homeowners, uh, from some of the flooding that they have.
And, and this would just be a start.
And where it is our responsibility, uh, on our, on our properties, they would, it would, most of the time, it's gonna be a capital expense. Not, not an operating expense, and that's why this was pushed back to the-
Okay, thank you, any other questions for Mr. Pelosi?
Well, just so that we're clear, so it is not that we're not gonna spend the money to clean and dredge these brooks.
Well, I don't know about-
It's capital money, you're saying.
It, to the extent that we're, 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 we're working on, you know, we have a lot of priorities. And certainly Joe's, uh, input on that is invaluable. Uh, as we develop our plans, when we, whatever we're going to do in these, these areas will be capital.
Not, right.
Say that this working on, you know, extensively, as well as Joe, uh, the, the areas that we're going to address.
Yeah, I'm very interested in seeing that, we, you, you know as well as I, we've had several neighborhoods that we've had to go and visit to address flooding issues.
So just similar with the next page, and just street repair, operating expense, line under, line item one fourteen. Equipment curb drain restoration, seventeen thousand was budgeted last year, fifty-three thousand was spent, almost fifty-four. And the department requested forty-two thousand this year, and only seventeen thousand is being recommended.
Yeah, most of those curb expenses are gonna be capital.
Capital, okay.
Any additional questions?
But, but, you know, and, and, and it also is available, it's part of that question is, is, and any, last night, last, I'm sorry, last night.
Almost.
Um, last year, we, we had, did have capital challenges in certain areas in terms of, so it, it makes sense that we would have been forced to spend more out of, out of, um, current fund as opposed to capital, because we, we did have restrictions left. So, these are the, these are the, these are the day-to-day decisions that we have to make in terms of, of how to deal with the, the problems that we face.
Is the last one, street service and traffic?
We're not sanitation, they don't do san-, he doesn't oversee sanitation and sewer.
Well, we're still on this page.
Sorry, I've jumped ahead, okay.
Um, so in seventy-five oh five, street service and traffic, signs and posts. Capital. And now, I understand that there's some signs that have been ordered, that are they in yet? That had been backordered for quite some time, and are they?
Uh, we, we give-
Give me a, give me a hint, like, I can't remember, and it's so late, my brain's not working right.
You're talking about-
It's okay.
I know that, I know that I see some of the street signs in, a couple of the, the solar signs are in. Um, you know, I, I don't think I saw those.
Yeah, for Main Street, the twenty-minute, uh, two, two-hour parking that we did.
Yeah, I'd have to-
Any other questions?
Usually they get, when they get here, they get up within a couple of days, so.
I'm done with that page.
Page eighty-six, sanitation operating expense, line item forty. No. I mean, I did have a question, um, of parking facility maintenance and repair, uh, line item one twelve. You requested five thousand dollars this year, only five hundred was recommended, what was the five thousand?
Well, probably for meter replacement and timer replacement, cuz that's gonna be a capital.
But we don't even have anybody to go out and check those.
We're not gonna be moving to meters.
Yeah.
Uh, we're gonna be moving to electric.
Exactly.
Awesome.
And what's the cost for that?
It'll be a capital improvement, it won't be in the budget. All right, let's keep moving so that we can get through this, if it's not in the budget.
Page eighty, oh no, you had another-
Yeah, so what is this, I just, for, I don't understand what the rent, NJ Transit, Harrison Avenue, what is that? We're paying?
Some, um-
We, we don't own all of that property.
Ah, we pay a P, we pay them rent on that, yeah, that's news to me. Got it. So is the rent going up?
Yeah, we're seven thousand requested.
What page are we on?
That was a two-
Eighty-five.
Might have been a two-year payment. Ah, that might be why it did that. The-
Seventy?
Well, I can't, I'm, I'm, my blood sugar's gone, I need to eat.
So, okay, so are we gonna get through the last two pages?
Well, well, just while we're here, so this, it just says two thousand seventy was requested in twenty-two, twenty-six hundred was spent. Seven thousand was requested in twenty-three, and, you know, two thousand was, uh, approved by the mayor or recommended by the mayor. So, I, you know.
So, um, we did spend twenty-six fifty more, um, still within the bottom line of that budget, so.
Okay. I, I can't really hang on much longer.
I, 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 I-
We have two more pages.
I have a quick question for Mr. Pelosi.
Then we just have to come back.
General with, uh, Central Automotive.
He can always go back.
Literally.
And you could always contact him. Set a date and a time. So this is, so with automotive, we, how do you determine what repairs go where? So, for example, um, we just had a, uh, the jitney buses go, uh, they just did a contract for them. So how do you determine which shop it goes to? Do you have a bunch of shops, or?
There's, I guess the contract ended up being like three different vendors. And, and, you know, whoever, whoever can turn the bus around fastest. You know, or whoever is more prepared to take the, take the business, you know, that's where it's gotta go.
And then like this, uh, glass line, one fifty-two, glass upholstery, bodywork, so that was only five thousand.
Right.
And then we actually spent seventy thousand, was that all subcontracted out?
Yeah, that, that would be auto body shops and stuff like-
So obviously you guys went way over on that, what happened there?
Maybe more accidents, you know, and then plus the other thing too is now we're starting to get into those leased vehicles. So they have to be maintained a little bit better, like, I'm sure if any of you guys lease your cars. You know, that, you know, we kinda gotta give them back in good shape, so.
And where are you sending them to?
Um, um, you know, we're-
Most of that work is done through our enterprise agreement, and, and they-
They pick the shots.
They have a, a, a list of vendors, and we can pick many of those vendors that we want to go to.
But who makes that decision in, in the?
We're making, we make that decision internally, we, in, in terms of, and, and we've had several local vendors that have signed up with, with enterprise, and we encourage them all, so that we can make sure that we do business in depth.
Okay, okay, cuz that was my question, I know there's been a lot out of town.
I think three or four, and we turned around and talked to a couple more, uh, who were wanting to-
More questions?
But before we go back on, on this page, so-
Sorry about that, I totally did that.
No, it's okay.
Sorry.
Um, training for mechanics, you've got, we spent, you know, zero was but, uh, it's page eighty-seven. They're back on, uh, you know, Central Automotive. Eighty-seven.
Eighty-seven, line eighty.
The third one.
We spent forty-one hundred? It's all right.
What, what, what line?
Uh, zero eight zero, training mechanics.
Third one down.
So first off, do we just have, how many mechanics do we have?
One.
So, does that, how does that, just from an operational standpoint? If the mechanic is working on, uh, a piece of equipment, whether a car, truck, or heavy equipment of any sort. If there's only one mechanic.
We generally are not doing most of our mechanic work.
It's going out.
Everything is, if everything goes through the enterprise, we, we get the corporate rates, and we're, so that's all being done.
All right, so this mechanic is not in some danger of working on a piece of equipment, being by himself, and then ended up getting hurt, and nobody's around? Alright, so this mechanic is not in some danger of working on a piece of equipment being by himself and then ended up getting hurt and nobody's around?
Not usually, no. I mean, that, I'm not, I don't mean not usually, not, no, that's not.
But now, so we do have one mechanic and we spent four thousand on training last year. We're not anticipating any training needs this year for, or is that in another line item for training?
There's training in my budget as well, so when, whenever, if, if there's not sufficient, if there's not sufficient monies for training in any departmental body, then, then it falls to my budget.
So I, I, you know, again, getting back to the same thing, this is beating a dead horse. It's a more accurate reflection of where we're spending the money if we put that on this, if we're gonna train the mechanic, I think.
It's different every year. So, and I, and I get what you're saying. The reality is it's not consistent. So what we decided to do along the way was maintain the central one for anything that's above and beyond. So to the extent, to, to your point, to the extent that we can predict it or that, that, that we've got it, like this or the other, we're doing it in departments, but but again, things that are excessive of that.
The last page, page eighty-six. The first line item forty, licensing fee compost facility. Fifteen hundred was budgeted last year, over ten thousand spent. Department's requesting seventy-five hundred this year and only fifteen hundred was recommended. What was that ten thousand? Why ten thousand spent?
There was, there was, there was some some of them that had accumulated over a period of time, number of years, that, that just never got. Frankly, we don't think we ever got them, but we did, you know, they, finally we, we got built, so we paid them. We may end up needing more money in there, we're still trying to sort that out.
I was gonna say, why recommend fifteen hundred then?
Any other questions?
Yes, line item ninety. Wet well cleaning. Six thousand budgeted last year, zero spent this year. Six thousand being recommended this year, why not take?
If we're gonna give Mr. Gross the order of reducing these to, to this budget to a percentage. So it's, it's not necessary for us to go through these line items, we're gonna give him a directive that we want to see this budget at X percent. So for us to continue to go through the line items is basically irrelevant if he's got to get to where we tell him to get to. Because he's gonna have to make these adjustments.
No, he's saying, he just said that we had to do this ourselves. He said we had to go through.
No, he said that if we give him a percentage, that he will, that he will get there. At the end, we'll get there. If that's what he said.
Just to be clear what I'm saying. Towards, um, to, towards reserve. And, and, and take that out and equalize these other lines. That's your, that's your direction to us, I'll do that. If your direction is to, is to add from reserve additional two hundred thousand dollars in order to get it down to X number of dollars, I will do that. If your, if your direction is find some line to make true cuts from, that's gonna impact policy and, and actual programs, that.
Is our responsibility, right? So, and, and I've heard most of us say that we want to get to a percentage.
Single-digit percentage.
Okay, so if that's the case, then we don't need to go through and continue to let him do that.
Can we tell him what number?
If you wanna make a recommendation on a percentage and we're all in agreement, then certainly that's his directive.
Well, let's discuss it before we make the motion, so we don't have to make multiple motions.
That's a good idea.
So is there a number that you all are comfortable with?
There's, there's the question that has to be settled. If, if I understand where you're going, is you have to settle the revenue question because the revenue question is integral into making the decision to define them.
What, what is the revenue question specifically that you need us to answer?
For getting from the moment, the actual formulaic. How we're gonna do it, you know.
Yeah.
We appreciate you.
They, there's going to be, to the extent that the revenues that we suggested. Are you, are the, are they accepted? The, the, the new revenues of, you know, I, I, that, that we, we suggested. And we suggested at the very least an amount for sewer fee. If, if, if that's accepted, then that goes to the bottom line, so okay.
Okay, but with the sewer fee.
But, but if you don't give that approval, then I can't get to the bottom line because I don't know the bottom line's gonna be.
I'd like to see something with the jitney, with a, a small contribution to the jitney. I, I think that should be at least break even.
Okay, this is a good point that you bring up is. I'm not suggesting, and as a matter of fact, I'm, I am suggesting that we can talk about adding more to this list. But if, but, but at least the question about accepting that we, that we. If you wanna continue doing more, which would ultimately lower the, the, the demand on that. But you really need to make a decision. Need to put an ordinance for, on the next meeting, moving the, the establishment of the sewer fee.
I'll make a motion to move that.
But wait, at what, a motion to move what? You said I'm making a motion to move that, what is?
For the, for him to come back with the, leave the amount that he put in for the sewer, however. The, yes, we still have to work that out. But I think we should go with his dollar amount.
But we also said that we weren't going to do an increase for one or two bedrooms, it was gonna remain the same.
As long as we agree on the amount we're going to raise, we, we, we'll work that out.
Okay, but there, there was two figures that you provided us. There was a middle fig- figure and then there was a high-end figure. Before we make a decision, can we see what those numbers look like for both?
Yeah, we have the.
I don't, I don't wanna have a, I don't wanna have a substantial sewer fee increase and a substantial tax, municipal tax increase. We can, we can perhaps in some, because the way, one of the suggestions that I made was that we increased the municipal, I'm sorry, the sewer over a two-year period, instead of doing it all in one lump sum.
But then you're not gonna get this, this.
Well, it's either or, either we have a either we have a sewer increase that's not a substantial or we have a lower tax increase. We can't, we can't hit our revenue with both. These going up in every capacity, that's just not.
I mean, but substantial.
So, so your proposal is that we move it, and I'm looking at it in here, essentially we need two point seven million to break even. So based on what you provided. It says currently projected amortized costs for sewer system and treatments close to two, ten million. Close to ten million, sewer fee collections twenty-twenty-three projected to be seven point three. To bridge the gap, make you.
Excuse me, Mr. Gross, are, is commercial included in those figures? Are you increasing commercial?
And nonprofits.
Yeah.
Then, yeah, the commercial and nonprofits have to be.
You can't do it that way if you, if you try to get to a certain number.
Excuse me, Mr. Gross, were you, were you raising the commercial rates and the nonprofit rates for the sewer? For them too.
For nonprofits too?
Yes, everybody.
Well, I'm saying, can you make them, bump them a little? Higher to make up for them?
We should, we should probably talk about the variations off-line.
But the usage must be so much higher.
That's defined, that's defined whether the revenue is, that, that's already addressed.
Yeah, and that's the next thing, we gotta go read about coming into you, so we're increasing taxes, increasing sewer fees and then taxes are gonna go up the next year.
Just keep, just keep in mind, rebound, a third go up, a third go down.
Microphone.
I have one last question.
Microphone. Microphone, please.
We had, we had proposed the, 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 the sewer fee to increase just shy of two and a half million. Um, and then there were two choices on the revenues, which would have raised, one would have raised two hundred and eighty-two thousand four hundred and thirty-seven dollars and the other, the higher one was four hundred and forty-three thousand nine forty-three. The numbers that I put before you tonight, or tonight, at the ten point one anticipated the sewer fee increase that we discussed and the four forty. My eyes are killing me, four forty-three, nine forty-three. So that, that's the ten point one.
Why do we have to make that decision tonight? Can we identify? Can we identify when we're gonna meet again and then decide if we have to make that decision tonight? If we're gonna meet again next week? That's, we don't have another meeting until June thirteenth.
Enough time for him next week?
For him to do what?
In order for me, in order for you to tell me, I want you to do the calculations and how much reserves need to go into this budget to get to X percentage, I need to know where I'm starting from. Because it's a different number.
Different, starting at sixteen percent.
I, I think you need to mix the percentages and look at the per household rate.
I think we need to look at both. I think we need to look at both. I don't think it's one or the other, absolutely.
No, not that it's not important, but again, it's, it's looking at how much the increase is good, the, the dollar amount is gonna.
Well, we know at ten percent is still more than three hundred dollars per household.
So I think you guys are talking about two different things, unless I'm wrong, you're talking about the sewer fee, right?
We're talking about taxes.
I thought we were on the sewer fee.
No, we weren't, but we're still talking about both.
Because it depends, what he's saying is, he need, we need to give him that number so he could plug it in to get us the other numbers we want.
Okay, so is there a percentage reduction that anybody wants to recommend before we take a vote? Is there a number that we wanna just throw out there and see if everyone is in agreement? Is it seven percent? Is it six percent?
Can you show us five and six percent?
And seven.
And seven? What it'll look like of the budget?
You're not getting there without making.
We gotta cut more stuff.
How about, how much of our reserves can we dip into?
Well, you're gonna go eight, nine hundred thousand right now.
Can we go more?
If you cut into the reserves to the point which, which I think is, is. So. We, we have, whatever you're cutting in reserves, we have to make up in addition to what we normally do. So you can't, it, it.
Can we cut in one point eight million and bring it down three percent from?
I mean, I, 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 that, if, if you put one point eight million dollars into this budget from your reserves, I am confident that we will lose our credit rating.
Okay, and so I understand you are saying that. But we need to understand what the reality of that means. So if we, if we lose our bond rating from two. A, what would be the next step? Because right now, I, I, I understand that we have a two A.
Pay higher interest, pay higher interest and we have fewer, uh, certainly, I said, fewer. It certainly impacts our. Interested investors have in us.
Two million. Bring it down two percent. How about one point two million to bring it down two percent instead of three?
That's eight million, that's, that's eight, eight percent tax increase? An eight percent tax increase is what you're saying.
Can we do one point two instead of one point eight?
I, I.
Eight percent, I, I, I mean, I, I, again, I wanna go.
I'm not gonna tell you that that definitely will, it's dangerous territory, because I gotta make that up. I gotta find a place to make that up. But I gotta find a number. I think one of the places we may likely make it up is I think that maybe we'll get more revenues.
What is the likelihood we're gonna lose our bond rating anyway?
I don't think so. If, 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 if you, if, if this budget gets in line, i- if, if you're able to, 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 to get through this without putting the bond rating. Moving forward, you know, for the next number of years, we should be very good shape. Because we're talking about, we'll have, we'll have. Next year, uh, which means that, that.
That's why.
Some level of comfort with dipping into some of the reserves.
How do you feel about?
As soon as possible.
That, that's a, that's a question for the mayor, but it's certainly some, we're looking at, we're trying to figure out how, how we can get to a point to do that. Ask me a question, I'm giving you the answer.
Are you comfortable with one point two million so we can bring it down by two percent?
Guys, at the end of the day.
I'm asking him if he's okay with that number.
We have to be okay with.
No, but he's saying one point eight would put us jeopardy. I don't want us to jeopardize our credit bond, our, our bond rating.
Just to be clear, there is a level of risk of going a million or one point two. That is a different, much different level of risk of doing one point eight. One point eight, I'm telling you, we will lose our bond rate.
For, for one year?
I'm not gonna tell you.
So why don't we do this? Why don't you do the, run the numbers at one point two, let's see what that looks like. And let's reevaluate.
Because we were ten, we were ten point one, right?
But, but what's that, uh, per household? So it does, you bring us under three hundred.
That will bring, yeah, well, it, um, it, it was at three forty-seven. And so every ninety thousand is five dollars, so, um, so.
I can't do that now.
Nine hundred thousand, nine hundred thousand was forty-five dollars. So that, that brought you down to three oh two. So you have another, another.
Three hundred thousand dollars.
Right, another fifteen dollars off that, so you're. Two ninety.
Two ninety.
Get us to eight percent and get us to eight percent and when can we have the next meeting? I'm not saying we will, but get us.
Stop getting hung up on the percentage. I know it's a horrible percentage, but this is part of your job. You have to run government, you have to run government.
We do, but.
You do, then we, then we, you know, we bought, we bought properties, like it or not, we bought them.
We haven't bonded it yet. We have not bonded it yet. We did not.
Let's get rid of that, yeah, tell, tell people they're not gonna get their streets paved after they've been waiting.
If you can't afford it, ask them, do they want sixteen percent in tax increase or do they want their streets paved? I think they'll save, save them two years or three years from now.
I don't know that they will. I don't know that they will. So you go knock on doors and ask people.
Listen, to, to, to cut out, and this is all a balancing act, so I get, I hear you. I, I'm a taxpayer too and, and I don't wanna increase it either. But again, we have to look at everything. You have to look at, you've cut services, nobody, like, we're sitting here, we're talking to the directors and nobody, you're talking about investing. So you guys, you, you can't have it both ways. It, 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 it's hard. We have to make tough choices, but at the end of the day, and we don't wanna let anybody go. So we gotta find that balance.
So can we, can we agree that we start at the eight? So can we, can we agree that we start at the eight percent and come back and revisit? Are we all in agreement there?
Yes, I made the motion that we started at eight.
That's two hundred seventy-seven, not two hundred ninety dollars.
Let me state what what I think I'm hearing that the direction is, and then you can confirm that.
Per year, two hundred ninety dollars per year.
To to move, to move the OE lines consistent with the, with what I gave you to the, based on the actual, the actual two thousand twenty-two activity, not including the eight hundred thousand dollars.
No, including.
No, no, not, not a budget for the eight hundred thousand. That takes it out of the.
Yes.
An additional four hundred thousand from fund balance reserve to get the total down to, down to four or four hundred thousand-ish. I don't know how to put that in a resolution, but then it gets us to eight percent, to an eight percent increase in tax.
Yes, but we are, I'm not in agreement with the highest amount increase for the sewer fees. Even if we get to eight percent.
You have to settle that that that, that's integral to this decision. I can't, I can't, I can't tell you how much to bring.
Let me ask you this way. Can we think of another revenue source that would supplement that, um, that sewer tax a little bit?
Again.
The Jenny is not gonna generate that kind of money.
Yeah.
And you're not gonna get how the writers should.
There is nothing but the sewer fee is gonna get you.
So let me ask you about the sewer fee.
I'm not comfortable with both.
We said let's remove the decrease of eighty dollars. So that helps, right, with the one bedroom units?
Well, we don't know that for sure. It's basically what he's telling us. Leave it the same.
Leave it the same. That's what I'm saying. We wanna remove, we don't wanna follow that. We wanna leave it the same. The two bedrooms should be increased by fifty. The three bedrooms increased then by seventy.
We can't do that until we find out how many of those.
Tell him the guidelines and he can find.
You have to, in 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 order for this to work, what you're talking about, you have, forget who pays what. You gotta decide on the dollar amount. The dollar amount is what determines what.
With all due respect, Mr. Gross, with all due respect, we we could do it the the way that it's being proposed, as Councilwoman Gabor Michael suggested. It would come up with a different number than you've included, and the, and we might not be at ten point one percent. So we understand that. So I I think we should do it, I think we should do it that way. I think we should agree, because there are at least three people, four people, probably five people on here that have said we don't want to have the highest sewer fee and be forced to raise taxes at the same time. So if we do it that way, then you'll tell us, okay, you're not at ten point one percent increase now. Now you're at twelve percent, or whatever the number ends up being.
Let me ask you, what are you set, what do you, what are you comfortable with for the sewer fee?
You gave us two scenarios. You gave us a high scenario, and you gave us, uh, you gave us an increase with.
Not not with the sewer. I'm talking about the sewer. In other words, what rate do you think is?
For the sewer?
Yeah.
Well, how is the sewer a rate? It's a fee.
It is a rate, but there's a rate, there's a per unit rate.
Well, right now, that per unit rate is three hundred and fifty dollars.
Right.
So four seventy-five.
How about a flat four seventy-five? Everybody is four seventy-five.
That's fine, if that works, but can you show us the numbers?
I I will show you the numbers.
I don't think it's fair.
All right, can I ask you a question? So so just, just a second. So if we were to make a decision like that, and then we're able to find out at some point down the road that we're able to institute a usage fee instead of a flat fee, how difficult would it be to then change again?
You can't change it until the next year.
Mr. Gross.
I'll just give you just a second.
It's three fifty.
Or a flat four seventy-five is is what I originally had had to propose. I went, I I changed it to make some reductions in the bottom, and that forced it to move up to the top. So if you, if you, if you want a flat four seventy-five, that brings in the two and a half million. Now, to answer your question, you mean later, like next year?
Whenever we've realized that we can do it, what what is the timeframe to then change again? Does it, do we have to wait the full year? Do you have to wait a quarter?
Talking about a change, it has to go through the the joint meeting, some type of a change in in the whole structure. Next year certainly, but not this year.
And and even if we were to try and use a usage fee now, it would, we would we have enough time to do that this year?
What would it take to determine a real usage? Councilwoman, can you please speak to that?
Oh, yeah, what would it take? What?
Part of the problem is, is...
And see, I'm not even comfortable.
We need, we need the cash flow, so we can't, so if if we could put it off till October, then we'd have time, but we don't have, we can't do that. We we've gotta get this money in this summer, so.
So if we make the change now, the earliest we could make another change would be next summer. All right, couple more questions. And 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 a statement, um, Council, Council, Councilwoman Castellino, um, I have been talking about making investments, but not this year. I've been very clear to everybody that came up here, while it's good to know, we need to be able to plan that down the road. So I don't wanna do that that this year. Um, and I think that informs us as we try and manage through this process, even though we're not gonna make the changes for this year. With regard to some of the property we own, if we were able to offload some of the property we own right now, would that affect, I mean, I don't mean right now. I mean, within the next six months, we've got half a year left, so sometime between now and, say, December one. If we were able to affect a transaction and offload some of the property we own, would that affect us for this budget?
Why? Because if you sell.
Such a budget now. But you can't, you can't, you can't change your budget after it's about.
But we would have more, we would have more revenue if we sold those properties.
That revenue doesn't translate into anything until next year.
Not even for reserve. So the reason I asked that question was, if, as some of my colleagues have suggested, we draw down our reserve more aggressively than you would recommend, and certainly the ratings agencies would like to see, if we were to do that, but then also this year realize a transaction that could then repl, would that be, would any of that revenue from the transaction be eligible to replenish reserves?
I think we talked about this last, last, uh, week, because with commercial transactions, like, they're historically good six months out of the gate to close. They're they're, with all the due diligence and the environmentals and everything, I mean, some sometimes you're talking.
The answer is not till next year.
Yeah.
You still wouldn't, even if we had a lightning strike.
Yeah, because it has, it has to go into a category.
Lot of due diligence.
Reserve for, uh, properties sold, and and you can't, you 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 can't inject that into this budget.
Not to say that we shouldn't jump on that and do that, because I think we we need to. Councilwoman Gabor Michael.
But right now, we need to to set the sewer fees.
Well, do we have to do that today? When is our next meeting, Madam Clerk?
Well, I mean, I guess the question is, in worst case scenario, could you accept a flat fee of four seventy-five?
No, and.
So that takes us, that takes us up to a hundred and twenty-five dollar increase. And then if we did a hundred and twenty-five dollar sewer increase, and even if we got the budget down to eight percent, we're still at a ten percent increase overall. That still takes us right back to where we are right now. So that's not, that's not where we're trying to go right there.
Look at the numbers that I'd like to propose and see if it works, if what you're trying to do.
I get it, we're getting closer.
Yeah, get it closer.
I'm not, I'm not.
Because I think we just need to diminish our reserves.
So the one, I, so the one bedroom, I do not propose a date increase, we leave it the same. And the two bedrooms should increase by fifty, the three bedrooms should increase by seventy-five, and the four bedrooms should.
Can you go slower so I can understand?
Increase by a hundred.
We'll provide it in writing, because it's already written.
So one bedroom remains the same, two bedroom increased by fifty, three bedroom increased by seventy-five, and a four bedroom increased by a hundred. And what if it's over?
You'll raise at most, and this is, and this is just because it's off the top of my head, at the most, you'll raise a million, maybe a million.
How? Because we're not decreasing the eighty.
Because you don't know how many.
Four seventy-five.
I understand.
Four seventy-five times twenty-one thousand is two and a half million. So you you're not even reaching four seventy-five.
Will you let us know based on the breakdown of the twenty-one thousand units?
Everyone's gonna have to get raised on that sewer tax, but maybe not as much, or you could scale it. Um, but yeah, it's it's.
Four seventy-five is not a fairing fee.
Like tax law, you have to tax the greatest amount of people, or you won't get the revenue. And the most people are.
Councilwoman.
You know, most, most of the people are in that middle range. And it's just like with tax law, if you look at Economics one oh one, you're, you have to tax most of the people.
Count, or Madam Clerk.
Significant taxes from those at the upper end.
Exactly.
Which is a.
And what I was getting ready to say is, can we increase, if it's, we have up to four bedrooms. We have several homes that are four plus bedrooms. So what you didn't include was if it's more than four bedrooms. And if it's more than four bedrooms, then I think it should increase more than a hundred dollars.
Yeah, but here's your problem too. Your problem is that we're saying under three hundred, or say the number's two eighty per household, we get it down to. That's per average household, so that the 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 folks you're talking about, that's gonna be, they're not getting it to eighty. It's gonna be over, over three, four hundred dollars. So you're, they're gonna get a bigger tax that way, so.
We understand they have a bigger house.
And 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 in any other, in in many other communities, not in many other communities, those homes are paying eleven, twelve.
Exactly. That's my point. That's exactly my point. That's my point. They should pay.
Which is the concept of which I, so so if 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 you're willing to move the the top number higher.
Yes, yes, yeah. If it's, if it's five, if it's four plus.
Or five plus, right?
You you go, if you, if you, if you move that to five, I'm making that number five fifty, you can move up twenty-five dollars. You get more relief on the bottom, and you get much more at the top.
That's exactly what we're suggesting. I'm suggesting.
You're, you have more three bedrooms.
We understand, we understand, we understand.
So if you move it to five fifty, those three bedrooms have to be five fifty.
No, no.
To the, to make the math work, it does, and that's what I'm trying to explain to you.
No, we heard too many rising, that doesn't work.
Doesn't work the way that you want it.
Can you get us a breakdown of twenty-one thousand units?
So.
So the other, other thing too would be helpful in selling this to the public, and by that, I mean just helping them understand that it's a difficult decision and a bitter pill to swallow. It would be helpful if we could see some comparisons with other similarly situated townships and what they're paying for those fees.
There's some towns that don't charge them.
That's fine. I just, I think we should be able to communicate that.
There's some towns, the the towns that charge by water consumption charge are the ones that I'm talking about, where it's for a family of four is twelve hundred, thirteen hundred a year.
But we're not doing that here.
But I'm just saying.
Yeah, but he's saying water consumption, that that's the.
Fourth bedroom, five bedroom, bigger homes.
They have their own water bill.
So so the four bedroom, five bedroom, six bedroom, you know, those are the ones that are in that in that range, like, like, I'm not gonna tell, so somebody that works for us has a four bedroom home in another community, and he's paying twelve hundred dollars for his, for his sewer bill.
Um, but we, and that's, if we get there in the future, we're not suggesting that that's not possible. What we're saying is not possible is to have that substantial of an increase this year with an increase in the municipal taxes. So we have to either figure out how to do one or the other and not significantly raise both. And so I I think we're clear on what we've asked you to do.
You need to be clear that if that's what you wanna do, you're going to need to make service cuts.
Okay, and we, and we are. Madam Clerk, can you look at the calendar and tell us, um, what, I know we have.
What we asked you to do? Which way are you doing it?
I'm not sure. I'm not sure.
Make the conversation on that.
Okay, so we asked, we asked for two bits of, we asked for two bits of information. Okay, but but we also, we also are looking at the number of households. We're looking at keeping the fees raised at a, and and, uh, Councilwoman Gabor Michael is gonna email you and. Well, as everyone. What the numbers are. And then we are looking to get the municipal tax increase lowered to eight percent. And if that means using more of our reserves.
Right now, you're talking about, you you're talking about going into your reserves by two later.
We we're, we would like to see what that looks like.
And and one last question, because I know we're all trying to go home. The very last page of this budget, there's no account name, there's no line item. It just says three hundred seventy-nine thousand budgeted, and then the mayor's recommending. That's the pool.
That's the pool.
But it's, doesn't say it's the pool. There's deferred charges is the page before that. There's no, there's nothing. There's, it just says.
I know where it says.
It says unknown. There's no account name. And it says three hundred seventy-nine thousand budgeted, three hundred sixty-six spent it last year. Four hundred thousand is requested by the department. We don't know what department, and the mayor's recommended four hundred and one. So, thank you.
I know it's the pool.
Yeah, but then probably listed in the wrong place, because deferred charges is the page before that, and then the debt service ban interest is the page before that.
All other expenses, all tax or salary.
No.
Yeah, I'm looking at it.
Here, then let's, let's close, and I'll show you this offline then. It's not, it's the very last page.
We're looking at two different diodes?
Yeah.
All right. So when is our next meeting? Okay, that's our, that's our council meeting. All right, and then we need to have another meeting where we bring in the directors, the rest of the directors. And we, we understand that we have Memorial Day on the twenty-nine. Was there, was there a reason we couldn't meet on the thirty-first?
Um, I I'm not meeting. I I'm going away the next morning.
How about June seventh, Wednesday, June seventh?
That's a planning board meeting.
And what about the sixth? June sixth, you were going away.
I'll be, I'm away.
Does the planning board still meet?
Can they meet virtually or another?
They do meet virtually.
Aren't they still, they're still meeting virtually?
Right, but I'm on the planning board.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Actually, I could be there.
It's late.
How about Thursday, the eighth?
I'll be in Florida.
Okay, so what?
But but, okay, I know that you're part of your liaison to the planning board.
We have too many important applications, and it would jeopardize, um, Pete's on the planning board as well. It would jeopardize them having a call.
How about Thursday, the first?
I I can't.
So you you leave, uh, you leave on the first?
I'm out. Yeah, I'm out of pocket. I got my son's wedding.
Right, so could we do the thirtieth then?
The thirtieth.
Is next week, that's the Tuesday.
I can't say yes till I have a.
That doesn't work for me.
The thirty? The thirty-first? I know you leave on the first, but can we, can we do the thirty-first and commit that we'll be out of here by eleven o'clock?
Like the first meeting, we're out by eleven.
Like we committed tonight?
Well, I, we all committed the last time, and I.
Do the thirty-first, if if the directors are coming in, I mean, it's more, I'm I'm, I'm good.
Okay.
I don't need to.
Is everyone else available on the thirty-first?
Couple questions, I can call them on my own.
Okay. All right, so Madam Clerk, can you set our next meeting for six o'clock on the thirty-first?
Did you wanna do a second as needed?
A second. No, 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 I mean a second meeting.
No, no, let's just stick with the thirty-first for today, and then we'll figure it out.
I'll give you my date, so I'm available.
Okay.
And then you.
Now, if if, just just to keep in the back of your heads, if if we end up, I mean, we're, seems like we might be close to some point, if we get, if you get to that point where there is, even though you may want to, um, continue working on it, I would advise you that we get to that point, at least introduce at that point, and then not, 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 not adopt, and then you could continue to work on it from there, so.
And it can be amended if needed.
Yeah, you you always, you always amend it.
Correct, before adoption.
Before adoption, so that's just something.
Depends on the percentage. It's gotta make sense.
Well, the, my point is, if you get, you get to a point where.
Where, where, as long as we are reducing, I mean, I I I want to understand in having conversations with other municipalities, I understand that there is a tremendous amount of risk in reducing our reserves, but we also know that we're going to get more from fees and other sources in twenty twenty-four. And and with that, I I just feel that the the easiest thing for us to do is incur that risk. and get us there. We, we have to keep our residents first and foremost in our minds, no matter how we get there.
Look, that, that's, that's a decision that you can make.
Yes. So.
I'm I'm not disputing that, and you know, that that is, is the word you use is stopper, there's risk. And.
Yeah.
But you said at one point two, it's okay versus one point eight.
Oh, I did not say that. I said there is risk. So I I I, so let's be real clear.
Said you were more comfortable with one point two than you were.
But we have to be comfortable. No, we are all uncomfortable.
I'm certain, I am certain that that would impact our rate. I am not certain that one point two would. And I understand the arguments that, and 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 I'm I get this part of it, that there is, there is a reasonable chance that the revenues that were received this year may be better than what I projected. I did a conservative projection of that. Having said that, it's still a risk.
I think, I think it is the garbage contract is really what we need to get our sheds wrapped around. That's gonna be the biggest concern on this.
Until it goes out. So moved, is there a second?
Do we agree on a date?
Yeah, the thirty first.
Is there a second to adjourn the meeting? Thank you.
Good night, everybody.
Good night, thank you. We'll be back on the thirty first at six P M. For all those who are just as excited about this process as we are.